Okay, we are recording and we are live streaming on Facebook, so whenever you're ready, John.
Okay, thanks so much Julie. Well, thanks everyone for being here. We want to call the meeting in order. This is the meeting of the Village of Sherwood Hills Board of Trustees. Tonight is Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. It is 7:02 PM. Let's call the meeting to order. Julie, can you do the roll call?
I can. One second. And what I've been getting before, one of them, it's one of our, that's deep. Hi Kate.
Welcome Kate.
Hey, everyone.
And Carol.
Okay, here we go. President Ives.
President.
Carol Barford. Here. Dean Marbassuner.
Present.
Mark Letterer.
Here.
Robinon Luffy.
Here.
And Kate Owensbit.
Here.
Will we get Bob?
I know, I know, I don't.
I'm sorry Bob.
I'm sorry Julie. I know you love naming it.
It's true.
Item three, the agenda. Bob and Mark, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to change the order of agenda items under section C to be addressed in a following order. The facilities modernization project, Deacon Village facility space needs, Raymaker pool reassessment report, CIP guidance, resolution R 2025-12, post-farm park playset, participation in the renewal of the Blue Watershed Council.
Is there a second to that motion?
I would just add, the reason we changed the order is to keep all the facilities discussion in sequence. It made more sense than having them read all over you. So I'll give you a second.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand. That motion carries.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you Bob. Second. Further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand. That motion approves. You bet. Item five, procedures orientation. Just want to remind folks that this meeting is also being broadcast on the Village's Facebook Live site. However, we don't monitor that site during the meeting, so any questions, comments, we're not in a position to respond to contemporaneously. If folks that are on Facebook have questions or comments, they can send those to our village administrator, Brian Mooney.
John, I'm not sure if you skipped over line item four, statement of public notice.
I did. I appreciate that. Dean Mar, thank you. Just want to confirm that the item four, that the meeting was properly noticed. Julie, Brian? Thanks again for that Dean Mar. Item six, the public comment section, this is an opportunity for community members to speak to the board. No discussion or action may take place at this time, but trustees may ask clarifying questions. Only speakers may be limited to three minutes. So there's a couple of things I want to do. I just had a request to provide an opportunity where someone has to leave the meeting, talk about the playset issue, and it's Michael Van Lanenham. So we're going to do that. And then I'm going to ask that we break the public comment into three areas. One is the Sweetbrier Columbia CSM issue. Item two would be any questions, comment, or any comments regarding the logic acquisition. And three would be anything else. And then after Michael speaks, I'm going to give a couple of comments on the CSM. And I'm going to direct our attorney, Bill Cole, just kind of talk about, you know, where the board is on this and just provide some additional perspective on how things have been handled so far. And then we'll open up the public comment on the CSM issue. And once that's exhausted, we'll talk about the logic acquisition, and then we'll talk about anything else. But I'll give Michael a couple of minutes just to talk about the swing set, which we're going to deal with later in the agenda.
Hi everybody, I'm Michael Penley, I'm at Wood Harbor Drive. I wanted to address some of the village package material. There's a mention of a donation by our family to the village for the acquisition of a new playset at Post Farm Park, which the village league has agreed to match our donation. Leading the trustees, whether or not they'll approve some spending from a budget matter that is up to market, anybody else who's familiar with the process, I don't quite get it. Just some background, my family really loved the play area that was outside of the pool at Post Farm Park. It was removed for structural rot, other issues. We were hoping to see that replaced a year or two ago. And so back in the winter, I think it may have fallen off the capital budget improvement. At the same time, our family was fortunate enough to receive a request from a family member who was a long-time educator. So we decided to reach out to Brian with a sort of gift request to return the playset to the village. Just because it's heavily used by both members of the pool, members of the community, because it's actually their closest playset in the village that you can reach from University Avenue. There's lots of apartment buildings and of course, you know, village residents. So we'd like to see that happen, and I'm really happy that the village league has matched what we would like to pledge to it. And so I think it's an exciting chance for the Village of Sherwood Hills to come together and provide an amenity for children. It's, you know, always a challenge in the world to raise children, so having a place where they can play, hang out for five minutes when you go into the pool, or when you need to water your garden, is something we'd really like to see happen. So I just wanted to give you that background. I have no business before the village, just, you know, this is from our family, sort of, just to try to get some of the ball rolling, like with Hyden House. I think the only thing that I have coming up is after renew our cat license, so fingers crossed.
Can't deal with that tonight.
Anyway, so that's, that's all. I know you can't respond or do anything. I just wanted to provide that background. So it's just, you know, from us to the, to the village along with the league. So hopefully we can make that happen, because it's a, it's an empty space and it's much missed. So thanks for your time.
Thanks. My incredible donation since there. Looking forward to considering that later in the agenda. So as we, as we kick off the CSM discussion, again, I want to begin again by acknowledging the concerns that have been expressed by trustees, by residents, and those aligned with Mr. Clancy's memo, you know, regarding the CSM, Sweetbrier Columbia. And we obviously understand these issues are deeply important to the community and we take them seriously. You may know the board had a special meeting with our village attorney to have a substantive discussion on this matter. And I'm going to talk later during the village president's section about what we're doing on the plan commission. But I've asked Bill Cole, our attorney, just to speak for a minute, to share with the residents kind of the rationale for the guidance that he's provided this board. The, you know, the context, you know, that, you know, it's making it difficult for us to counter the narrative that the board is being dismissive. And then him explaining some of the potential legal and financial risks of acting otherwise. And reinforce why, you know, why this board is proceeding cautiously. So I want to give Bill the opportunity, obviously, for folks interested in this issue. And we've got ZBA tomorrow, you know, Bill's going to be there, Brian's going to be there, of course, our in-village engineer will be there. But Bill, did you want to take a couple of minutes and just speak to the issue?
Yes, sure. First of all, I apologize for the informal attire. I didn't plan on it to be any your way. I'm Bill Cole, I'm his attorney. The whole Sweetbrier issue is something that I totally appreciate. It's, it's significant to the village. It's important to people and people have a lot at stake there. Please understand my role is not to get involved in the good and the bad or things, or winners or losers on these kinds of issues. My priority is these two things when it comes to Sweetbrier. One is making sure, as you all know, there's a ZBA hearing tomorrow. Is to ensure that that hearing is fair and impartial for everyone. The zoning administrator needs to be able to defend his decision. The appellants need to be able to present their case. And frankly, the developer he chooses to be there is an interested party, has a right to have a fair hearing. And that's my primary goal with that. The chips will fall wherever they do. The board, board will make its decision and presumably whoever loses will appeal it to circuit court and, and people can, can keep doing that. But it's, it's important for me that it, that it be fair. The second part of it is that I have to minimize the exposure to the village on, on legal issues. Certainly, the board can in its decision with, you know, the input from the residents, say, you know, we don't care about the exposure. We'll invest the funds. And if that's the decision of the board and the community, I'm just the lawyer. But I need to advise them as to what the risks are, what the exposures are. I'm not going to go into detail of what I've advised the board, that that's all privileged, of course, as you know. But I think it is important for you to understand somewhat the rationale of what we're doing there. In large part with respect to the certified survey map, you know, when an applicant submits for a CSM, we have to base our decision on the ordinances and the laws as they exist at that time. If you submit a CSM or a subdivision plat, and it meets the statutes and it meets our code, we're required to approve it. We can't not approve it just because we may disagree with the shooting, whatever. I understand there have been some issues raised as to perhaps the propriety of the, that decision and conduct by certain parties and whether or not that fight for law and that sort of thing. All of those issues presumably will, will be litigated at some point. My concern is making sure that the village is in the best position to defend its decision. The other concern on that has to do with the impact, if that some have advocated to rescind that certified survey map. Keep in mind that, that we have, the applicant has through that divided the land. Those parcels now have been bought and sold and people have acted in reliance on that CSM. If that were to get rescinded, a lot of the impact of that would fall on those people, including the people that have bought that house now. So there's concern to mitigate any negative consequences to frankly, innocent people involved in that. Based on those goals, I advise the board the way that I did. To my knowledge, they have been following my advice. And I appreciate a lot of the residents feel as though the board is not being responsive to their questions and more, I guess, definitive or offensive in fixing the problem, as residents view it. In part, I need to be concerned that I still have this hearing tomorrow. I can't have a situation where the board or other people are putting the finger on the scale of that and influencing that decision. So to a large degree, I have advised the trustees, like any lawyer advises their client on just about anything that's likely to get litigated, that be careful what you say, don't say things unless you know for certain they're factually accurate. And before that ZBA hearing occurs, don't be making statements on the propriety of that. Because I have one trustee that chairs that ZBA. He has to be impartial. And I don't want their decision influenced by statements by the trustees, that sort of thing. They have to make their decision based on evidence that's brought before them at this hearing. So in large part, the perception of non-communication or nonresponsiveness falls on me. That's, that's based on my guidance to them. And John, I think, can talk to it more, or the trustees, I think, you certainly have heard, I think there are already proposals to amend the code to affix, to fix a lot of these problems. And hopefully get to a better situation later. That hasn't changed what's going on now. The applicant submitted what he did at the law at that time. But I think the board is acting to fix a lot of these problems. That's not going to come tomorrow. It's not going to come, you know, until we go through the process. But that's sort of just a broad sort of statement as to where we are and why we are where we are. I know this is a public appearance, you all obviously have opinions on things and want to state your views, and that's your right to do that. Please understand, it's not a question and answer situation, so I really can't address specific questions. This is your opportunity to present whatever information you want to them, so that you are heard. I was just asked if you could just sort of explain what I did and sort of some of the things that from your perception may seem like it's nonresponsiveness from the board, but, but it's really based on those sort of factors that I just talked about. So with that, I think unless anybody has specific questions from the board, that's all I can really discuss tonight.
No, Bill, I really, really appreciate that. And as I, as I mentioned earlier, during the village president's section, I am going to speak to some of the things that the plan commission's doing in terms of the operational and, and technology, or not technology, but some of the changes we're going to make in terms of the billable setback and public notification and the fire ordinance and, and other things. So you'll hear more about that, and the boards continue to work on that with Craig Weinhold, one of our commissioners. Shadnun's very, been very active with that. Van Wallen Associates, Brian, Brian Berquist, our engineer. And you'll see, you know, red line versions of those changes coming to the board in the not-too-far future. All right, so we're going to have, open up public comment then for issues related to the CSM. I'd ask that you just raise your hand, be recognized. If you could, if you could share your name loud enough so Julie can hear it and capture it for the tape and for the minutes, is that right Julie?
Yes. Oh, do you want people to come in front of the camera or does it matter?
That's totally up to them. If they'd like to stand in their place, I'm fine with that. It's kind of a crowded room tonight. Or if they'd like to come forward and speak, I'll give them that flexibility.
I'm just afraid people in the back won't be picked up by the mic, that's why I said that.
Okay. Speak loudly and clearly to the extent you can. Okay, folks, I'm going to start here first. First hand up. Thanks.
Yeah, hi, my name is Leslie Taylor, I live on Dartmouth Road. I'm curious, what's your, Leslie Taylor, I live on Dartmouth Road. And one of my questions actually had to do with the village attorney, who I had never actually seen or met or really given any thought to, but as I understand it, the village does pay your, we do pay you for your services. And I was curious, because it rumors sort of is going around that you spent four hours meeting with the developers, which I thought, well, why not meet with the residents that are concerned? I mean, is that seems like a reasonable thing. If you're going to meet with the developers, why not meet with all the residents that have been in and up or about?
Ma'am, I, I can't sort of go back and forth, but I do just want to correct it. That is absolutely not true.
Okay.
I took one phone call from a developer's attorney. It was procedural in nature. It probably lasted less than ten minutes. That is the only contact I had with the developer.
Thanks.
Are there other public comments this evening regarding the CSM? John?
I'd like to comment on what the attorney said.
Sorry, John Clancy.
Sorry, John Clancy. And what we asked for, I was the one who submitted the materials and asked for, asked for the village board. I asked, in the meeting, I asked for two things. And it was based on submission, which to me very clearly showed that the votes that's up to CSM lied to the village. There were pictures we provided that showed that the attic was clearly accessible, and that was fixed up when it was marketed for sale, when the 2816 Columbia Oaks market sale. And what we asked for was one, rescind the CSM. But two, we asked for you to investigate what's going on if you felt you couldn't rescind the CSM. And that request was completely blown up. There was no response on that. And that's why the people are so mad about this. Because our concern, if the village should be concerned, when they're lied to. Our concern. Our concern is that the CSM was improper, because there was a lie about whether the attic was made accessible. As you all know, the existing house was too large when the attic was included. And the village engineer told the applicant, well, you can make the attic inaccessible. I'm not sure if that's the proper thing to do or not. But with that rule in mind, they told the village engineer they made it inaccessible. As everyone knows from the pictures, it was not. In fact, it was not only, that amount, not only, but they marketed the house as having a third floor that was fully accessible and took advantage of the due owners because of that. And the inability you guys to even address that at all, to investigate that. I'm not talking about Bill, about whether we rescind the CSM or not. I think you clearly can't. I think you provided no authority for what you can. That rescission oftentimes occurs whenever there's a material misrepresentation in any kind of that. But the big concern is the failure to address even that request. I made that request again. We wouldn't put all these things together and come to you unless you were going to frankly do something about it. And look into it at least. If I was on the village board, I'd be offended if a developer came in and lied about something to you to get a CSM, which then resulted in a property envisioned, the divided trees being cut down that were 100 years old, right next to a bunch of neighbors who are, I'd be very concerned about this. And John, you apologized for what occurred. But apologies require action. Not just saying, I'm sorry about what happened. We'd even have a clear opportunity to investigate what occurred and take some action, at least to come back with a report as to what happened here. There's no reason for that. The third thing is that we also asked for you to look at the trees that were cut down in the right of way. Those are fully stated in documents. You never came back about that at all. It's about ten and twelve trees that were cut down in the Sweetbrier right of way. Which caused, you know, great harm to the neighbors that are around the area, because now they got to face a house that's 30 feet tall. We won't go into the CSM. I'm sorry, ZBA stuff. But we asked for two things that were never addressed. I don't know, Bill, if you, I don't think you speak to that, whether you guys talked about it in the meeting. Whether you actually addressed the request. But that's what our concern is. I think that's, I don't, others can think too, but that's what our fundamental concern is. Is that you admit that there's a problem that occurred, and you don't even investigate what happened. That's what our concern is. I ask for that to be done again, because I think that would, if you just had an investigation done, what happened? I think the neighbors would feel much better about it.
Thank you, John. There are other comments regarding the CSM? Oh, it's hard to see.
Alan Goldenberg.
Hi Alan.
I'd like to amplify what John said, specifically as a resident, and I don't want to speak for all the residents here, but I know many, if not most, of the residents here. We appreciate what the board does. We appreciate your service and the difficulty of the jobs it does to. Most, if not many of us have sat on committees and have been board members, and we care about what happens in this village, and this gathering is evidence of that. To Bill's point, good or bad, excellent point. It's not really a point here. The point is, what was the truth? And I think John's point, and most if not many of these residents, the we might be upset about 100-year-old trees being cut down. We might be upset about being taken advantage of if that's what happened. We might get upset about a lot of things, but mostly what I feel anger about is the fact that it the fact that there isn't responsibility for the fact that it happened. And, and when, to John's point, my father told me a long time ago, when you, when you do wrong, you apologize, and there's three parts of an apology. I'm sorry. It was my fault. What can I do to make it better? So that's the part we need to see.
Thanks for that Alan. Other comments on the CSM issue? Yeah, over here.
I want to add, could you identify yourself? Yeah, I'm 2905 Columbia Road. I want to add to what people already said. What is so upsetting for the residents is the reluctance with which emails receive a response, and then sometimes what sounds like a dismissiveness in your emails, in your responses. And I don't know about good and bad, but for me, the board is a board of trustees for their residents and for no one else. In the emails I have read, and in the conversations I had, I don't see this right now with this board. And that is very upsetting for a resident of 18 years in the village. And I think we, this, we want you to respond, and what Ellen said, we want you to take responsibility. It can't happen that, or that's the CSM issue, but it can't happen that the developer in a, in a meeting either lies or is, is mum about questions being asked. I guess that is something for tomorrow. But we want the board to be trustees on our behalf and no one else.
Personal comments on the CSM issue?
Yeah, mine. Yes, I have just a question, Bill. Once a decision is rendered with, by the zoning board of appeals, at that point, can the board speak out? Can the board address the issue, or are we concerned that there will be continuing litigation, and therefore the quiet period will go on as long as the litigation continues?
Yeah, it's so, once the ZBA renders a decision, the, whoever loses at the proceeding would have 30 days to appeal. At that point, if there's no appeal, then things die. If there is an appeal, then the parties are in circuit court. I think at that point, my concern about a fair hearing to this ZBA is a mirror. And because then it's ultimately some circuit project on the side of that. So I think it does lessen the, the need for to insulate the ZBA at this point, right? Yeah, I think I agree.
Okay, thank you. Shadnun, did you have a follow?
Yeah, I'm going off on my own, and I'm gonna put myself in the line of fire and say what I want to say. Because the truth needs to be said. Before the CSM was approved, Mr. Reber had taken out a building permit to make the attic not habitable. And the attic work was inspected for final compliance completed by GEC on January 16th, 2025. Now, if Mr. Reber told the bakers when selling the property that the attic can be used as a children's playroom, then the bakers could have a claim against Mr. Reber. The zoning code allows for the village administrator to enter into any home in the village to confirm, to confirm compliance with the code. And if the village enforces, is it me?
No.
Okay. And if the village enforces the zoning code against the bakers, they have a claim, they may have a claim against Mr. Reber for falsely advertising the property. But this does not result in a rescission of the CSM. Second point, Mr. Reber was at the plan commission meeting and did not correct Brian Mooney when he said he believed that, when Brian said he believed the neighbors may have been notified. This was not misrepresentation on Mr. Reber's part, because he never said he notified the neighbors. Brian Mooney was incorrect when he assumed, based on no evidence that Mr. Reber, Reber may have. John Ives was wrong in his questioning of Brian Mooney, because he assumed it's the village administrator's job to make this call. But it's the plan commission's responsibility to request the hearing, not the village administrator. John may have not known that, but neither did none of the other plan commission members, because none of them stepped in either. It was not unlawful for Brian Berquist to help residents with building permits, because he helps everyone equally. We are not able to change rules depending on who the homeowner is. A homeowner can be a scumbag, but a scumbag has the same legal rights as everyone else does. There are other CSMs approved this year without public comment. Now, you might have a different interpretation of the rules and how they were, how this issue was determined. But the board members, with the advice of council, agree that we didn't have enough evidence to rescind the CSM. And about accountability, there is no one person accountable, but I assure you that the board feels that we need to fix the zoning code. Brian, it feels that he could do better. John believes he can do better, and the plan commission does as well. But I I'm saying this because I think you're owed the truth. That's how we made that decision. And it's a decision outside of the ZBA. This just has to do with the CSM. Regarding the ZBA. I want, I have a little paragraph on that. There is no such thing as an absolute truth. Multiple realities can coexist at the same time. So the public can believe that the public comment section of the ZBA meeting is being removed to silence them. And equally true, at the same time, the ZBA members might be worried that the public comments will cause them to experience biases and not apply the rule of law properly. So then the question that we should ask is how can we meet both objectives? How can we make sure the public is not deprived of the opportunity to provide their input? And that the ZBA members are not going to experience biases. So my suggestion would be to send your public comments. Evidence to the Clancy's so that they can incorporate it into their appeal. I have no other way of trying to meet both truths at the same time.
Thank you, Shabnam. Other public comments on the CSM? Anyone else? John, I'm gonna go to you in a second. Anyone else for public comments on the CSM? John, you had a follow up?
It is in response to Shab. I think if there is evidence that there actually was an inspection that showed that the attic was being inaccessible, that should be made available to everybody. Because of the fact that the pictures that were shown clearly do not show that. And you're interested to know what they actually did because there is no evidence that it would be paid that way. And we should make sure that that actually occurred and there's clarity on that for the village.
I agree. If you guys had that three months ago, we wouldn't be here.
We're getting too far into this. Yeah. Sorry, we're got members of the ZBA here.
Right. Yeah, I get it. Yeah, we got just a comment on the pu- public comment on CSM.
Those of us who have appealed the decision have been told that we are potentially responsible for lawyers fees for that. And I think that would be the village's lawyer. And I question that because. It's our lawyer, right? The village. We're the village. So and several people dropped out of the appeal because they were afraid of. Yes, and it seems a little bit like intimidation. So I'm I'm just wondering how that works.
And then if I could have you identify yourself as well. Thanks. Thanks, Ann. We're we're not doing a Q and A on this, so we definitely noted the noted the question and. That's all I can say right now. Other public comment on the CSM? Yes, Rocky. Oh, identify yourself, sorry.
I'm Rocky Van Aston. I've seen the CSM for a while and my only thought is this. So if I can convince the board of the zoning appeal through lack of forthcoming. Lying, whatever you want to call it, and I get my way, I'm clear. I can do whatever I want from that point on, even though I may have lied and misrepresented it because. Because you agreed at the time because it was great and the conversation was great. Everything's good and I can do what I want. To me, that's wrong. To me, that says the board's not on the resident's side. Something is amiss. It takes seconds to tell the truth and forever to tell a lie. And every time you look into this whole thing, it's all these things that make no sense. To me, that's a forever. And I have no idea, from what our lawyer said, I would say he represents them and not us. I'd look for another lawyer. And I, you know, somewhere you gotta stand up and say you can't misrepresent things to the board. Even even shadows of gray are not acceptable to the board. And clearly, this whole thing is marginal affairs of the trupian brought out. That's all. And I think it's time for the board to act. Let them resubmit the CSM and be honest and see what happens.
Thanks, Rocky. Other. Other public comments on the CSM? Yeah, could you?
Kate Crowley, can you hear me?
Thanks, Kate. Yep.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the ZBA tomorrow, which I think is maybe the biggest news in this world here now. Shabnam, I appreciate what you said about sending comments to Clancy's and Clancy's and other appellants, but the meeting's tomorrow. And as of five thirty this afternoon, our website said there would be public comment available tomorrow at the ZBA. So now we're in a situation where people relied on the fact they could show up tomorrow at the zoning board public hearing. And make public comments in now less than twenty four hours, twenty eight minutes. Send your information to a neighbor you may or may not. So that's, that's not democracy. And that, while it may be done to be fair in a hearing, it it feels like we're being silent. And we are effectively being silenced. And when you couple that with the only people who can speak are those who are agreeing to pay attorney fees. With no estimate whatsoever of what those fees would be. Is that made in play? Hard to say it's not.
Can I respond to that?
So the board's not supposed to comment, Shab.
Why? It's you were allowed to talk.
John said the board's not gonna comment.
Well, I I'll just say to to Kate, I wasn't aware of that change, so. But but I guess I'm I'm looking to my attorney.
I'm looking to our attorney.
Yes, I'm a village resident too, so it's our attorney. So Bill, do you want to speak to that issue or should we just?
I mean, I can. It it's it's important for for everybody.
Yeah.
There are two types of hearings. There are public hearings.
Turn around again if they.
There are public hearings in which the public is entitled to speak. If you rezone your property, we have to give a class one notice. We have to have a public hearing. Meaning anybody can come and talk and they can say, because that's a legislative decision. The plan commission and the village board, they make their decision based on rezonings. As to whatever they think is good for the village. And so public input by the public can help them do that. The second type of hearings are what are called quasi judicial hearings. They are in effect mini court trials. Those are not public hearings. The body, in this case, the ZBA, makes its decision based on the evidence presented to it at the hearing. By the the litigants, the, in this case, the the appellants. They have to make their decision based on the evidence. They can't make their decision based on the input of non non parties. So with public hearings, you're absolutely entitled by law. You're entitled to come. You're entitled to speak. Just like here, everybody's entitled to speak. At quasi judicial hearings, that's not the case. Because members cannot, they have to make their decision based on the evidence, not based on what people may feel or believe. So it's for the staff, have their stock language, they had comments could be permitted. To be very frank, I told them that their, that was wrong and that cannot happen at this hearing. Principally because I do not want either side feeling as though the decision of the ZBA was not based on the evidence. That it was based on a member of the public that came and happened to be very persuaded or somebody that wasn't persuaded or or whatever. That that's just going to inject bias into the hearing. Whoever loses at the hearing is going to be the first to point out. That, hey, the decision may not have been made on the evidence. It was made based on what so and so said at the public appearance session. So it's my advice, right, wrong, or otherwise, then eventually I'm sure a judge will decide if I'm right or wrong. But that's my advice to the board or to the ZBA and to my knowledge that it's been followed. So I I think if you want to provide input, certainly Shabnam's right, that the appellants can put their case on. Any of the appellants can. Otherwise, you can state your feelings to the board. They will not make the decision. The ZBA will make the decision. It's all public. You're welcome to come tomorrow. You're welcome to observe. But there won't be a public appearance session. And I I I understand how that feels to some. Please understand my purpose is not to quash public input. It's to make sure it's an unbiased decision.
I'm gonna stay.
Very quick, a short comment. I just, very quick. Bill Cole joined us three months ago. And before Bill was the village attorney, we had Derek Punches, who graduated law school maybe two years ago. I think that there's going to be a lot more of these shocks and changes. Going forward, because I I think we may have not always done things properly. When people rightfully compare the other ZBA meetings we've had in the past. It there's, there's a, there's a, why are we doing things differently? A part of it is, Bill has thirty years' experience. I don't know if I'm aging you, I apologize. With like twenty, thirty municipalities, you have somebody else coming in. And that's gonna, that's gonna shock us. It might shock, and we should, we need to figure out how to manage that.
Thank you for that, Shabnam. Yeah, right here.
Just something I'm curious about. Cynthia Kinsey.
Thanks, Cynthia. Yeah.
Our lawyer mentioned that when he first spoke that one of the concerns he had that he addressed with you about why. This CSM had to go forward or whatever, was because there were two innocent parties, so. Which made me believe that those lots have been sold to people and there are plenty of other houses on them. But I'm wondering. Why were they allowed to be sold? I mean, when we knew there was this question, I mean, if that's one of the reasons why. The CSM cannot be rescinded is because there's two innocent parties that want to build homes on those lots. Shouldn't there have been a hold on allowing those lots to be sold when there are so many things were in question? And do I, do I misunderstand that? Are those lots sold? I actually tried to contact the realtor to try to get some information on the on the larger lot. And she refused to trip. She um, she didn't return my phone call. So I was kind of, you know, curious about if those lots are actually sold.
Thanks for sharing that.
And why were they not, why were they sold? I mean, when there's this this huge question about the. If the CSM was proper, why were they allowed to be sold?
I appreciate the comment. John, I'll go to you in a second. Any other?
Online.
Oh, there is. Thank you for that. Online, could you identify yourself and share your public comment?
I'll try to be brief, but I have not a lot to say. I just want to point out that even the language.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you just share your name?
My name is Jennifer Ratner Rosenhagen and I live at twenty nine oh five Columbia Road and we've been here for nineteen years. I just want to point out that the language that you keep using about your own residents is like that you're the feelings, you know, that you might be upset, but we've got to stick to the law. And I want, I just want you to be mindful of the language with which you're talking to us. It is, it's. So condescending that it takes my breath away. So that's the first thing. Second of all. The whole thing about public comment, I I would want to ask Bill Cole, there are four things going on here. And one is that there was a letter that was sent out. From Brian Mooney saying that there would be public, you could either submit it online or you could come and you could do it in real time. A letter of August fifth. What do you say about that? What, Shabnam, your answer that, well, we did things different because we had a different lawyer and now we're going to do things differently, that's not an answer. So just like, there's policy. So what policy are we following now? It's not the whims of a lawyer. We follow policy. We follow our own regulations. It's real simple. And so I'm asking that Cole, if you can tell us, what are we missing here? When we look to the zoning code of page ten ninety three and it's very explicit in what it says. That there can be this comment. What language are you referring to that we do not see? And then the last thing, and this should not, none of you should be indifferent to it. If the information on the village's website as of five twenty eight today. Was saying that there can be public comment. I can't believe anybody in this room, Zoom or otherwise, is indifferent to being part of a village that has this degree of. I don't even know what to call it. Is it incompetence? Is it mismanagement? Are you not troubled by the fact? That you had misinformation up until a a day before the ZBA? Okay, so I'll, I can wait for an answer. I don't know that I'm going to get an answer. I want to point out two things and then I'll sign off. One is that. This isn't going to go away. And I mentioned this to you all. In the, not the last meeting, but the but the meeting before. I mean, I really asked you all as as our neighbors and as our friends. To just take notice of what you're allowing happening here. Only use the word trustee. You are entrusted by us.
Yes.
And you have allowed for such an adversarial relationship. This is on you. If I forwarded all the emails that were greeted with silence. If I forwarded simply the email from today. Where you you respond with just a heavy hand when you respond at all. John Ims, you admitted in the meeting that you made a mistake. This is on record. We have film. You said it yourself. What? I'm just asking the trustees, what are you allowing to happen? Okay, so that's, maybe that is me playing for emotion, but I'm actually just playing for a kind of ethics here. And a historical precedent about what this place has at least meant to me for the nineteen years that I've been here. And I'm asking like, what the heck is going on, John Ims or the board, that this is okay with you? And I guess my last question is this, because, and this is for you, Cole. The attorney Cole, I'm so glad that that the village is in, that the the board is in such good hands with you. But I want you to to notice that you've basically invited litigation now four times tonight. And John Ims, when you read the statement about the CSM after your meeting, you basically invited litigation. So it's as if you all are playing chicken with your own residents to to take you to court. Like, it's like you're asking us to bring it on. And I'm saying, I can promise you, there are more and more people who will be delighted to, if that's what you want. But we would like the village to pay for our attorney fees. Because right now we're paying for Cole to not represent us, but to represent you all in this adversarial relationship. It doesn't make sense to me at all, but here's where we're at. And so I just kindly ask, what might we need to do so that residents can get? The legal representation that we, that you are daring us to to get, to to do. I mean, if you want, like, we can do it. This is a, 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 this is a neighborhood filled with very capable lawyers who would be delighted, I'm sure. But I think people need to be paid for their labor, just as Cole is going to be paid for their labor. And I'm just asking, what is the mechanism by which the village will pick up the bill? And then I think we're good to go.
Jennifer, thanks for, thanks for sharing that. We're we're not doing a Q and A on this, but.
All right, I guess the two things I'll just sign off, the bigger one, I'm actually serious on both of them, but the first one is really just asking the board. Are you really okay with the adversarial relationship that you have allowed? I mean, it's metastasized over the summer. And this isn't a few rogue free radicals in the village and it will not go away. And it will certainly not go away when scrutiny is brought to bear on the other things that you all want to do. I mean, you're gonna, I I just, I don't, I don't understand it. It's not practical. It's not pragmatic. It's quite foolish. But I just also don't understand, like, what's the spirit behind it? And I wonder what you all can do to heal and and to help this repair. Because you have invited so much frustration and so much suspicion and frankly exhaustion from so many of us who've had to put so many hours doing your work. So one is the adversarial relationship and maybe you just shrug your shoulders and you're okay with it and then we figure that out. And then the other one is a very serious one, which is. If your residents need, we need a good lawyer. And we pay a lot in our taxes here and we would like those taxes not to be going against our own interests, but but speaking for us. And, uh, we pay a lot in our taxes here and we would like those taxes not to be going against our own interests, but, but speaking for us, right? Uh, when we have a president who admitted to us that he made a mistake. And yet the, an attorney now who's saying. We're, we're just gonna pretend that this goes away. And so I just wanna ask what the, the process might be that we can get some financial. I mean, that basically we can, uh, uh, get a lawyer to represent us and have. Money pick up the bill. Thanks.
I, I, no, I appreciate your comment. I, we definitely noted your question. And, uh, we'll move forward with the public comment, but really appreciate it. Thank you. I see John's hand. Who else is, has their hand up? Oh, online. John, we're gonna go there. All right. All right, so, uh, Brian? Are you up?
Yep. So my question is a simple one. Uh, there was an open records request that, uh, was Brian Berquist. And, um, Mooney filled out or responded to, I should say, um, that John had put together. And in that, in, inside, none of those records, while we did, were able to find the record of the, the, the. Permit pulled for the stairs, there was no inspection that was noted, nor was there any file included, um, that that ever occurred. And the permit was actually marked not to require inspection. So how that was inspected or by whom or where that record is, that there. That would be news to all of us if that was actually true. That's not been present anywhere. I'd like to know how Shabna knows that. Where that's from. And then if that information was forthcoming, I'm also curious to know. The, is that the reason that the chief of police then elected not perhaps to pursue charges? Why was the chief of police? In that meeting that when you went into closed session? I'd be curious to hear, uh, uh, based on the fact that they think the permit was inspected. I mean, I guess that's the reason, but is that where that whole thing lies?
Brian, I appreciate your, your comment. We, we, we're not doing Q and A on this, but we definitely noted your questions.
Oh, will I get an answer at some point then? Like, is it just, there is no answer? I'm just asking.
All right, you can send your question to me and Papi Brian Mooney and we will get you a response. You bet. I, I respond within twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, uh, everything. So, um, Jenny, I think you're up next.
Okay, um, thank you all very much. Uh, I'm Jenny Trude. I live, uh, down on University Bay Drive. Um, I wanted to just say that I disagree with the way that this all happened, um, cause it sounds like. Uh, there was plenty of knowledge in the village about, um, whether or not. The assessment was accurate. Um, and so I would ask for more transparency in the future. Um, I know that this will not solve this particular issue. Uh, that sounds like it's gonna be, um, solved in other ways, but, um, it would be helpful in the future. If we had some information when these sorts of decisions were being made. For example, uh, not too long ago, I spoke against. Um, my neighbor on Wellesley adding to their garage. Um, because I had information that that was a question. So my suggestion would just be to have a little. Additional transparency in the future so that you can hear these, uh, pieces of information from the village before. The, be- before we get to this point. So I don't know if that's legal, but it's just something that seems like a good idea. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, Jenny, thanks for your comment. Appreciate that. All right, I don't see any more online. John, I think you're up next.
Just a quick follow-up about the, uh, building permit and the supposed inspection. Well, we, we, and Brian, you should noted. In response to our request, we didn't receive anything about the inspection. First, first point. Second point. Uh, what I recall, I, I looked it right recently, but the building permit, I think Brian's right about that may not be open for inspection. But two, if, as I recall, it says that they're gonna modify the stairs. So the key question is, they did modify the stairs. What they did was, at least according, based on what, uh, New Warner said. Was that they took. There's a stair and there's another stair and then a bunch of other stairs coming up. They extended the second stair over the first stair. So if they inspected it, that's probably what they saw. They did that. After that, they're not claiming that the area inaccessible. So I think the only question is. Did the inspection show the area was actually inaccessible and how? Inaccessible to me means that they can't walk up there, so you can't get up there. There's no evidence that occurred. As far as I can tell. The evidence is contrary that, when the, it's in the picture shown. You can see right down the stairs. You can see the open door. You can see that they fixed up the attic. They reed the floors. They painted the walls. We talked to Roseanne about it. She said, wow, this looks so nice compared to what I. So I'd like to have that answered. And I think that just to say there was an inspection done, doesn't mean it was gonna be accessible. And that's what I was really asking for. Was for you guys to investigate this. Shabnam, thank you for at least taking the steps to try to do that. I think your investigation may be somewhat faulty. That's what I'm saying. But thank you for doing that. That's what we want the board to do. That's why we, we'd like. A real special meeting you guys could address this and talk about investigating. That's what we ask for. I don't see anything, I, Bill, I don't see anything that creates risk for the village to investigate. If you could address that at all, maybe Shabnam could ask. What risk is there to investigating what occurred, especially if you rely to, either before. You know, the CSM was granted or by immediately switching it out, which presumably violates. All your zoning ordinances. So I don't know why you wanna investigate.
Yes, go ahead.
Brian. And don't we, don't we have insurance in the village in a case that is questionable? Isn't that something we pay our, our taxes for? That if, if there is an issue that arises. Um, that the village is insured in order to follow up. So what's the reluctance?
Thank you. Yep. All right, uh, Kate?
Yeah, hi Kate Karleman. Uh, in the. Follow-up to the May meeting, um, Brian Berquist, our village engineer, was asked. About the verification of the attic being made accessible and in the email that was shared with us, no reference request. He said very, very specifically that he did not verify. That the attic was. He said his lesson learned was. To trust and verify. I think he said that in the, oh, his meeting too. That seems very much in conflict with. With the, that there was an inspection done. Perhaps Brian didn't know about the inspection, but then I wonder how does Brian Berquist. Recommend the approval of building. If he hadn't seen the inspection. This all speaks to John Fanci's point of, there's a lot to investigate. And you have access to. We're, we're asking for it. We're getting some of it. We're not getting all.
Thanks for that, Kate. All right, other, other pub comments on the CSM? Back online. Uh, Jennifer? Uh, you're up again. Uh, we can't hear you though. You're muted.
I'll keep it brief and I, I say this, John, with some reluctance, cause, um. I mean, I'm not here to. Make a spectacle of myself or to bring shame on you, but I, I do want you, I, I don't know whether you're mistaken. Like whether, whether you're just making a mistake or you're not being honest with. Everyone who's sitting in the room or the Zoom room, but you don't respond to emails. John, 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 the whole. For, again, for people, there are different issues going on. For some, it's about a hundred and fifty-year-old oak grove that's been cut down. For other, it's. You know, impropriety and, and appearance of fraud. And for others, it's just basic transparency and open communication. And, and, right, but it wasn't the last meeting, but the one before that, when everyone was so activated and upset. Dietmar said, look, we all have emails. Just email. It's fine. And literally on the next day. I sent an email. And this began, and, and so began the saga of me being activated by all of this. So I just, I just want for the record. That the response has, is often nothing. Um, it's sometimes extremely slow. And as you all know, you were told, wait, don't, you, that you're not supposed to answer because answering a, an email could be in violation of open records. Uh, I mean, open meetings or, or closed meetings. Actually, I don't even remember now. But anyway, my point is still this, that part of the reason why I'm very upset and I know that I speak for many people in the Zoom room. And many people in the physical room and many people who can't be here tonight is because what you just said, John, is patently false. And if you want, we're happy to print up all of the documentation to show.
Well, we're, we're, um. I, I will just say this, Jennifer, that I think folks that have been involved in this issue saw my responses very early on. The, the attorney spoke to a lot of these issues tonight. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I fell short of your expectations with respect to responding. Um, as candidly as maybe I wanted, but for, you know, I, you know, I. I take the advice of counsel very seriously and made some decisions, but I think the track record shows that I have responded and. Responded appropriately on a whole myriad of, of issues, including this one. And I certainly can, can document that, but I appreciate the comment again. Okay, uh, I see Johnny, uh, for, for the next comment.
No matter how you look at this. It's a shame for the. You're, you're hiding, you're ducking, you're blaming the lawyer. The obvious is there and everyone can see it. And, and you're pretending that we can't. But you know what the biggest casualty is? The biggest casualty is trust. Now you're coming forward, you want a six-point-five million dollar building and there is a transparency there. I mean, if you don't have trust, how do you run a village? Trust is everything.
Thanks for that, Johnny.
I'll be quick.
Okay.
First of all, um. The, I believe the residents are owed a written report. And, uh, if we have to have it on the September board agenda to discuss whether we will give them a written report. Then I will request that it is on the September agenda. We should be able to make that decision without having to put it on the agenda. Um, Bill, I understand as a litigator myself that oftentimes. You never want information out because it can be used against you and that is very certainly true with the fence. Uh, you never give them anything be, unless they need it. In this community, I think it's a different tone. Nobody is looking for a report. Just to find something in there to sue the village. That is not who these neighbors are. They just want truth and transparency and they're owed it. And I don't wanna hear that we can't have this discussion during public comment when it's not unlawful. It is not a violation of the statutes. What's a violation of the statutes is if you had a motion during public comment, but it's not unlawful to have a discussion. Can you answer if they can get a written report? Can we answer that? Or do I have to put it on the September agenda?
Isn't there one of this?
There's a one-page memo that says we decided not to rescind the CSM. But it doesn't say when the attic was inspected, by who and the date, which is what they want. If you, if you stand, if you, if we're relying on facts, we shouldn't be afraid to give facts.
I'll, I'll speak out of turn and say I'd like to see a report. So we'll just, we'll leave it at that, but I wanna get back to the public comment. Who's up online? Oh, sorry, Julie and Kevin. You're up.
Hi, this is Julie of Julie and Kevin, first-time Zoom caller here at the Village Board. Thanks for having me. Um, I live directly across from the, um. Property in question with the CSM, so I'm not gonna rehash any of those discussions, but what I will say is. Um, I think it would be. In the best effort of the village, if we could maybe review some of the zoning policies. I took the time to go through chapter twenty-five zoning, um, and the water runoff that we use. Is from nineteen eighty-one, so as the person who lives directly across. From this property and downstream from it, um, I would hope that we wouldn't use the water. Runoff and precipitation measures in our zoning from nineteen eighty-one. So I guess my question is, or yes, my question is for the board and the zoning, it's not your fault. I appreciate that you're volunteers. If we can just kind of review and update some of those measures. Um, in a timely fashion, because, um, I have a finished basement and I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Julie. Uh, other public comments on the CSM issue? Yeah, go ahead. Identify yourself, Rick, Rick Baker.
With all of these unanswered questions. I don't understand why we're having a zoning board meeting tomorrow if there hasn't been transparency. And, and answers to all these questions that have been asked tonight. Doesn't make any sense. Can't the village trustees postpone that meeting? Get the answers and circulate the answers, so that we have a, we're respectable zoning board meeting? That is trust and with, with trust?
Thanks for sharing that, Rick. Other, other comments? Questions? I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, it's not a zoning board meeting, it's a zoning board's appeals, which is a different.
And the building permit and the CSM are two different issues.
Do you get one with the other? I don't think you do. All right, you don't get a building permit. You're not allowed to build on a lot. This, I mean, that makes sense, doesn't it?
All right, um, any other, any other comments on the CSM? Yeah, go ahead, Noah.
My name's Jen, I'm on Sunset Drive.
Thanks, Jen.
Late to this discussion, but I'm still unclear as to why. Well, if we decide not to rescind the CSM, then it kind of sets a precedent. And people will. Developers will, must have new methods of evading the process. So I'm just kinda, can you clarify for me whether it's been decided that we will not rescind, it was dawned that that's.
I'll answer that very quickly. I'll answer that. And I'm gonna reflect on what I do in my day job. So I sue the federal government in immigration-related stuff. And I frequently go to my law partners and I say, we gotta file this suit. And they all say, you can't do it. And I say, how can this happen? And they're like, that's, this is the world and the America we live in. You don't have a claim. And we have like heated discussions over this. So I am usually you in those discussions. People own, property owners have rights to divide their lands, whether we like it or not. If you wanna divide your land and it meets the zoning code, you are allowed to do it. And it's, it might make us mad and irritated, but it's, it is, it's bitter. It's unfair when you learn that something is true when you don't want it to be, but that, those are the rules. You're allowed to do, you're allowed to cut the trees on your property. You're allowed to divide your parcel and it's probably gonna happen more, especially with the bigger lots.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Jen, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm gonna share this. I was gonna share, I'm gonna share this later, but. You know, the, the plant commission has already taken steps to strengthen our ordinances and processes. Based on what happened here. Uh, on August twelfth, the commission reviewed detailed draft updates from Commissioner Craig Weinhold and Fandewall, our planning consultant. Some of the proposed changes include public notice. Requiring the hearings for CSMs that create new, new, uh, conforming lots shall be held. With clear village clerk drafted notice language and longer submission deadlines to ensure timely communication to neighbors. Setbacks. We're simplifying the language, removing outdated provisions and ensuring calculated setbacks are mandatory. With vacant lots excluded from the averaging. Uh, fire and height, we're closing loopholes in basement garage calculations and height limits to prevent overbuilding. Now, we're working to merge Craig Weinhold's provisions with Fandewall's recommendations, our planning consultant. Incorporating commissioner and staff feedback into a red line draft for the board to review at a future meeting. The goal is to improve transparency, strengthen protections and ensure future development reflects the values and character of Sherwood Hills. and ensure future development reflects the values and character of Sherwood Hills. We will continue to engage openly with residents, provide clear updates and invite feedback before any changes are adopted. And of course, your participation is essential to shaping these improvements. Thanks for the opportunity to share that. Uh, question here or comment here, sorry, comment here. And your name? Thank you, Paulette.
There'll be a moratorium on any division, so can you do that? New regulations are put in place?
Um, that's not, that's not planned at this time.
You can't do that.
Yeah.
I also suggest that would be a really good idea. Probably some people anxious to get going right now.
I know, I appreciate that. I appreciate the comment. Other comments on the CSM? Yeah, Alan.
Just wanted to thank Shabna for adding that detail. And I think to your point, um, if the CSM meets all of the requirements, um, as written, then the owner can divide properly. I agree with that. And I think that is the often question, if factually it met the requirements. Because if it didn't, that's the reason you rescind.
Thanks, Alan. And back here?
Uh, of course.
Hey, Jen.
I appreciate the planning commission is investigating new procedures to avoid difficulties. I just want to point out that that corner of Sweetbrier, there's a 67-acre natural, uh, historical district that's been declared. National Historic District. And that is the very epicenter of the beginning of Sherwood. And I'd like the board to at least acknowledge that. And then waiting until allowing the destruction of that property is a crime regardless whether or not we fix things a year from now. So I think there's a little weight to trying to rule situations so that we can remedy this part, the damage that's being done back there.
Thank you, Jen. All right, other comments on the CSM this evening? We've, we've got some other issues we're gonna move to and we have a full agenda as well. So other, other comments on CSM? Okay, I think we'll move forward in the public comment period. So, um, we're, the next section, we're gonna talk about the logic uh, property proposal. I just, I'll make a quick statement and then we, this is an agenda item on the board. So we're gonna have lots of discussion on that. But I'll just share with everyone on the front end, the front end here. The village of Sherwood Hills has entered into a, a contingent offer to purchase the former logic property at 2801 Marshall Court. This step was necessary to lock in a fair purchase price and key conditions with the seller so we could properly evaluate the opportunity. The offer is fully contingent on approval by the village board within 90 days, which means no final decision has been made. We are now in an exploratory due diligence phase, gathering financial details, community input and feedback from residents to determine whether this acquisition is the right move for our village. Without an accepted offer, the property could have been pursued by others, leaving us without the ability to conduct a thorough and informed analysis. To ensure transparency, the village is hosting a public open house and tour on September 4th from 4:30 to 6:30, all by a town hall at 7:00 PM at village hall. These events, along with surveys and online resources, are designed to give residents the chance to review the building, ask questions and share input before any decision is made. For more information and updates, visit, uh, the link on the, on the village website. We also had, I think, some flyers, uh, with some information, um, as well. So with respect to public comments on the logic purchase, uh, there's some comments. Gary Johnson?
Gary Johnson, I live on 3010 Harvard Drive. Uh, I would, I, I have looked into the logic building specific and I would forge a meeting on the 5th to be able to take a look at it.
Fourth, yeah.
Fourth, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's right.
Uh, but in general, uh, I, I like village hall here where it is. It's visible. We are not, as a community, very visible. Most people in Madison don't even know Sherwood Hills exists as a separate entity.
Yes. Go ahead.
Uh, this location gives us some visibility. It's right off the University Avenue. It's, it's, it's got a beautiful sign that advertises Village of Sherwood Hills. It's right at the main entrance to the Village of Sherwood. I think to move it to Doctor's Park, which is what, I'm an old person. That's, that's what we call that. I'll let her read it with the doctor. Uh, but to move it there decreases its ability to, to, to a great extent. It makes it more inaccessible to village residents. It's kind of out of the way, out of sight. I, I, I appreciate their, their space needs in the village. Although I have a little trouble deciding why, because there aren't any more people in the village than there were when I was six. That's some time ago. And you know, there, there aren't more employees, there aren't more residents, there aren't more kids. Uh, I don't know if we can make space in some other way. So I would just say, I, I'll be interested in looking at it and making a more informed search of that. But Brian, as we're active, don't leave this place.
Thanks, thanks very much for that, Gary. I, Marilyn, I saw your hand first, so we'll start there.
Marilyn Townsend, 1121 Wells, they wrote. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak and I'm just delighted to see so many people from our community how to address important issues and to view, um, our government. I have substantial concerns regarding the proposal um, for the 6.5 million dollar building, um, Marshall Court. But first, let me speak briefly about the process. I spent a week sharing with as many of you in the community as I could my concerns without probably going with the merits of the purchase because pouring this lovely shiny building that had a restaurant we had all been at, at least I have enjoyed it. It seems like putting the cart before is this financially viable for our small community of 500? We first heard that there was some, um, interest by our board in acquiring, um, a building with public facilities. There was a meeting June 16th, July 15th and August 6th. It was big. I objected to the closed meeting. And as a lawyer myself, who had advised clients on the open meetings, it was one thing to go into closed meetings to direct your negotiating team as to should I offer? Selling agent for logic said, well, it's worth eight million, but I think you can get it for six. Well, let's offer five and a half. He said, well, just offer six and a half. That's one thing. That's private. It's another, and not even not even tells they were considering the purchase of this building or who decided. This weekend, as I went up and down the streets and I would see couples walking, I would say, are you resident of the village? Well, this one couple said, no, no, I'm not. I work for Madison, but I'm interested. And so I said, I handed them one of my flyers. And he said, oh, the lodge bill. I said, oh, do you know it? He said, yes, my organization was interested in purchase. I said, oh, well, how did that go? Said, well, you know, it wasn't as expensive as I thought it would be. I said, well, how, what did they say? I'm not gonna get into that. He said, but we like the location. And he said, he was with the Ronald McDonald House. But he said, you know, with the building comes a restaurant. And the selling agent told us, well, we could have a restaurant there and we could make a lot of money. Well, we thought about that. I mean, well, we don't really aren't in the rest of this. This week, and I could never understand why this board and no one really explained to me, why didn't they tell us what the building? This weekend, I met a resident and said, oh, I talked to trustee. And he said, we kept it secret because we didn't want the UW to know who was interested in the building. Let me tell you, the university of Wisconsin knows every building in two miles up. They looked at it and I would bet you, although the selling agent doesn't discuss this with me, I would bet you that agent tried to sell it to the university. We're not interested. It's been on the market two years. Then they came, understand, even though we don't have minutes yet of a closed session. Now trustees are talking about what happened in the closed session as they believe they can. And, um, they were told that, um, selling agent could get a deal for them, even though it's priced at eight million, we get it for six. Well, my question was, why is it three? We don't know. But in, as a trustee for 12 years myself, I, we were in closed sessions, very limited. And sometimes even though we could, it isn't the law that we have to go session. That's a discretion of trustees. And, um, they make decisions. But let's get to the, um, issue now. I had asked in a public open records request for the packet that they gave in the closed session on June 16th. I asked again all through the time. Finally got it on August 11th. The packet was a summary by the president to the trustees saying this was a good deal. And then a fancy brochure, uh, from the lodge. I do not know what else the board looked. We've done an open records request, but I shouldn't be dealing with my government like I'm a litigator. I should, I've been asking repeatedly for the offer of purchase. That's a public document. They say, our poor staff said, no, Marilyn, I'm just so busy in public records requests. That's not a good sign. If I was a trustee, you can do it and take that, um, offer a purchase and just email it to the client, uh, resident and let them get it. So not to the, yeah, the job you, that. Um, the other thing, um, the president said in this memo and it's also in this little sheet they, is that, um, the purchase is financially feasible. I'm on the finance committee. We were supposed to have a meeting in July. Out of explanation from his counsel, the finance committee is not window dressing for this village. We were given no information concerning it. Um, but he said in the memo, um, it says part financially feasible because the village quit by buying the building, um, and leasing both the former daycare and restroom space in the building generated between $300,000 in annual income, more than 10 times the properties current village property tax revenue. He added that such revenues might avoid the need for a future repelling. Well, again, I don't know the documents. I don't know why they said so. But let me tell you, some of our best friends have operated a restaurant. It is not easy. We had a rookie owner of the property. Our poor staff at this point would be super disappointed. We have to be very, we're a community of 2,500 people. We have stayed in existence when other communities over Wisconsin have gone out of business. I know the 12 years I was on the board were there, it was conservative. We watched what we were doing with our money. And this is really a big jump. So, um, I would say I don't object to touring it. But we're putting the cart before the horse. Let's see the documents. Let's see if we have capability of even management. I heard that staff really wants it. That always better, um, patients. But what I'm concerned about, we have 23 full-time staff. I'm the chair of the personnel committee for 10 years. We have 17. There's a real difference each time you put another full-time staff at increments of salary and cost of living and staff. Health insurance, food, we have a wonderful state pension plan. We've got to make sure you take care of financial risk. Make sure no one is paid up and, um, carefully. Now I just saw, just last night or 24 hours ago, there was a timeline added to the board pack. Said they want to vote to approve the deal over, I don't know, I guess 15 through 16. You know, it's on a fast track. We need to help, but it's very hard to be a trustee. You have to slow this thing down and make sure the numbers work. And what I've seen isn't very much for the $300,000 revenue from the restaurant there. So, um, thank you and, um,
Marilyn, thanks. Marilyn, thanks for your, thanks for your comment. Um, I also received the copy of your letter, uh, this morning and I responded to it, um, uh, this afternoon, and I know you received that.
Yeah. John, you did, but it was essentially what you said in the press.
Well, I think it was more than that, but that's all right. But my, but I, but I, you know, I will tell you that we're working diligently with staff to get the documents up on the website, provided. And so, and we're gonna speak more about it during the agenda tonight.
I have Marca.
Sam?
Okay, I'm Sam Carroll D. Mahaney Braithwaite, 3424 Byburnham. 34 years living in the village and I have been a regular attendee at these meetings. Right, by myself. Now, I have a contrary story to the, the village board or the village, whatever they are, the village, I'm gonna say people, then I'm gonna do YMCA, but the people who work at the village. And I went in and I asked Brian, I said, chief Brian, why is the village of Sherwood Hills listed as a co-owner on the Moose Lodge? That, by the way, is the logic building. And he said, well, I don't know. I don't know why we would be on that. I'm thinking, at this point, you must have been a little uneasy that I was coming in asking about exactly the building that you guys were talking about in closed session. Well, I didn't have to wait more than, I would say, 18 hours before I had full response. I even had a response from the person at the D's department who sent me a letter saying, oh, we're really sorry. It's a clerical error. We'll take it off. So I'm just sort of saying, I don't know, there's something not right. Okay, so then the next thing I wanted to just say here is that the board has put out a very good statement about what they want. The board will discuss how this opportunity aligns with, um, department's space, future budgetary considerations, comprehensive plan and the strategic. Those are very good things. And when you do the evaluation on this, I'd like to see all of those done, not by you. You all have lost my trust 100%. So I want this done by an independent committee because I'm not gonna believe anything you guys come up with. Finally, regarding all of these closed sessions, I had to think, wait a minute. I thought we got rid of Sharon. Oh, apparently we didn't get rid of Sharon because they're going and they are looking at this huge financial commitment. I don't know, maybe you don't think 6.5 million dollars is a lot, but I do. They're going and they're talking about it without going to the facilities, without going to the, um, to the, um, the budget guys. And without going to anybody, just themselves. And so they make this decision without going through the committees that we have carefully put together so that we can first look at what it is that we're pursuing from a village resident perspective as opposed to the seller's perspective, which really is not who we should be dealing with. We, we should be dealing with a licensed commercial Realtor who's gonna who's going to go out and get us honest bids for how much that building is for. You can't ever trust the seller's agent to tell you how much something is going to cost. So that's dumb. But that's looking like when Sharon was here, when she wanted to get rid of the committee input and bring it back to just the board and just the administrator. Sharon, again, has been fired from her second job. So we know that however it was that she was trying to take our village down with all the poison pills that she brought that has totally made this village to be very uncomfortable with everybody. I mean, I kind of, I was worried about who I'm going to see on the street. What are they going to say? Or can I ask them something? But that's all because we became so, we're, we're, the CSM has just brought a lot of problems forward. I just, I don't know what to tell you other than I really think that apologies are not enough. And John, I really think you need to resign. So, this leadership before you have taken this village in totally the wrong direction.
Thank you.
So, let's see, did I get everything up? Just a second, I have to look at these things. It shakes all. Okay, this is the last one. So you're going to talk about all the space needs that we've had over the years where we've had surveys. And we've had people coming and talking about, do you like this one? Do you like this one? What should we have at the firehouse? What should we have in the village hall? What should we have over here? What should we have? We have spent years talking about what we want and where and how we want it. We want the moon. I mean, honest to God, you read these things and it's like, what, what village are you living in? But the problem with all of that is that all of these space needs that have been done, which when they were done before by the staff, were done by the staff. Now you come and you ask me, when I'm working in a little office, it's basically a closet. Do you need a bigger space? Oh, yes, of course I do. The problem has been that all of these surveys have been done without any regard to cost. And so when you don't have a cost associated with your decision, what are you going to say? You're going to say, yeah, I want the, well, what do I want? I don't even know what I want. I want something, but it's going to be something that I can't afford. Because you're not giving me the pertinent information that I need in order to give you what it is that you really need. We have enough land. We are not taking care of it. We have been trying to work on that firehouse 34 years ago. When I first came in here, they were talking about redoing the firehouse. Here I am 34 years later and we have done nothing. We have plenty of space in this building. There is nothing wrong with this building. It's fine. We have, we need the boathouse overdone. That's going to cost us money. I just heard where they took a place that out of the capital budget. And now we're talking about a $6.5 million building? We can do that, but we can't do a place that? Okay, so there's, there are priorities that are all screwed up. And somehow you guys need to get back on track. Because going forward with this kind of an endeavor, you can see what has done. The village is not happy with this notion. And you guys really have, over the last couple of years, really done something to the trust we have in the village. Yes. So that's all.
Thank you, Sam.
I think that's it. I won't look anymore at the piece of paper.
Is this still back here?
Me?
No, sorry, go ahead.
This is David Brown.
Hi, David.
First to the trustees, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Taking a lot of heat tonight and I'm not going to pile on anymore. I appreciate your work and your willingness to listen to this rather difficult conversation. Let me put it that way. I'm pleased to be here. Let me say at the outset, I'm absolutely against the logic purchase. Not necessarily because of its space it provides for the staff. But I have no belief that any town of our size should be in the business of running restaurants. Horrious businesses fail it, right? They're highly cyclical and at the worst times in the economy, they fail, right? And to saddle this, this small community on top of everything else it has to do with operating a business is absolutely wrong. So let me just say that I'd imagine there are alternatives that could come about with the right financing and right connections. That would be for a private business to own the building and lease the space we need, if that is truly the case, right? A long-term lease. We didn't go into the details. But that's the sort of alternative that should be considered. If, if the, the community were to move ahead with this building. Absolutely no way should the, the community buy outright that building. And I think we're wasting our time going to tour.
Thanks, John. I'm Bob Hurley. I live by Prestonwood. I was on the board for eight years. I don't know much about commercial real estate, but I know a little bit. And that is if the two businesses have been empty for two years. You get NOI, net operating income, from tenants. There's what operating income from this building now? I think it's zero because there's no tenants. The owners have been trying to lease that place up for two years because it increases the value of the sale. Nobody's there, no leases signed, no NOI. The capex is nothing because there's no ability to get your money back. So to say to this village, oh, wait a minute. The guys that own the building have been trying to lease it up for two years and haven't been able to do it, but we're gonna. Please, this is not an generational opportunity. It's a white elephant.
Bob, I, I understand your point of view. I mean, we're going to get into it, you know, in a little while as part of the agenda. I think we'll be able to address some of what you said, but I appreciate the comment. I'm going to go back to this side and I'm going to ask Tracy.
My name is Tracy Gozil and I live on Lake Inglewood Drive. I'm here to talk about the logic building as well. I can't really offer any support or honestly strong opposition because there's just not enough information. Kind of echoing what you're hearing is, I think the biggest missing piece for the village is a true master plan and a list of priorities. I have sat through many meetings, committee meetings, et cetera, where we have many spaces and buildings in disarray. From the Public Works Firehouse to the McKenna Park, to this building, et cetera. The list can go on in addition to our public park spaces. I've watched many, many master plans created throughout the years that get abandoned. I know we just created one for McKenna Park. What has happened to that? So I just really feel the bigger picture is a step back. I know surveys have been sent out to us village residents many times over many years, asking what we want, what we want to see. But I don't see results from that. I think we need a true map and I think we need to prioritize what is our true need at this time. Is a new police and admin building our number one priority for our village residents? Who can answer that? I don't know, and I don't think it's been asked. Now that's the primary issue I have with this decision. Do I think the logic building would solve that? I don't personally believe so. I am also of the mindset that this building isn't a forgotten building and it has life in it. I would like to understand the space studies that are being done that are telling you we've run out of space. I can't say we are or we aren't because I don't have the data. Our village actually has grown. I disagree with our population being stagnant. We have many more due to the apartments and everything on universities. So we do have more village residents and that's probably why we have more staff trying to manage things. But I just think we need a better roadmap to dictate to us what's our true need and what's our priority moving ahead. If you guys still feel it's in our best interest to pursue this purchase, I strongly hope you guys have good financial planning and good financial advice and good representation for us as a village buying a commercial real estate property. I think we're all well aware since the pandemic, commercial real estate property is not popular. People don't want to buy it. Spaces are empty. You can't find people to lease spaces. I know there's a lot of opposition to the restaurant. You could easily dismantle that and turn that into something else. I'm not really obsessed with whether it's a restaurant or not, whether it's a daycare or not. I'm assuming we would not be managing that. But I would be worried about being the manager of a building. Having run rental properties myself, it's a lot of work. And I already see our village staff's breasts very, very thin and they're already asked to do a lot. So I would want to know who is managing this new large building. I'm also in the mindset, I think the location is not ideal because of where it is. It's, I like the community feel of this building, even though it is over the railroad tracks. It's still easily accessible to walk up, drop your thing in the mailbox, come have a brief conversation with someone. It's, it's very approachable and very accessible. But these are my personal opinions. So we're all going to have a different opinion. You guys know that. We're all going to have different values and opinions on where things should go. That's why I think the master plan would be great. Because there was talk of even moving the admin and police over Public Works, where we're moving Public Works somewhere else. I remember seeing a master plan for the pool building being like this crazy arch reaching where you guys want to put another playground. So I, I guess.
It's incredibly expensive, but we're going to get into it, Tracy.
Hands made a lot of money, wasted a lot of consultants hired. And we don't know what our final decisions are. And I think this is too early of a decision and we need better.
In the far back.
Good evening. Laura Paul Drama, 2820 Marshall Court. So I would like to provide a little perspective from Dr.'s track. I may be in the minority here. Young families really appreciated what logic offered. I do see the vision. It is very expensive, so I'm not saying let's go for it. But I do want to provide some insight that it was really heartbreaking to know personally families who were affected by the daycare closing their parents who worked at the hospital, who no longer had childcare for their kids. We have an opportunity here as a village, as a greater Madison community also, perhaps consider doing a co-op for the daycare during a co-op for the restaurant space. Whereas Tracy just mentioned, it doesn't even have to remain a restaurant space. I think we just, my only comment tonight is I implore you all to have an open mind and consider other perspectives and other locations within the village. Yes, this village hall may be central to most of you. It's not for some of us. So just please keep that in mind. That's all. And thank you for your time.
Thank you a lot. Right here.
Hi, I'm Sam Murphy.
Hi, Sam.
I'm circle close. I just, this is my first meeting and I just have a question as to if this is considered, would a referendum be put out there?
We have a 90-day window to decide as the village if this is something we want to do forward. We couldn't schedule a referendum within that timeframe.
It's like a lot of money to spend.
We could do a survey.
Yeah, I mean, we, we will do survey. We're, it's going to be, I mean, one thing we're going to talk about tonight is the whole phase of this. We, you know, we, yes, I think it's in the packet, you know, four or five phases of all things that are going to be involved here. It's going to be tons of opportunities. It's not just about a tour. It's not just about a meeting. You know, this may not happen, but we're going to evaluate fully. And tonight is kind of the start of it. And, you know, September 4th will be important, but the comments we're already receiving online, you know, the board members are going to read every single one of those. Everything's going to be available. Everything's going to be transparent. And, you know, you know, performance is the only thing that counts, I think, will perform. And I think you'll be happy with the due diligence that we do on this.
John, isn't this our time? Because we can't talk when you're bored. Isn't this time for us?
Thanks, Rocky. I was just trying to answer a direct question, but why don't you go ahead? With, you asked a question about the referendum. Was there anything else you want to share? Okay, thanks. Appreciate that. Are there other questions here this evening? Right here.
I mean?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Bill Thomas.
Hi, Bill.
3230 Charlie Lane.
Yep.
For 40 years. And I, I noticed that what the village, the, the people who are doing this have in mind is they're going to buy this place and then make some money with that. And also owe some village out. But I, I assume from this that when the village buys it, it goes off the tax roll. Is that right? Well, yeah, absolutely, right? Well, that building right now is delivering, delivering $99,000. Some of it goes to the village, a lot of it goes to the schools. And a lot of, some goes to Madison College and some goes to Dane County, $99,000. So you're stuck behind, I mean, as far as the organization, that, that is a, that was a tip project. And these, these agencies agree that they would support this and wait for the tax revenue to go up from the increased value. Is that going to happen here? You're going to knock off whatever, whatever it's worth now. Bingo, that's gone. Those people don't have any money. I, I would think about that before I started. And, and then another part of this is you're going to, either the deal, maybe it's a, maybe this is a deal. It's interconnected some way and we ought to learn about that. But then you're going to abandon this place and sell it for someone, hopefully. Or something, some, 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 something good for housing or something it says in there. I'd like to see that before.
Thank you, Bill.
Making money on the deal.
Thank you, Bill. Fred, see your hand up?
Yes, Fred Wade, 121 Walsley Grove. I'm happy to be married to Marilyn Townsend, who spoke earlier. I served on the board for four years. On the finance committee for many years, about 15. And one of the things I was concerned with when I was on, on board and on finance was the financial constraints that we face with us and going forward. When I was on board, we didn't have any money to really deal with major capital improvement projects. We just didn't have it. We spent recently $7 million to reconstruct the roads on the east side of the village. We had to defer. We were actively deferring in our minds the need to reconstruct the roads on the west side of the village. And although we've had a capital improvement plan that's been revised every year at budget time, the reconstruction of the roads on the west side of the village seems to have fallen off the radar screen. We have a community center that is still not handicap accessible. And it's fallen into my impression is disused because it hasn't been kept up. As its repairs are needed and to spruce it up and make it accessible. That also has fallen off the capital improvement plan schedule. Couple of things have jumped the line. Even though it's there. For many years, we've had a capital headline item on the capital improvement plan is, has been a new DPW facility, Public Works facility at a estimated cost of $5 million to construct. It's all been, been understood for as long as I can remember. That's just a placeholder number. Has no real substance to it, no hard estimate. But that's about $5 million or more, likely more. And there are other capital priorities. I've commented before to a number of times, we've got to try to deal with it. Getting a better handle on what our relative priorities are. Because we don't have a lot of money coming in. And we have levy limits and constraints on the amount of money that we can get going forward that don't allow us really to match the ongoing increased revenue sources what the cost of paying our employees is. We've got about, maybe we can raise our levy about $38,000 the last time I if memory serves. That's not enough to pay our increased expenses just as a result of inflation. So now we're all of a sudden, we've got this opportunity to spend $6.5 million to buy this facility. And we haven't yet decided what our priorities are. What are we going to use it for? What is going to have to be deferred even further among the needs that we've previously identified? Among the needs that we've previously identified, if you spend the money for this. So I'm very concerned about. Where we're going with this. If if we could magically fit, I think it would be magically, all many of our needs into this building. And it would be feasible. Maybe it would offset some of these other things that. Downsides in terms of. What we need to do in other areas and how we're gonna pay for it. But I doubt it. And one of the biggest things I see is a problem is there's no very limited on-street parking there. I mean, if people are gonna come from beating like this.
Underground and heat it.
Where are they gonna park?
Underground.
I know you can go underground, but a lot of people, if they're like me, they don't wanna experiment with going underground in a ranch, a ranch facility. So there might be enough under there, I don't know. But, you know, I I would not regard that as being an inviting location for anything that requires. Access for a lot of people. So that's just the top of my head reactions to what would we do with it? And how would we use it? So I just throw them out for you to consider, I think we've. We've gotta put it in a larger context than just. Going after this building in the process, I think.
Right, really appreciate that, thank you. Right here, Kathy Brock, and then we'll go to the room person online.
Kathy Brock, sorry, Kathy Brock on Dartmouth Road. I have a couple of things that have already sort of been said, but. When I read over the material on this subject online this afternoon, because I hadn't known how to find it before. One thing is, it looks, you know, I don't have the numbers here, but it looks like about forty percent of the building. Would it, it was, I didn't even realize it's empty now, but. Forty percent more or less. Was taken by the restaurant and the nursery school. And so plus or minus, but a very significant amount. And that seems to me to be a very strange business for Sherwood Hills to be in, to be. Having to think about renting out that space. To a nursery school, there's probably a call for it. I would be most interested in knowing what the finances of the previous inhabitants were there. The other thing is a restaurant, okay, or something else. But we would have to constantly be. Taking care of that and making sure that it's bringing in money to us and not sitting idle the way it has been. So I think those are very important things. I mean, I don't think we've got any business trying to be professionals at renting out our space. And we would have to do that to make it have any income to us at all. And I think that's pretty important. The other thing is location, and Tracy mentioned that also. I'm not, I think that it's at the end of Marshall Court. You come in off of University Bay Drive and drive a impressive long way, and there's that building. And I think it's a dead end, I don't think.
No, no, it's not a dead end.
Yeah, it connects all the way to university.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, yeah, you can go there, but you can't get back home that way.
Yeah, past La Brea, and then come out, yeah.
Yeah, so with the light, and I mean. It seems to me a very strange location for the the center of Sherwood's interest as. People can't sort of stop in and as somebody said, and drop off a tax, tax payment or whatever. And I think that's really quite important. So just two sort of important areas that I think are, you know. The rest of it, I I'm not big enough on finance, it didn't sound like a boon to me to have a questionable income.
Yeah, thank you for that, Kathy. In the back, in the red.
I wish I could, you've been doing that. I'm just curious, we've heard from a number of people, a lot more. Involved than I have been in terms of the fiscal status of the village, and that we don't have massive line capital surplus. I'm just curious, where do we come up with a six point five million? Does that end up, does that end up doing property taxes, where does this money come from in the variable? Where are you pointing to six point five million dollars?
So, I mean, as we get into the session, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. Obviously, we've authorized as a board, we've authorized as part of our capital improvement. Plan, so the idea is that we would do all this within our existing approved CIP plan. But I don't know if, we don't wanna have a full discussion right now, we really wanna get through the questions and then get into the agenda. But that answer will definitely be questioned, it's definitely been noticed. Julie, we're gonna go online?
Yeah, she's been waiting a bit.
Sorry so much. Camille? Am I seeing that right?
Yeah, hi, hi, thank you, I'm Camille Adamani, I live. Sorry, my teenage voice are making fun of me. I live on Oxford Road, and I wanna go back to what Bob Hurley said, because I think everything is spot on about that specific building. I also wanna say that I am, I build and run restaurants for a living. And the fact that I, and I've also been in that restaurant building, or, you know, the previous restaurant space. It is the entire first floor, or maybe a couple of other, you know, a hallway or two. It is a massive space, and even if we were to remove that restaurant. That in itself is extremely expensive to remove all of the the facilities and the equipment that would be in there. We're talking like massive, massive pieces of equipment. Also, if you do that, or or if you keep it, keep it or or remove it, it doesn't matter, that is for sure, being part. Is would be part of what we would pay for with that building. And so if we, if the, the. You know, part of the logic, no pun intended, of taking that space is that we could rent it or lease it to another restaurant. Again, to what many of the other villagers have said, we don't wanna be in the restaurant of, or in the business of running a restaurant. It is so complex, and I'd be happy to speak on that separately if anyone is interested. The second piece is, though, if we did remove it, then why are we paying for it? Because again, it is certainly valued, a big part of the valuation of that building, thank you very much.
Thank you, Camille. I saw your hand up before, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Bobby Hudson, I'm at thirty four seventeen Cerberus Close. And I would like to address something a little bit different, which is the fact that we had three closed sessions. Under the Olden Rutgers Law in the state of Wisconsin. And I would like to read to you from Milburn case, which was decided. The legislature has made the policy choice that despite efficiency events of secret government, transparency process is favored. Now, I understand there's a need for certain closed sessions with respect to purchase price and other items. That you need to keep secret in terms of the negotiation. But the identity of the building does not need to be kept secret. And so I would urge not the lawyer, but the member, but the trustees. When you decide to go into closed session, to do so in a very restrictive fashion. And in order to reestablish the trust that many of those have spoken about, that you need to favor transparency. Secondly, I read the material on the village website. And I was dismayed to read. Incomplete analyses of this transaction. The question, John, owes a series of hypothetical questions and then answered. One of the questions was, have we purchased this building? The answer was no. Instead, the statement should have been, we have made an offer to buy on a contingent basis with a ninety day approval rate. There was a complete lack of full disclosure. And even on in this proposal here. You're you're offering, presenting to us, the residents, a sales job. This is a once in a generation opportunity to evaluate. So I would ask for disclosure that it's factually based, it is comprehensive. On the website and all materials. And again, I would urge the members of the board, use the closed session in a very limited way. Perhaps as. Reestablish transparency in what and what and how you're communicating with us, because it's been efficient. Yes.
Johnny, go ahead.
You know, somebody mentioned a referendum. And I I think that's actually a good idea. And as she mentioned it, I was thinking, we we just had a referendum a little while ago. We had a referendum because we didn't have enough money around the village. Barely passed, and then I believe we rolled it into the general fund for the most part, but that's not important. What's important is, if we had to have a referendum to go above the state tax base. Now we're gonna buy a six and a half million dollar building. The two don't go together very well. And the first part of this meeting was about Sweet Rider, which was a series of stumbles and mistakes and miscalculations. When we built a boathouse. The guy who built the boathouse, nobody even came and monitored. He he just kept adding cost over run, because people just ghosted him when he contacted him to what he should do, there was no supervision. How are we gonna run a restaurant and daycare? How are we gonna do that? And you know, if you're a developer, you can give that a shot. And if it works, maybe it would work. But if it doesn't work, the developer can write it off. Those developers, by the way, who weren't interested in doing it. But if we do it and fails, we're holding the bank. We're sitting here with an empty restaurant and an empty daycare. And and that's. You know, you say this is a once in a lifetime opportunity, someone who just told us, well, might be a once in a lifetime chance to go bankrupt. We have to be really careful, this is a risky venture. And I don't wanna put anyone down on the board, because I realize you're residents like those of us out here. But you don't have experience in these kind of deals. This is now a play multimillion dollar deals, this is serious business. If we muck up, guess who pays for it? All those of us down here, we all pay for it. So that's why everybody has a lot of predation, because in the end, we're the ones who put that bill. And I don't really have confidence that this looks like a well thought out. It doesn't look like a great opportunity to me, if it were, I believe someone else would have probably snatched it in an itch. I think we gotta be, we gotta be really careful, it's risky.
Johnny, I I guess I understand that perspective, I do, I appreciate the comment. Go online, okay.
Fred's been waiting for a while.
Hey, Craig, why don't you join us?
Hello. Hey, thanks. Yeah, the the logic building, I have not reviewed the materials, I I look forward to doing it, so I have no predisposition on whether it's a good thing or bad thing. But I'd like to make two or three quick points. First, I like seeing police cars on Sherwood Boulevard at the entrance to the village. I'm guessing with the logic building, they would be underground, out of sight. I I don't, not sure about that, I would actually prefer to see them at the old village hall. But.
Sorry, hey, Craig, I'm sorry, could you speak, could you speak a little bit louder?
Sure, yeah, sorry, where's my microphone? Is this better?
It is.
Okay, yeah, so I would like to see, continue seeing police cars on Sherwood Boulevard, I think that's important. Second, we, at one of the meetings, we went through a facilities discussion where we kind of went through all the requests from. You know, staff and police and courts and public works, you know, trying to trying to figure out what everybody needed. The most compelling requests in that in that list were all from public works. Their specialized equipment, the need for a pull-through garage, all those things really resonated as a. Good use of money, and of course, this logic building does nothing for that, it does nothing to help what I considered probably the single biggest need. From from that that former facilities work. And that's that's all I had to say, I'm looking forward to reading about it. And and going through the the walkthrough and taking a look, it is an exciting building. I I think kind of to what Camille was talking about, making sure we have a good handle on what the remodeling costs actually are. If if it, you know, we can remodel our existing facilities. And I wouldn't be surprised if some of the remodeling at Logic, to reconfigure it for our use. Might end up being similar or more expensive than remodeling our existing spaces, thank you.
All right, thank you, Craig, appreciate that. And then let's go to Julie again.
Hi, since I'm here, I thought I'd just talk again. This is a comment just based on the timeline. I was lucky enough to go to some of the meetings regarding the Hayden House process. And the ninety day timeline seems really optimistic, in my opinion, based on the amount of feedback. Input and responses from individuals in the community. So I think it was very optimistic to think that a decision of this. Much income and money from residents could be made that quickly, based on previous examples of. Village work, where we make a decision as a group. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Julie, appreciate that. Shabnam, real quick.
So we do a terrible job of communicating, like just awful. I wanna acknowledge it, that everybody coming in here and saying what the hell is going on, you are completely justified. As somebody who's been on this board for seven years. There's a story, and we have to write this down and put it there, because it's just in my memory, and it's probably in your memories. But for years, the village was always fixing the streets and ignoring all of the facilities. And everybody would show up and say, what about our facilities, everything's a mess. So we decided that we wouldn't spend all the money that we can borrow to fix every street. We would do facility, street, facility, street, kind of try to address both of them. So then the facility site study happened. And we learned that this building is has problems, and the DPW building has enormous problems. Not just from a functional standpoint, from the structure, but your your staff. Is operating in conditions that are like safety hazards. And the numbers that kept coming out were like this renovating the DPW building is twenty million dollars. And we brought it to seventeen, and then fourteen, and a thirteen. And so there's that background of like, and if we were to fix the DPW building and we can't get, we wanna get all this. The police department, the village hall, and DPW there, so that this property could be monetized. There's, I'm just trying to share some of the background. And and so when the five million dollars came up. It was partly, I think, in comparison to the ten million dollars it costs to fix the DPW building. Now, I'm not saying that that's a good deal or the right deal, and certainly we're going to do our due diligence, and it might not be the right building. But the context matters. We tend to know the context, because we come to the meetings every month. And but we don't do a good job of giving you that context, the background.
Shabnam, thanks for that.
John, this is our time, is your time, can we talk during board meeting?
Rocky, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, we've been here, Rocky, we've been here for over two hours, I don't think it's unreasonable for a board member to provide a comment.
Because what she's saying is irrelevant.
Okay, I I was just gonna give Bob an opportunity, and then we'll see if there's any additional public comment, and then we'll get into the agenda for the rest of the evening. Bob, was there something you wanted to add?
Well, I just wanted to follow up what Shabnam said. As long as I've been on the board, we've been looking at these facilities. This was not driven to go look for some new shiny object, it was an effort to look at. Our facilities and all the maintenance costs we're gonna have to put in because of this deferred maintenance. And the fact that that is not meeting the current standards or the the current needs of our staff. And it's always been my opinion that we try to put together some different concepts. And look at what the costs are. In the midst of this whole thing, the logic building came up. And it's a very, you know, a short window, and we thought maybe it can offer some. Solution to some of our problems that we're having, some of the costs that we'll face. And I would encourage any of you that are. And I would encourage any of you that are interested in this to stay tonight. Tom Deegan is going to talk about some of the alternatives uh, in remodeling and some of the costs that are involved in dealing with firehouse, trying to bring some of that up. Just enough. There's a report on the pool. Um, and we'll also be talking about the logic building for some of those. Now, we don't have the answers to everything, but we're trying to collect those and we're trying to do due diligence and trying to involve you folks so we can make an intelligent decision. It may not be a good one to file. But it, but in my mind, we had at least investigated. And that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you for that, Bob. Okay, let's go back to the audience. A gentleman standing there? Go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you. And Bob, I do appreciate your time. Um, I, uh,
Could you, I'm sorry, identify yourself?
Tom Underkaffler, 3419 by Brown.
Yep. Thank you, Tom. Yep.
Um, so I have a little bit different perspective and I apologize that to answer my direct questions. But I am a 29 year banker, all of it in the capital markets, all of your municipal securities, bonds, the investment officer of a bank here directly, working over 560 different banks, regularly bidding on municipal securities, including the city of Madison, a 6.8% taxable issue, very involved in that process. Um, my questions, if I may, is how did the village come to the price point of the offer with the logic building? Second of all, did it consult with bond counsel? This is important, I think, to understand. My professional, and I'm not bond counsel on this, but the purpose of the financing that the village would utilize, the part of that that is public would be tax exempt.
Right.
Likely the portion that's going to be generating revenue would be taxable. It's going to be taxable in earned interest rates of the higher long-term rates that the village had financed that on a tax exempt basis.
Yeah.
And third, it's kind of been mentioned here as far as the competencies of the board to manage complex business lines in, in, uh, groceries and for restaurants are a significant amount of complexities. And, you know, again, coming to the capital markets, AAA rating is significant. Mostly examining and the amount of debt capacity that the village has is significant and important to consider as to looking at these different.
Okay. I really appreciate that. And I think I saw your comment online as, as well. If, if this moves forward, obviously the finance committee is going to be looking at that. I know we have engaged the bond council. Uh, I'll talk a little bit more and, you know, it's part of the session about how we got to the offer price that we provided. But I really
I'll stick around.
Yeah, I appreciate, uh, your comment and those are awful, all, those are all excellent observations and things that will have to be considered as we move forward.
One second, ten, one second, one comment.
One second.
Can I just ask, because everybody in this room is so educated, so smart, so talented in their own professions and careers. We need, I want to know your name and what you do so that when we are dealing with an issue that we could ask for your expertise. You're asking questions that I don't know to ask. And Tom Deegan is assisting on some issues because he has expertise. You guys know a lot of stuff and I would love to know what you guys are able to contribute so that we could pull you in.
But we're not going to do that right now.
Right now. Send an email with your name and what you do. That's all I want.
We're, we're anxious to move forward, but we don't want to curtail comments. So this, this comment, Rocky, I see your hand up.
Um, sorry about setting you up, the shot now, but you're being disingenuous because the board, for instance, uh, this lady talked about Sharon, right? Remember Sharon was hired. Sharon was hired and given direction by the board. Sharon was not a bad person. She was doing exactly what she was told to do. This board has had a constant hat from Dave and now John of getting rid of committees, ignoring everybody, loading the committees with two trustees, a few that are remaining. So all you need are the two trustees, all right, and one citizen and things go ahead. You guys have generated a feedback loop. So you keep hearing your same rhetoric all the time. You don't listen to anybody else. We can give you a list of our professions. I don't think you'd listen to any of us as a board. All right. I also find interesting is that from the last closed session, I took a picture of John Flatt doing core samples right here. How did he know about it and we couldn't find out about it? How do you know we're selling this building after the June closed session meeting? We didn't know about the building. We couldn't find, I believe Marilyn tried, what, three months to find out about it? John Flatt knew? I mean, to me, there seems to be a common thread over the last five, six years. Someone in this group wants to give this building to John Flatt. Cause there's a big tip to this building, Panera and all those things. They want to do one big giant project. And this is part of it. And you guys seem to generate all these studies that show that this building has to be forfeited. We have no choice. Even though the building's fine. You'll find out through Mr. Deegan, if you read his report, that it won't take much to put the police in the court down the DPW bill. They only can, the village should stay here. We have what we need. I don't think there's any confidence in the residents that you will listen. Because you haven't listened for the last two, three, four years. How many times you come to these poor decisions and it ends up in a big explosion like this? Cause you didn't listen to committees. Marilyn said finance never met on this. That's hard to believe. Flatt knew, finance didn't. Flatt knew. John, you want the picture? I can email it to you. The date's on it.
That was outside my office window. They were on their own property. They weren't
I know they were on their property, but they knew. They were right on the line. I still looked at it. I talked to the guy.
I'm not arguing. I just want you to know.
I don't even know it was. I could see it. The photograph shows it. It's right on the property lot. I talked to the guy. I know what you're, the point is, is, I mean, you don't listen to committees, you do things yourselves. You're going to buy this big building. You put in some artificial 90 day thing, right? My guess is you're going to buy that building. And we're going to be the restaurant business. And I don't know if we can even stop it short of trying to recall you and, you know, a few others on the board. Also, my understanding is, is the person selling the building, the realtor is in the same family, the brother-in-law of one of the trustees. So what if the trustees on this, his family's getting what, 5%? $3,000 off this sale? I mean, the whole, it, again, it takes a second to tell the truth and forever to tell a lie. Why does it seem like this is forever? Why does Marilyn Thompson have to ask for three minutes of information for three or four months? It's just none of this makes sense. And when nothing makes sense, it tells me there's something else completely going on. And from what I can see, the only person that seems to know what's going on is John Flatt. He seems to be the one that knows everything. Anyways, that's the problem. You guys have a feedback loop. And I don't know how you're going to break that feedback loop. My recommendation is rip all the trustees off the committees, reform the committees and send us down to a true finance committee. Send us down to a true facilities committee without any trustees. Let them evaluate it. Right? Get rid of the loop. Get somehow open it up so we can be involved. Right now, the city of
Thanks for that. Right. Um, just a little cut Tracy. No, you're great.
I
Yeah.
I appreciate all you guys are doing. As you guys are weighing pros and cons and digging through all the numbers, uh, I appreciate Bob catching me up with a lot of the information. Um, just so we don't wind up in the same pickle, um, I just asked that maybe the finance committee work into our long-term budgeting, um, deferred maintenance projects for all our village facilities. So if we do buy a new building or we renovate a new building, is there some kind of, uh, budget item that every year we're looking at maintenance issues and addressing them? So we don't wind up with all these deferred maintenance projects for the
That's a really good point. All right. Any more comments on, yeah?
Claudia Randa from Circle Club.
Claudia, yeah.
Say we bought this building. I'd like to know the amount of square feet we gained considering we do it for a restaurant, we rent the daycare. How much square footage will we gaining over this building that we currently have?
Be about the same square footage.
One. What's the point?
Wait, wait, wait. Okay. I, I really want to get into the session. Um, I thought I answered a question very quickly. So I'm sorry. What were people upset about? I don't get it. Excuse me.
We were too small. We didn't have enough room.
Yeah.
Expand it, which is why I asked my question.
It's, yeah, the, the layout's different, but we, we can, we can talk more about that. But thank you for that, Claudia. I appreciate it. All right. Any other comments on the, uh, on the logic or? Sorry, I can't. Yep.
Hi, I'm Nick Kieran.
Oh, hey, Nick. Yeah.
As well appreciate all the work you guys do.
A little bit louder, Nick.
I know there's been a lot of piling on tonight and, uh, you guys have a tough job. Because for reacting to the hours that you spend studying something. I could appreciate you've got a lot of buildings that you're looking at, a lot of priorities you're looking at. One of the challenges, I think, that we, that I felt, and I think is echoed here. The communications are coming out. Limited communications that are coming out. I realize you don't have a lot of time to spend on communications. But it's coming out with, it's a once in a lifetime opportunity and this is the greatest thing. And it's like, really? So maybe it is. But it's kind of a surprise and, you know, maybe it is a good deal because we're going to sell this place for twice as much as we're buying that place. I, you know, I don't, you haven't put the puzzle pieces together.
Yeah.
You've just said, here's this answer to a whole bunch of problems that maybe we didn't know we had. And I think we are. So, you know, one of those open the members of the council, but it was a surprise to get this communication that this once in a lifetime opportunity for a building that's been empty for two years. And yeah, I miss everyday kitchen. But somehow the moose lives could make it work. So that's a cautionary tale.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Nick. I can understand that completely. Yeah, go ahead.
Margaret Marion, 1220.
Hey, Margaret. Yeah.
Uh, what happens with this building and the, um, DPW police department on the way if you buy that building? Are, are there any plans in place to sell it when we build?
You know, the, yeah, I mean, we're going to definitely get into it in the session. What I would say is if we didn't need this building, it's very valuable. It's on University Avenue corridor. It's an acre of land. Our University Avenue corridor plan, which the board passed several years ago, called for, um, investment here, housing here and, um, could be, uh, condo owned villas. You know, it could be more apartments. It could be what have you. So it could be, it could be RFP. You do a request for proposal. And, and the board decides if it meets the criteria, we have at least a $10 million valuation. And so that's, that's something that could become available if something else went forward. Okay. Thanks. All right. Uh, Bill, I know you want to comment and, and is want to say.
Um, yes, and that there seems to be an idea here that the corridor here, the land from here forward all the way to garden homes is, uh, just ripe for development. The problem with that idea is that a six inch flood, six inch rainstorm puts all the streets underwater, all the land between the buildings underwater. This building is about seven inches underwater. I mean, they, I'm set there. Last building on the corner, it's about three feet. The bottom of that building is three feet underwater. And and the water in, uh, in an intersection there is from three to four feet deep for more than two hours. And, uh, it's just, it's just, uh, daydreaming to think that it is going to be a good investment to put there. Every building you put in there beyond this one means more flooding over by in those houses over across the street that are now just naked because the village doesn't recognize that there's a flood over, that it floods over there.
We live and die by our drainage.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Sam?
Yeah, this would say that I want to make sure you all know that I'm angry at the board and not at the individuals on the board. So when I'm here saying that this board needs to go, yes, I do think this board needs to go. But I just want you to know that as neighbors, still really like you guys. So the last thing I just want to make sure you understand is that every time you're talking about um, the six and a half billion dollars over there or whatever, I want to know, are they going to get priority for renovation or are we going to finally get our act together and get the pool done? And get the, the, the firehouse done? And that, that doesn't get backburnered again. Now, I don't need an answer, Bob. But I'm just trying to make sure that we understand that those things cannot continue to be put off. So I don't know where you're getting that 6.5 million, but if you can get 6.5 million, let's get the firehouse done. And a pool and the pool place can have the community center that everybody wants. So, but thank you neighbors, but as a board, you guys have messed up big time.
Thank you, Sam. All right. Are we ready to move on with, with the agenda? That, that would be great. Um, you know, let's, um,
Just pick one more comment, please.
You bet.
Claudia Brown, I just would say that, um, usually if it feels like this, you can make an extension. So possibly we should ask for an extension on our contract. So in case you don't need more time to do, do Joe, Bill Jones or whatever, don't forget about that. I'm, you know, questions. This is all I'm asking. You know, it gives more opportunity for more town halls or whatever for people to figure out. Ask for an extension.
Thanks. Thanks again, Claudia.
Thank you very much.
All right. Um, and then if you're not, yeah, obviously it's, you know, about two and a half hours. So, uh, uh, we hope you could stay for a little bit longer. We'd like to get into this issue. That's one. Two, if you're not able to, you know, go back and look at the tape after the public comment, definitely provide your comments uh, with respect to this issue and other issues that we've, that we've talked about tonight. All right. So we're going to close the public comment section, session, um, payment of bills. Can we get to that real quick? Mark, do you want to take?
I'll make a motion. Payment of bills, the amount of $312,734.40.
Is there a second to that motion, Deepmar?
Second to that motion.
Okay. Further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye, raise your hand. Bill, you're great. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. Uh, consent agenda, uh, item 7B. Someone want to move that?
Say move.
Thank you, Deepmar. Is there a second? Bob?
Yes, but I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, I know that the, uh, refuge recycling, there, in the last services meeting this past week, there was a lot of discussion about edits. Maybe adding some more language to some of that. I was, is, is that reflect?
That off the consent. Let's, let's move it off the consent and then we can talk about it.
Yeah.
Move it off.
Move it on.
Then they move the first, that's got agenda truly without item, uh, Roman numeral four on there.
Thank you, Deepmar.
Yeah.
Obviously.
So we have a motion. Do we have a motion?
Yep, motion.
We have a motion.
Consent agenda, removing item Roman numeral four.
We have a second. I didn't hear.
No, I didn't hear a second. Bob will second it.
Consent it.
Agenda one through five, but not four. Right. Everybody understand the motion? Ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye. Okay. And then Bob, uh, item four. Deepmar?
Yes, it was just my question because we discussed this. I wasn't sure if this reflected that discussion in the services committee if, and maybe Kate could speak to that. I don't, I don't know if she's been in communication. So
Yeah, so.
I, I didn't want to approve the proposal uh, if we still had edits that were being considered.
Kate gave me feedback the day after the meeting that I incorporated and made the, the move recommended changes into it.
Thank you. Then can we then have a motion to approve this as a separate item?
We can. Right now.
I just made, I made the motion that we approved item 74, 74. As corrected.
Thanks, Kathy. All right.
I second that.
Thanks, Kate. Ready to vote then? All those in favor? Yeah, that motion carries. All right. Um, all right. Seven C, new business resolutions and motions. Discussion, Sherwood Hills Facility Modernization Project 2801 Marshall Court. So I, um, obviously we've had a lot of discussion today and I, I'd like to start out with just kind of painting a picture of, of what this is. Um, you know, Tracy's comment about having, have, really having a master plan and how this really looks, I think is going to be really important. It's something I began to think about even more, uh, today. So to Bob's point earlier, this kind of came out of the blue and we've been, we've been discussing, how do we, you know, how do we update, um, our facilities and how do we do things much more efficiently? And it's incredibly expensive. So the, the bids we're getting, it's, it's, and you're going to see it with, if you looked at the packet and looked at Tom Deegan's stuff. So the the bids we're getting, it's it's, and you're gonna see it with, if you looked at the packet and looked at Tom Deegan's stuff. The, you know, the estimated cost for renovating the firehouse for Public Works and the police facility is five point five to six point three million. Or four hundred and twenty-six to four hundred and thirty-two dollars a square foot. Plus the design, site management, equipment, technology costs. Architectural, that's all pluses on top of that for square foot. It's a, it's a really big number. Okay? We're also got numbers on on the pool facility, just to repair it. Four hundred and thirty-three dollars per square foot, plus 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 again. Things that, you know, that aren't included. And that didn't include the abatement for the asbestos. Um, or five million dollars to build it new. But a big driver of that cost is that second floor. To create a lobby, to create a Lula lift, to get people up to the second floor, to redo those bathrooms, to redo the kitchen. Was eight hundred and thirty-one dollars a square foot to do that addition. Okay, these are bids that we just got for this meeting. So we're, so we're, so we're looking at all of that now.
Excuse me, John.
Yeah.
Wasn't Tom's estimates on firehouse were like eleven million dollars?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You said five, but I think all three scenarios he came up with were between eleven and twelve million dollars without all those extra.
Right, and.
So they have some significant.
Right.
Uh, the alternatives are significant as well.
And ten, ten to twelve month construction windows, tons of disruption. Okay, so the board is dealing with this. And then what we're hearing from the contractors, and we've heard it from Tom Deegan, one reason we went with Tom was he cut us a nice deal on the phase one and phase two evaluation on this. We did the full space study. But his, we got his numbers today, or as part of this packet. It's big numbers, uh, to Bob's point. Yeah, so, so we're, so we're, and there's only, there's only so much in the capital improvement plan. So what was a driver for us from the beginning was, how can we do what we need to do? But still go within the CIP. Okay, so this opportunity became available with the logic. All right, it was listed for eight million dollars. Um, ideal construction estimated in twenty twenty-four to rebuild the building then would have cost fourteen million dollars. Not including the, what they call FFNE, the furniture, finishings and equipment. Okay? Um, Moose International. Um, they had a, they had a full business model. You guys saw it. It was the daycare of the restaurant and then the co-working space. Uh, the Madison operation to my understanding did extremely well. The one in Champaign, Illinois, and the one in the suburbs outside St. Louis did not. And they opened in twenty twenty, like February of twenty twenty, January of twenty twenty. I remember I toured it for the first time. And COVID hit, and it just, it is what it is. Now, they are a big charitable organization. I think they get seventy-five to a hundred million dollars in contributions every year. This model was not working for the board and they bailed on it and they dispensed of, they dispensed of the property. Now, it's been for sale for for over two years. Our understanding is there's quite a bit of interest in the daycare space. There's people ready to go for that. And there's folks that are really interested in the restaurant space, but they could never get anyone for the upstairs or to do the whole building. This is really important. Logic paid ten million dollars for the building last June. The reason they paid ten million dollars for the building last June is they had a lease that was costing them a lot of money. So it was a buyout on a lease. So I think they probably had ten years left on the lease. I haven't seen the details on it. But if they were paying, you know, forty bucks a square foot or whatever they were, they're paying a million dollars a year. And they were like, we're gonna cut our losses. We're gonna own this thing. And we're gonna try to sell it. So, uh, and I didn't find that out until um, after we had, we had submitted um, a counter, uh, which they eventually accepted. So the the way this worked out, you know, they were at eight million dollars. We offered five point seven five with authorization to go to six. Uh, they came back at seven point five. And and and, you know, I just, you know, and I, the, you know, the board delegated me and Brian and the attorney to, you know, to do the negotiation up to a certain point. I got to a point where I was just like, because there was a lot of time here. This started in June. It just wasn't moving. It wasn't happening. And I just said, listen, you know, we, we're on a timetable with the budget going up. We have to make decisions with respect to our bond council. We have to have you know, extensive discussions with the residents. If this is really viable, this is as far as we can go. The six million for the real estate. And the only move that we made was we said we would do five hundred thousand dollars for all the FFNE. Now, that that sounds like a big number. They estimated forty dollars a square foot, which is a twenty-five thousand square foot building. There's a million dollars in FFNE there. I saw, I saw you guys were provided as well, an invoice just for the kitchen equipment in twenty nineteen. It was three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, if you add inflation since then, twenty-six percent, that puts you at four hundred thousand dollars. And God knows what it's gonna be with tariffs. So this is all about the the costs that have just been driving. And Brian's hearing from the contractors, automatic four and a half percent increase every year. Inflationary increase for the construction. So when I look, remember I just talked about, you know, those square footages, right? If you look, if you look at at um, that the uh, the six million dollars, and you back out the land value of the logic, which were estimated at one point two million, because developers have paid more than sixty dollars per square foot for land along here. That would be one point two million. That's a half acre. This is an acre. We think this is at least two point five uh, to three. If you back out that one point two, um, the cost is a hundred and ninety-six, a hundred and ninety-six dollars a square foot all in. Furnishings, equipment, and for those of you that have been in the building, it's an, it's an incredible space. We've also talked, I've been on the board since twenty twelve. We've talked about having a community space. Having a community center, having a real, a real place. This place has that. So you walk through with the staff and they see the possibility of how you could have administration and you can have police. And the chief was very clear that it's important that the, that the police department be in the same place as administration because the residents show up to do their village business, and then they turn around and they do their police business. So that, so that was, uh, so for me, it was just like, this is an interesting opportunity. Now, could it work practically? Okay, so um, you know, the 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 thought was it could probably work. Now, one of the things you heard today was, you know, who's gonna run the daycare? How successful is the restaurant gonna be? You know, the the risk of that. I share those concerns. I have no interest in being in the restaurant business. I've done that business in my career. Kathy and I were in the hospitality business for twenty-seven and a half years. All done. I I pumped enough toilets. It's, you know, we're done. And um, and then the daycare uh, space. So, you know, we we don't have that idea fleshed out, but we have a management firm that would run that. Put me run it. Usually it's about four percent of the gross. So whatever the lease rates are, about four percent of the gross. Now, Bill talked about uh, the tax issues. Okay, that building is is assessed at five million dollars right now. Um, it's the fair market value of six point five or whatever it is. It's generating twenty-seven thousand dollars for the village of that ninety-nine thousand that Bill spoke to. Okay? You know, uh, when you, when you look at market rates for a lease space, we were thinking this, those two uses could do at least three hundred thousand dollars in revenue every single year. You know, minus four percent, you know, for the, for the management fee. You know, that's ten times the the tax contribution to the village. It's equivalent to the taxes from a fifty million dollar development. So we, it's something that we have to look at pretty seriously. In addition, when we look at our financial analysis for the next five years, there is a shortfall. And the 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 issue is, I have no interest in going to referendum. And I trust, you know, my partners in finance committee to help to help, you know, figure this out. How, you know, how are we gonna do it? But this is a potential pathway uh, to address that and get and bridge us to twenty thirty-one when the tiffs mature, and that's gonna be a good time to be on the board. Okay? Now, if the community supported, understands the financials, understands the opportunity, has a lot of comfort on how this is is gonna happen. We are in the lease business. I mean, we, you know, the Black Hawk Country Club. You know, we've had a lease with them forever. And the revenues from this potentially could be two to three times the five-year average of what Black Hawk is contributing every year to the village. So when you, when you look at it from those, from that perspective, it's not something that we can just say as as fiduciaries. Well, you know, that can't work. That doesn't make sense because we're also looking at these huge cost estimates. Um, that are not, are not doable uh, for this village. But, you know, it's a tough, tough thing to do. We're trying to do things within the CIP. All right, so if by some possibility, this opportunity looks viable. And, you know, this is the first meeting. This is the first, we're just really getting into it. Um, and you guys are gonna be absolutely key, uh, and was key tonight to hear the concerns and and perspectives that were shared. Then, as I, as I alluded, this potentially becomes available. And there's a value associated with that. So one of the ideas is with that sixty dollars per square foot, this is two point five to three million dollars. Um, this is all paid for. Um, we do an RFP. You know, the University Avenue Corridor Plan doesn't talk about apartments here. It talks about owner occupied villas. This is something Port Washington just did. They did an RFP for a one point five acre former Port Washington building that was moving into a new building, their services. They made that available as an RFP and they're doing twenty-one owner occupied condos on one point five acres. This is an acre. Maybe we get fourteen was was the thought. And that would be like a ten million dollar value, a ten million dollar valuation, and this gets back on uh, this gets back on the tax rolls. So that that's part of the the notion here. The other thing is, there was a real thought that someone could swoop in and get that building. I mean, there was a lot of budget concern going in into June and even I think, you know, part of July and what what monies were gonna be come available for the UW. I know they've had the federal, the federal impacts and the pullbacks and all the grants and the research dollars and everything else. And um, you know, one of our concerns is that that building was gonna go off the tax rolls, just like UW Credit Union went off the tax rolls. And Julie, what was the hit on that for the village?
I can't tell you, John.
That's all right. But it was, it was like, it was like a fifty thousand dollar hit to to our our taxes with a non-taxable entity having control of that real estate. So, um, I mean, obviously, I've got, I've got lots of remarks here, but that that's kind of the dynamic that causes us to pause and go, is this an opportunity that could make economic sense and long-term financial sustainability? And address some of the issues because if we're generating another two and a half, three million dollars from that, we can put some of that into Public Works. Our Public Works gets crazy, and I haven't seen if Tom's here yet. But. Oh, yeah, he's gonna join that. Um. The the numbers to Bob's point, you know, the eleven, it's eleven to thirteen million dollars. I mean, it's, it's a big deal. But we were trying to to cram police in there as well and then figure out something for Public Works. If we can do this at the logic, this, this financing can help things happen in other parts of the village. So that that was the thought process. Ultimately, what it looks like, how it operates, there's, there's a ton of questions. And one of the things that you saw in the, in the packet today was, we kind of laid out you know, a four-phased comprehensive planning, public outreach and engagement process to help us figure this out. Try to do it within the ninety-day timeframe that we've established as part of the contract. So I, I can talk and talk and talk. Um, I don't want to do that. But um, I'll ask board members to share perspectives. Maybe we can just go around. We'll start with Bob and add things that they feel like they need to add. And um, and share things that they want to add. And then we can, we can see where we go on that. And, you know, Alan, we can't take questions during this part of it.
Yeah. We can't ask questions in response to any of your comments. Because we didn't have your commentary.
Right, right, yeah, um.
So when is the appropriate time to weigh in over the?
You know, I really, I'll tell you, um. Yeah, which is, which is September fourth, but you can also call me.
Or write email.
And and emails, that's right. Yeah.
But we, uh, but we're gonna hear, you know, we can't respond or.
We prefer to take, keep it on this dais because we're already at, and I think, and I think Carol's in Norway. So I don't know what time it is in Norway. But is it five o'clock in the morning, Carol? What time is it?
It is four forty-seven in the morning.
Yeah, but it's light out. It's light out.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, and you know, and that that's the thing. This is still, this is still a two-way thing. And so there's gonna be tons of opportunities for everyone the way in and and find a way through this together. This may not be the right idea. There was a lot of good points tonight. But we're facing a certain reality in terms of what new things cost and how disruptive it is in terms of time and money and uncertainty. And this reduces, we think, reduces the risk pretty significantly. Uh, just because of the value proposition that's there. Um, and and so, you know, and you have to look at that too. Ten years down the road, that thing could be worth twenty million dollars. So we could pivot out of there and and do something else. So there's also a potential real upside that many of us see that, you know, we could be wrong. But it has to be evaluated because a building of this opportunity with the layout that actually works, that restaurant is turnkey. The dishes are there. The silverware is there. The equipment is there. The linens are there.
Right, two minutes.
I know. But uh, but but but, yeah, but and 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 having a phone conversation too, Alan, I, this is, this is really important that everyone have an opportunity to weigh in. Bob, do you feel like you could speak for a second?
Sure. Um, well, at the risk of being redundant, um, as I said before, we I've been involved, especially with Shabnam Services Committee and and with John and and others on the board and and looking at the the condition of our facilities. And there are, there are two issues, uh. As I pointed out, one is the deferred maintenance that's been done. And but there's also the issue that in two thousand twenty-five, we have, um, I guess, operations and and standards for which many of these facilities weren't built for. Um, our police force operate, I think, differently and with different equipment and different needs than they did in ninety-seven. Um, and Tom Deegan um, did do a space needs study, and that wasn't just on the wants of the of the staff or the police force. It was also based on what are the standards expected today for those, those types of uh, departments and so that they can operate to today's standards. Um, and we spent a lot of time looking at these different uh, buildings and how we might modify them. We looked, of course, at the fire station. Can we put everything there? Um, and consolidate. Uh, FGMA came up with a estimate of twenty million dollars. Uh, nineteen or twenty. Uh, Tom Deegan is here tonight. He's got a all, well, I don't even think it's all department, or is it? It's it's three-story. Again.
No, some is, it, some is here. Be four million dollars to do this and then
Yeah.
A lot to do.
Yeah. These are significant costs to bring um, some of our facilities up. So when I saw the logic building, and I'll be quite frank, what, you know, for the last three years I've driven by the place and I being it empty, I thought, you know, this, this could be a village hall. It might work. And uh, but I always figured it was way too expensive. And uh, but this, this is what needs to be evaluated. The, the next point I want to make is that we can talk about you know, the positives of this place. But I think it's also important to talk about the negatives that we avoid. And, you know, when, when we go through the all this remodeling process, it's and I've done a lot of remodeling in my life, not not in commercial buildings, but in, done three historic homes. And I can tell you that it's disruptive. It's hard on your marriage. It's, it's um, always takes longer and always costs more than you think. And uh, as we go into some of these buildings, there's gonna be a lot of unknowns. And and um. in some ways, looking at a, a new building that's just been built in five years or in the past five years, it's got everything. And, and, and my walkthrough there is that everything's high quality. I mean, every desk has a USB port. And, and I know these are, these are little shiny objects on the tree, but, but it really is amazing what is there and security cameras. You walk in the computer room and it's actually, you know, in this building, it's substandard. And there's a lot that needs to be redone. But my, my bigger point is, is that as we start thinking about the remodeling of these buildings and potentially consolidating of the different departments, that all the planning, all the contract negotiation, all the monitoring of construction, moving out in order to do the construction is hugely disruptive and expensive. And, and too often people don't think about that. And, and so that uh, I think we need to, to take into account. Now, we could just do nothing and continue on for the next 40 years with putting Band-Aids on everything. And I really think a lot of our facilities are just Band-Aids holding up the structures. And, and to me, it's a question, do we want to make some kind of investment in the village? Or do we just want to have the status quo? And I, I certainly think doing the very minimum is going to cost the lease. I think it comes down to you folks deciding what do we want? Do we want to make investments in the village? And so that's why we want to try as much as possible, giving you all the information. And I want to emphasize that nothing's been decided and that some of the numbers you hear are kind of back of the envelope calculations at this point, because we, we didn't want to go into detailed financial calculations until we knew we had an offer, right? That didn't make sense. So that's kind of why we're at, we're, we're at from, from my perspective.
Well, thanks for that. Mark, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I'll keep it short.
Sorry.
Because it's getting late and I think you also need to see what Deegan has done.
Yep.
And what Raymaker has done. Because unless you see what we see, it's like, you know, black and white, you're seeing this, we're seeing that. The differences are just so great. So this is a long shot in my opinion. Admittedly, I've always felt it was well less than a 50% chance that this would go through. So that being said, because we know this is a heavy lift in a short amount of time. So why are we putting ourselves through this? All evidence to the contrary, we're not suicidal. And I know that, find that hard to believe, given what you've heard tonight, but we're not suicidal. So what is it that we're seeing? We're seeing aging buildings, aging infrastructure, right? It's costing too much to maintain and it's going to cost even more over time. I mean, we're not in the 1% to 2% inflation anymore. I mean, the numbers, especially on the construction side, they're more like 4.5%. And you continue to have pressures because of labor issues in the construction industry and what is going on. So we really are in a difficult situation. We have some things going for us. We're extremely strong credit. AAA, our debt is down. We have a lot of capacity. Going to Fred's point, it's not infinite capacity. So we have to establish what our priorities are. And that's what part of this whole process is about. This is why it's important for us to bring to you not only logic, but the pool, but the PD, the PW's, uh, building. Because we can't do it all and we need to help to figuring out where the priorities are. So it's how to, how do we deal with these construction costs? And I know people get sticker shock and they look at logic and they six, six and a half million, and that's a lot of money. That's the kind of money we spent on University Avenue. That's the kind of money we spent on the inside roads. It's a big sum, no question about it. But you're going to see a lot bigger numbers when we start looking at these, the other alternatives that have been considered so far. Maybe there are alternatives we haven't seen yet that are more efficient, cheaper, whatever. That's the process that we have to go through. But I think the difficulty for us now is the clock is running on this logical for it. It's, it stinks and I prefer it wasn't that way. I prefer we had six months or a year to look at it and think it through, but, but we just don't. So my focus right now is getting as much data for the board. I mean, I think there's the suspicion that we have all this data, we're not sharing it. The fact of the matter is we don't have the data. We don't. We have a few kind of things from salesmen and this and that, but really hard data we don't have. We're going through the due diligence from a, from a dead stop. And, and, and that's difficult. So as we get the hard data, we're going to share that with you. We're going to share it in the board. We're going to talk about, we're going to look at the alternatives and we're going to see where we're going to end up. But you know, John talks about 90 days. We don't have 90 days. We have less than 90 days. And that's because of the pressure that we need to put our budget together. We need, we have data imposed restrictions on when that budget has to be approved. Okay. Which puts us into maybe November. So I don't want to keep, continue this process any longer than we have to. Um, but I do feel that when you look at the alternatives we've looked at so far, this is worth, worth looking at. Um, maybe we'll, after September 4th, we'll say we're done. I don't know. We'll just have to see how it plays out, but that's where I am on this whole thing.
Thank you, Mark. Shabnam?
I really just echo everything that Bob and Mark said. A hundred percent right. Absolutely. Uh, renovating and moving village hall. First you got to move cold storage and get half of DPW there. And then these guys have to work from home. It's an impossible way. And this is an, an alternative, not just work-wise, but also the better financial option. Um, my understanding is like just building a underground parking is $3 million itself. So I think doing the due diligence, it's, it's worth looking into this. And I do want to mention, uh, Marilyn, I, uh, on my honor, I assure you, and I promise that in every closed session board meeting, there was no other additional information and that. Right, right. But I just wanted to say, okay, I just want to say that there is no other document. I assure you. And never in the seven years that I've been on this board, did the board ever have a discussion in closed session that they never should have. Like I, I, I stand for truth. I would have called everybody out and I want you to know that. Um, but back to this building, uh, yeah, the, and then the, the issue of money. Like if we would have fixed the pool building five years, 10 years ago, it was 2 million. Now it's 5 million. And, uh, it's just the, the, um, you know, when I was a kid, I would see million dollar houses and they were just mansions. And like the shack I live in is a million dollar house. It's just kind of like shocking that a million, it's pocket change these days, sort of. I don't mean it that way, but the value of money is changing and that's all.
Uh, before I go to Carol, I was just going to say there is a precedent for this. I mean, it was like 1999, village hall, everything was at the firehouse. And this building became available. And the board evaluated it and, you know, saw the possibilities and it's, it's served us extremely well. Since then. But you know, priorities change and, and if there's an opportunity financially to do much better as a result of doing things differently, it's something that the board really wants to consider.
And I just wanted to add, like, if it's, I understand criticism. I would just wish that it would come with the alternative. If this is the bad deal, somebody do the work to show us what's a better deal.
Oh, that's good. Thank you. Carol, can we go to you?
Sure. So I would echo, um, pretty much all of the sentiments already mentioned and to add a, a slightly different element, talking about alternatives. You know, inflation continues, uh, costs continue to mount to run the village and we're just looking, staring squarely down the barrel of a referendum uh, without something, some other condition changing. This is a possible change of, uh, of our financial situation. So I felt personally that it was incumbent on us to explore the possibility. That's, uh, my comment.
Thanks, Carol. Good. We'll get to Kate next. Kate?
Yeah, thanks. Um, so for me, since this is the first time, you know, in open session, we're discussing this, I would like to be uh, very upfront and transparent with the village that in closed session, I did not support moving forward with this. And for me, that was based on both kind of the, you know, means and the ends. I think that, um, we could have definite, we could have discussed this, uh, in open session. I do think it's critical to get resident input for something as massive as an undertaking as this. And I think a lot of the comments tonight, um, reinforce that point of view. And so I, um, did not, you know, I did not vote to pursue this in, in closed session. However, that being said, I do have, I want to assure residents, I have an open mind. Um, the second that this became public, I sent an email out to a select group of residents that, um, you know, I've been communicating with regularly and I engage their feedback and I tried to make that as an unbiased emails possible so that I could actually hear from people. And I've gotten a lot of really interesting points both ways. And so I just want to reinforce to folks, I have a lot of questions. I do not think back of the envelope math um, does it for us here. We have, we keep saying this word, due diligence. I'm very concerned that we do not have a full 90 days for a purchase this massive. I think that we do need more time. I think it is a creative solution and I really applaud the people that brought this to our attention, that this is even a possibility. I think we should dream bigger for this village, but I am not convinced that this is the big swing that we need to take. I am not advocating either for no action. I, I have toured our police station. I think that is in desperate need of more space. We do not even have an interrogation room when we apprehend a potential witness or someone else. And that is absurd to me. So um, I know some of our village staff need more space, but the other thing I want to underscore here is this is not a silver bullet that sole serves, you know, uh, uh, basically solves all of our problems. We still own and have the DPW building, the old fire station. What are we going to do with that? Are we just, you know, we're saying, we're, we are going to look at some plans later, right? Um, when we purchase, if we purchase this new building, that does not go away. That is still a huge presence in our village. It's actually when you come in on one of the main roads, kind of one of the first things that you see, we cannot just sit and let that rot. So I don't think that, you know, we have to factor that cost in no matter what, if we purchase this or not. And so I think that the devil is in the financials here and, uh, you know, as a fiduciary here for the village, I have to actually see real numbers and something that can actually, um, not just, uh, suggested amounts for potential revenue from tenants, but I want to see actual examples. What were businesses that, what was the business previously paying? We need to actually see some real things. And finally, because I know it is late for everyone. Um, you know, on the positive side, I do understand, you know, we might have some windfall from revenues, but I just want to remind people, on the other hand of the ledger, we are going to be losing some of the property taxes from this facility. Um, we are going to potentially see an increase in other facilities management, like janitorial, like security, like potential liability insurance needed for a childcare or daycare center. These are real costs that we have not factored in yet. And then finally renovations, this building was not set up to be a municipal building. We are going to have to do renovations on the space as John has mentioned. How much are those going to cost? It is not currently set up to be a police station. So those are some real concerns that I have. Again, I want to assure people, I have an open mind here. I want to hear from residents. That is my number one priority because I want to make as informed an opinion as I can, both with resident input and some of the harder financials, um, as we, uh, move forward here in the process. So.
I really appreciate that. No, thanks so much for that. Steve, Mark?
Yeah, thanks, John. I don't, I wasn't even sure if I would have a chance to talk to you.
Oh, yeah.
You're welcome. So yes, to, to members in the audience and those watching here tonight, and certainly my fellow board members and Julie and Brian, I'm going to share the same opinions that I've shared uh, with the board in closed session about endeavor that's before you guys. And, and I guess just to sort of start this out, we, I fundamentally disagree with the majority of the board on, on what we're trying to do and that's to purchase the logic. I don't think that that's wise choice. I don't think it's financially sound choice. And I voted in that manner in the closed session that we shouldn't pursue this. I believe that the lift is too big. I believe that we have other priorities that are more important. And as we look at the CIP, so the capital improvement plan, it's, it comes very evident based on what Mark had like laid out, that our needs are much greater than what our debt capacity is. So where to go from there? We have to do something. And we really do need to do something. And I will underscore that, that I'm not vehemently against uh, doing something and that I'm not for doing nothing. But I do believe that pursuing a logic is not the right choice. More importantly, I really believe that our facilities do need improvement, but so does our infrastructure. And that is roads, utilities that come with it. So that's the hard task in front of this board is to figure out how to slice and dice and make it happen. In our capital stack, that will be, you know, we've got the CIP for 2025 and then one of the CIP for 2026 coming up again. And, and really understanding what is important. Now, I believe I've got a pretty clear vision of where I want to take this, but that's just me. All of you, it's the rest of this body that has come along to really follow the decision. But to maybe lay out a few points, I believe that we should stick money into this existing facility. I've got some numbers in mind. What that buys us, the devil is in the future. But it's an order of magnitude of 1.5 to $2 million. And truly like a heavy Facebook, this building does need some PLC. Um, I think the removal is an amenity that we all use and not only that we as residents, residents use, but also other members of our community outside of the confines of Shroen Hills use. And it's a revenue generator. And I think that amenity needs attention and it needs love and needs a little bit of care. We'll talk about the pool assessment study shortly here. Uh, again, we'll, we'll be looking at scenarios where the, the needs and the costs are much greater than we'll, in the fourth. So how do we scale back? How do we right-size this thing? How do we improve something to keep going along and making this, uh, work? And then my third priority is, is I believe, and this is just me, and I'm one voice on this entire body that makes decisions now. Goes back to utilities, infrastructure and roads. And that's me. That's what I think the priorities should be. But it's the conversation that we need to have. And, and Kate, you know, you, you are, um, you and I are more closely aligned probably and just the view on this. And that's not bad. I think it's all appropriate. That's why you guys are all geared listening to us. They're listening to me babble. But yes, I, I will certainly echo one thing that you had said, and it, it rings home. It's so, it's so true. The amount of conjecture with numbers and dollars that are being swung around is, is breathtaking. Um, I, I think we need to pick a strategy, but aligned with that, numbers need to follow in line. And, and I know Bob, you're looking at me. How can that happen? It, it, it's it, it's not easy, but I think that's our challenge. That's our task. Yeah, that's, that, that we're charged with. So I, I think I'm done babbling. Hopefully everybody that is out here tonight and anybody that's watching knows, understand and knows and understands why, why I'm on the issue. And, um, go for that. So, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Uh, there was like, it was the last board meeting or the one before where Ellers might've been here, where I asked, how much can we borrow? And they said at a very, at a maximum, maximum, it's $50 million. But we, right? But that we don't, we have our own internal rules that is far less. So what is that number? Because we keep saying we don't have money, we can't borrow, but like, is, is it 25% of 50 million? Then it's 12.5. Like, can we have the base conversation of what we can borrow and stick to that? Or like have it as a part, because otherwise everybody is going off of assumptions and nobody knows what the answer is. How much can we borrow?
That, that issue will be pursued in finance committee. We'll meet next week as part of the, the financing piece of this. I wouldn't say that's the biggest piece, but it's an important piece. I wouldn't say that's the biggest piece, but it's an important piece. And we're going to start having that conversation. The one other thing I just want to add here is I, I really appreciate it. I think the audience can see. But we have a board are not of one mind on this issue. There are dissenting opinions, and I think that's very healthy in, in this point of the process, and not to be sup- it's not surprising, given the absence of hard data that we have upon which to coalesce as to our strategy. But I do hope, and I do believe that as we work our way through this process, I think this board will move together or not. I, I just, I don't see myself wanting to be, to have this be a split decision at the end of the day. It's too important. So, um, you know, whether we go forward and follow that track, or we decide, no, we're going to pull back and do something else. I, I just hope and believe we'll do it together once we have the data to work with and the discussion with the residents.
So um, uh, for me, I mean, this is about the purse. And so um, tonight was just, it was an introduction. Let's try to give you a little bit more background, a little bit more perspective. I mean, you know, there's an opportunity here that the board is evaluating. Um, we, we've shared a little bit of why we're considering this. We're going to have a conversation now with Tom Deegan on real numbers based on a space study, what his contractors are seeing on, on the costs of things. Um, yeah, I, I highlighted a little bit about some of the cost comparisons. I think as, as Tom speaks, we'll be in a position where we understand that even a little bit more, which will help us make better decisions going forward. We've identified some potential benefits to the communities. And we've, and we've heard, you know, quite a few concerns on this, on, on this path that we have to take very seriously. Um, we, we touched on a little bit what, what happened to this if this moved forward. Um, and we've also talked about how we're um, engaging residents. So we're going to continue to post stuff on the, on the village website regarding this issue. We've also identified a comprehensive planning, public outreach and engagement process, and I won't go through all the details on that, but that'll be posted, that was in the packet uh, today. We're in the, we're in the due diligence preparation right now through August thirtieth. And there's some early awareness uh, beginning of, actually, and phase two right now, the town hall that we talked about. And we'll see, you know, where it goes uh, from here, but we'll, we're going to post that information. I, you know, I didn't have uh, more I wanted to talk about on this right now. I wanted to hear from the residents. I wanted us to have have a, a good discussion on this, share some of the perspectives. But it's already, it's ten fifteen, and I like to move to Tom Deegan, because it does relate to this uh, discussion. The pool issue relates to this discussion and, and really try, really strive to be out of here well before midnight. So um, Julie, if it's okay with you, is, is Tom online?
Uh, yes, I am.
Oh, hey, Tom.
Hi, hello.
How's your e- how's your evening?
Very good, very exciting.
The um, this is, this is uh, item C four. Discussion possible action, Deegan Village Facility Space Needs Phase Two. Uh, the, the spreadsheet that Tom put together, the plans that Tom put together, that's all in the packet. And Tom, why don't you uh, why don't you lead this discussion?
Okay, thank you, John. And I invite any interruptions and questions from the board as I go through this, please. If, if something's not clear, please ask me a question and have me um, explain. So uh, um, I'm Tom Deegan, thirty-five eighteen Blackhawk Drive. And um, way back at the beginning of the year, I was bothered when I saw the FGMA report that was done on facility space needs. I thought it was a, a poorly done report. I, I didn't feel it reflected the space needs of the um, various departments of the village and also I think it was an inappropriate preliminary design and pricing of a project. So I offered my services for a uh, phase one and phase two study. Phase one was where I would talk with each of the departments um, and uh, go through their space needs at the discussion. And uh, it was really a very good back and forth dialogue uh, with all the admin staff and the uh, police department, public works and the fire association. A very good discussion. We went back and forth talking about the space needs and several drafts, and finally came to a uh, consensus of, of um, space programs that each of the departments approved. And then that was phase one, um, and I presented that material. And now I completed phase two, which is preliminary design, um, taking those spaces in, in three different scenarios um, to accommodate those space needs in different uh, locations of the, of the village. So I tried throughout this to do it very comprehensively, because we have um, when I began this study, we were looking at uh, three different buildings, the existing village hall that you're in now, the four, former fire station building, um, and the west storage building or the cold storage building. Um, so we have three facilities, we have uh, at least four departments. And that generates a, a matrix of information that I tried to move through in a logical way through three different scenarios. So I'm going to, uh, Julie, may I share my screen now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, uh, if I can do this, um. Okay, uh, can everyone see that?
Y- yes, sir. It's up.
Okay, um, so this is the, this is the phase two report. Now, taking that, those, the space needs and looking at the various scenarios, um, and I'm wondering why this isn't advancing when I press my, oh, there we go. Okay. So uh, the top part of it, a- and I'm going to, I want to mention that um, there's a lot of information. I tried to, rather than just explaining it in words, get it on a chart um, and different exhibits, put it in the package so people can go back and look at it. So I'm going to move quickly through it. But if you get, it, what I'd like you to notice is sort of the, the process of it and the logic of it. Oh, I'm trying to capture the, all the departments' space needs. You see village hall, police on the left, public works, look at the top half of this page, and then talking about in this part of the exhibit of what the existing space uses are in these different facilities, the village hall, the fire station, former fire station and the west storage building. So these are in this exhibit, what's being used now, the area of square footage in each of those buildings that are be, being used now by each of the departments. Net totals about twenty-nine thousand square feet. In the lower half of this page, you'll see the departments again listed on the left, and those are the program totals. The, and in the package that I presented um, previously for the final phase one report, you'll see all the space programs for each of the departments, and those are the total space needs. So those total program space needs after discussing with each of the departments is uh, thirty-four thousand square feet. So roughly five thousand square feet more than the departments are using now. But the challenge is that the, that that square footage is not in the right location, really from a functional standpoint for each of the departments. So on the next exhibit here, um, I took that, those space programs and I allocated them across the different buildings. So each building, of course, has a size. And I can only put so much in each of those buildings. And working with the designers, this is how we allocated the space, and also talking with the departments where they wanted to have their functions located. Um, and you'll see each of the, the assignment of the spaces here totaling to thirty-four thousand square feet on the right-hand total side. So we allocated, this is a little bit academic at this point. It's just we allocated the program space across the existing buildings. And we came up with these totals. Then we went to, in the phase two, that, that what I've said so far really summarizes phase one. Now, in phase two, we took those program spaces and we put them with real designs that you'll see in a moment into each of the um, buildings. Now, when you go from a program space to actually applying it as a design into a building, it's never one-to-one. There's always some drift, because um, you, you know, now we're dealing with the reality of the physical space. And also, in this case, um, two, two of the scenario, or one of the scenarios is um, uh, renovation scenarios where I told the designers to try to respect as many existing walls and corridors as we could to help minimize um, uh, re- renovation costs. So the numbers will be large numbers. Um, this, these numbers are coming from contractors who walked through the space with me and with, with Brian and um, and with Carrie. And also, um, then they also looked at these preliminary designs that I'm going to show you in a moment. So he's, here are the construction costs uh, toward the bottom of the um, bottom half of the page. So we would place uh, the village hall functions, um, all the program space in the existing village hall building that you all are sitting in right now. And we can satisfy all the village hall program needs and the fire association program needs in that building. And if it were totally renovated, it would be about four point one million dollars to renovate the building. But that, very importantly, is excluding architectural engineering fees, site costs, construction management, furniture, equipment and technology. But I apply, applied the same constraint to all the different scenarios and all the different buildings. So we can see how these numbers in order of magnitude move together between new construction and renovation. But keep in mind that all these construction costs are understated because of these other excluded items. Um, which are significant costs that would be added on to this. And then I have a construction schedule for each of these renovations also. Um, but the, the important piece here, I, I feel is that I not only looked at the village hall needs, um, but also the police and public works in a renovated former fire station building. And how the west storage building, the cold storage building that some refer to it as, would need to be expanded in order to, to realize the total space needs of each of these departments. So we're looking at this comprehensively across all the departments and, and these three buildings all at the same time to come to a, a total construction cost. Um, so if we look at just one building and say, well, the cost will be four point one million to renovate the village hall, well, that's just part of the story. We still have to accommodate the police and the public works um, in the former fire station building. And that's five point five um, million plus five hundred thousand to expand that former fire station building to provide more public workspace. Plus, we have to, to expand the west storage building to provide the last bit of um, public workspace that's needed and also the fires, um, association storage that's needed to hit the nineteen thousand um, square feet roughly in total that the public works department needs. So I tried to do this in a very organized sequential step comprehensively, so that we don't get um, twisted around with numbers. Like if I begin to say that, well, the, to renovate the former fire station building for the spa- for the police and public works is eleven million dollars, that is incorrect. Because here's eleven million dollar number, but it's a total across all these buildings. Um, and of course, that is understated because of all these other costs in, in the notes at the bottom here. But that's what I think we need to be careful of when we talk about this and why I wanted to get everything on exhibits. So that we don't sort of get twisted around with the numbers and start to inadvertently misrepresent the costs. The numbers are big, but they are um, within construction standards and they are doable. I think the threshold question is, do we want to renovate buildings? And we do what, do we want to put this money into our existing buildings, or would we prefer to have a brand-new building that would cost something comparable? Um, so those are, you know, threshold questions that you all will deal with at some point.
Tom, uh, John here, thi- this is really helpful. I had a quick question. Uh, the, the construction costs exclude architectural and engineering fees, site costs, construction management, furniture, technology, equipment, et cetera. Any idea what kind of percentage typically apply to the construction cost that would cover those additional, additional costs and fees?
Well, this, uh, if you look at the FGMA report, because they, they did quite a bit of pricing out of technology and different line items, you know, that added to their nineteen million dollar uh, three department building, that added, I think if, I don't have that in front of me, but I think it was a neighborhood of a a million to million and a half dollars. So, you know, the, they're substantial numbers. Um, that would be a, a next level of analysis we'd have to do. So I don't have that percentage at the moment, because I, I haven't priced out the um, you know, the technology that's needed in a police department or um, you know, all these components. This is more of a, a study of, of order of magnitude price comparisons between these alternatives. And it begins to get you in the ballpark. You know, if you had a million dollars to each of these ones, each of these um, renovation cost numbers, you're probably getting close to what those um, other components added in would be. That's not a specific answer to your question, but just.
But I'm trying to understand magnitude. So what I'm hearing from you is you're applying a million dollars or so these, this is like twenty, twenty-five percent upper for, for design and engineering and site cost, construction management, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I, I haven't looked at it that way. We, I haven't dug into that aspect of cost. And it was, it was enough of a challenge to get all the contractors through the buildings and get pricing on the straight construction costs. But um, you know, it could be in the neighborhood of um, fifteen, twenty percent add on this, because you have construction costs, but those could, uh, but the site costs, but the site costs vary across the different scenarios. So it becomes even more difficult to make comparisons.
I, I appreciate that. Yes.
This is Mark. I, I just wanted to ask you, do you have a view about these numbers are in present value terms? I assume this is what, if it could happen tomorrow, this is what it would cost. Do you have?
I inflated these numbers um, to next year's numbers. And I was, I was giving a, given by the contractors roughly a seventy-eight percent increase. So these are um, not twenty twenty-five numbers. These are twenty twenty-six numbers. And you know, even that's aggressive to be delivering this, this amount of work all in twenty twenty-six, because there's a lot of design, more design that needs to be done. But I already inflated the numbers for one year.
Okay, but if, if, if we said we can't do it till twenty-seven or twenty-eight or twenty-nine, what kind of a factor would you use to increase these costs?
Well, that becomes very speculative. I was told if I wanted to go to twenty twenty-six from to now, today, twenty twenty-five, I would be in the neighborhood of eight percent add. Is that going to be, two years out, is it going to be the same? Three years out, is it going to be the same? I, I don't know. It could be significantly less, could be, could be more. It's really, you know, that far out to project is very difficult. Um, but everything will be moving in the same prices a- at that point. You know, all your alternatives will be moving up or down with inflation. Um, now that's not probably a very satisfying answer to your question at the moment. But if I could move on to these other scenarios, I think that you'll, you know, then we can come back to some more discussion about comparisons, if I could. Mark, do you have another question?
Uh, Tom, one second. Just, let me just confirm, Julie, this information, what the, we're seeing and what the residents are seeing on the screen was not in the packet.
It was, the packet was revised on Monday. Tom sent me updated.
Okay, so if someone downloads the, the packet now, it will have this information. It wasn't in the original packet, just so people don't get confused.
Oh, and Tom updated this with me on Monday.
Thank you. Okay, Tom.
Okay, so this is um, a um, designed space and projected construction costs and construction duration for each of these alternatives. Now I'm going to show you um, those designs. Uh, first of all, in order, you know, all of these numbers move together. So in order to be able to accommodate all the DPW needs, um, w- we probably have to begin with adding fourteen hundred square feet to the existing uh, or the former fire station building. Um, so this is of course Shoreward, Shoreward Boulevard here. And um, this is the, the former fire station building. So we'll add fourteen hundred square feet to the back corner of this building. And this is a preliminary design that, that ties directly to the space program that um, the uh, fires, uh, the, the police department um, agreed to. And just a general takeaway here, the, the, the brown, the yellow areas are common corridors and common space. It includes stairways and elevators. The blue area is programmed functional space. And this is all for the police department. To the left is lower level. And uh, that has some evidence areas and fitness room and break room and, and those types of. And those types of support functions on the upper and mid levels. Because it's actually a a three-level building with some intermediate stairs are the um. The uh patrolman cubicles and um the uh uh the various interrogation rooms. Uh et cetera, and then the the offices for the detectives and the chief and so and lieutenant and so forth. And then the police parking. So we have parking for five squad squad cars, including the Sallyport function. So without getting into detail on this, um that's the police um needs. It flows very well, but the police department hasn't seen this schematic of this preliminary design. They would need to review it and then there'd be some tweaking and adjustments based on their comments, but this is a very good starting point for their space needs. The D P W space, I'm I'm showing on this um illustration, the existing demising walls. Though a lot of that can be changed and moved. We didn't do that for this study. But that's relatively easy because we're dealing with primarily open space for the the Department of Public Works. So the point here is that we're taking the space programming, we're putting it into actual building. We're pricing that that renovation scenario and delivering space that could be functional, but of course at a cost. Um then we did the same thing with the village hall.
Um can I ask a question? This is Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Um or just make a uh make sure I understand and and for the the residents as well. This design assumes that we're putting the the police and public works at the former fire station. And that administration would stay in the current village hall. Is that correct?
Yes, this is the first of two of three scenarios.
And your next scenarios, uh is there one that has all three departments in one location?
Uh the third scenario is, yes.
Okay, and then so the next one you'll discuss is also just police and and uh public works at the fire station.
Yeah, it's a fire station location. That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody in the room understood that.
Does this include any office space for forestry and public work? I've seen all the the office space.
Well, the whole, the entire program is accommodated. Though forestry was in the D P W space. It was, it should be labeled D P W and forestry. Um so as I said, we didn't do a lot of of detailed design on the Department of Public Workspace. Um but that's where the forestry component is included in the space program. So at at this, so uh this is, this accommodates all of this police needs. Plus some of the D P W needs, because we have the physical constraint of the existing building. The rest of the D P W space is provided at the um west cold storage building, which will be the next exhibit after this exhibit. Um well, I can show it to you. It's right here. It would be at this location as an addition to the east end of the existing cold storage building. And sixty-two hundred is the maximum that we feel can be reasonably placed on that end of the building. And what I'm trying to avoid is doing additions on both sides of the building, because then we would be displacing the the salt shed. Which is on the west side of the building as that brown um component here, right there where my cursor is. So um this is the village hall remodel. And you saw the number for that in the the chart earlier. I will, I'd like to add that this is like the extreme total remodel that. Could be done to accommodate all of the listed um. Administration space needs and and fire association space needs. At one time in one very large remodel. This could be done in phases. It, you know, some of them remodeling wouldn't need to be done, because they, truthfully, I think Brian will. Um if I understood Brian correctly as we went through the discussions, admin. Um is operating fairly well with the space they have. They they could, you know, if we we probably through discussion could identify critical additional pieces they need. But maybe not everything on the space program to every size that's on the space program. This was more of an exercise of taking all of their requirements, which I think are valid and reasonable. But taking all of them and and backfilling the vacated police department space. And utilizing all the space in efficient way and satisfying all the requirements of the space program, which I think that. Uh uh admin certainly deserves and it would be great space for them, and I think this would function really well. There's a lot that could be said about this design that's really wonderful. It provides wonderful adjacency between the fire association space. And a new village administration break room that's much larger, so we get double use. It has um good circulation to um other storage areas and needs that the admin needs. So it's a very good design, but we don't have time really to go into that at the moment. The point here is that all the admin space fits in this building in a renovated renovation scenario very nicely. Uh and this is, of course, that uh additional public workspace. So that's a renovation scenario. And then we can go to a new construction renovation scenario right here. Is is the image still on the s- the screen clearly?
Yes.
Okay, I was having a problem before with it bouncing around, but in this scenario, um we took the fire station site. And and um removed the building and and um had new construction of uh fourteen thousand eight hundred. Square feet of assignable, assignable square feet. So that's not the gross area, that's more analogous to the net area within the building. New construction, which has a uh construction cost of approximately six point three million. And that would provide new space for the police and and public works. But not all the public workspace. We still would have to have a a west storage addition of about four thousand square feet. And also, we would be leaving the admin and and the fire association in the current village halls. We'd still need to renovate that building just as before at four point one million. So again, we're looking comprehensively over all the departments and all the buildings. And we come to about a eleven point seven million dollar budget. Um and as I said before, renovate, and I agree with Bob, renovation isn't easy. But this renovation obvi- obviously could be phased in an effort to con- con- control costs and timing. Um but this would be the full renovation scenario and those would be the full prices. And then this this last scenario below is the the uh full department. Solution, all three departments in one location at the fire station site in a three-story building, new construction. Um twenty thousand one hundred assignable square feet. Construction costs about nine point three million plus the extras that we talked about, about twelve months construction period. And that would free up the village hall for a sale. Um but even in this scenario with new construction, we can't accommodate all of the public works in this location. It would be um again, a kind of a seasonal swap between what's in the village or what's at the west storage building. Depending on whatever the um public works department needs uh for that season. So we still have to have a west storage addition of six thousand square feet. And then I would add about another two million dollars. But again, this this budget is flexible. Depending on whether you're insulating some of that new construction or not, and there are a lot of variables there. So this is maybe a little bit strong of a number. But regardless, in this scenario, yes, the village hall could be sold that you're in the building you're in now. New construction on the the fire station location. Renovate the west storage building, accommodate all the space needs, total budget of about eleven point three million. So those are the three scenarios that I had, and the the main takeaway here is looking at it comprehensively across all the building and all the space needs. To just look at one building in isolation isn't telling all the story. Um so we have to accommodate, you know, all the space and all the space needs ultimately. So here's an illustration of what can happen on the former fire station location with new construction. And this is a fairly complicated building. I'll explain it, but do, you know, study the diagram on your own and call me if you'd like to discuss it more. It's a very interesting concept. It's a very, probably the most cost-effective new construction. Um that would be possible for this type of building. It's a two-story slab on grade, wood frame construction. Um a partially exposed basement level, so that first level is probably two-thirds out of the ground. So we have a lit window opportunity, and that's where maybe the police um support functions that I mentioned before would be. The the break rooms, the fitness rooms, um things and storage, evidence storage. There's a mid-level component that has the police um car garage. This is, this is outside parking right next to it, so a total of twenty-nine surface parking spaces, which are surface parks. Parking spaces are the least expensive to construct. And then uh fifty-five hundred square feet of high-story D P W space. That's a two-story building here. Up in the upper left-hand corner is a aerial perspective sketch rendering of that building to show it could function. Now, this whole structure would be paid placed at a safe elevation. If you can imagine the whole building being moved moved up to a sp- safe elevation, so it wouldn't flood in the flood events. That Bill Thomas was talking about, which is very critical. You would, a person would rise up to these surface, these on-grade parking, surface parking lots from Shorewood Boulevard. To get into the building, and then the building would be at a a safe elevation and construction. The next, and I can go back to any of these exhibits if you'd like to hear more, but the 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 last exhibit I have here is for the three-story. Um three-department solution, twenty-one thousand seven hundred square feet of of gross square feet. Twenty thousand one hundred square feet of assignable square feet, same concept with um now three levels. Again, a mid-level parking garage so that those uh the the police vehicles can leave the building very quickly. On the on the, the rendering, that mid-level police garage function is right here, if you can see my cursor. Um this is the exterior surface parking. Here's exterior surface parking in front of the building. For a total of twenty-nine surface parking spaces, and again, the um high ceiling. Fifty-five hundred square feet of D P W space. But as I mentioned, well, I hope the i- image didn't jump, but just as I mentioned before, we'd still would have to build. Um about six thousand square feet on the um west storage building. To accommodate all the space needs of the Department of Public Works. Um for those of you who didn't see my phase one proposal or presentation. Uh just for frame of reference, the D P W, if we take all their equipment and find a a place to park it. It'll take almost nine thousand square feet. There there's a lot of very important equipment that they have that needs to be sheltered. And that takes a significant amount of space, so that's really driving their, part of the component that's driving their nineteen thousand square feet of space needs. Which is really very appropriate as as I and my designers um look at their space program. So that very quickly, I hope it wasn't too long, is is my presentation of the phase two design and pricing study. The phase two part of my work.
Thanks, Tom. That's really helpful. Questions for Tom?
Um what um the departments have asked for is, I think you said about five thousand more square feet. Than they have today, that what the department's using today is about twenty-nine thousand square feet. Um what they've requested is more like the thirty-five thousand square feet. That's about a seventeen percent increase. So even if the departments had to live with the space that they have today. We're still only talking about, I don't know, ballpark seventeen percent reduction. In these kind of costs that we're looking at. I mean, I know it doesn't work exactly like that, because. Where does that seventeen percent reduction come from? You know, which department, you know, is giving up space and so on? I guess one of my point is trying to say is, even if we said to the staff, they have to live with. Just the space they have today in terms of square footage, we're still talking about a cost of renovation. That's upwards of nine million dollars, something like that. I mean. I'm not trying to pin you down to an exact number. I've just, it's the concept.
Yeah, um well, what I I kind of went through it step by step as a uh, you know, a very objective. Uh uh analyzer of information, so to speak. Um I had all the discussions with the department heads. We listed all the rooms. We talked about all their functions. And it's, those functions had to operate in some physical space. Uh so we assigned appropriate size rooms for that space, added it up, came to these totals. And then we looked at, well, how do these totals that we came up with program space, that we determined with program space um studies. Um relate to the amount of space that they have currently. So where did that five thousand square feet difference come from? Well, village hall administrative func- functions, and this also includes, um I must say, the municipal court functions, which are. Actually very detailed from a design standpoint, and they're very underserved right now. But anyway, regardless, in total, those administration and municipal court functions, they require additional two thousand square feet. About two twenty-four hundred square feet more for the police to function appropriately, a- according to their space studies. And about four thousand or five thousand square feet for public works. Actually, fire fire association, which is the um, you know, the group representing the. The former fire department, and they have historical information or information there. And provide obviously wonderful support for all the Fourth of July functions and fireworks and so forth. Lots of storage associated with that and meeting space, but actually, they they would make do with less square footage. A thousand square feet less than they currently have. Um so that's where the five thousand square foot feet come from. Now, there's a an unassigned, unassigned component here, because um this, we act actually. Uh in the existing square feet, there's some space that really isn't um assigned to anyone and and really utilized very much. There's a lot, a lot, some space in the former fire um station building. That's, you know, has storage of various kinds. It's really hard to determine without much more time spent. Exactly who to assign that space to, but regardless, five thousand square feet. So this looks very reasonable to me, these increases, with the discussions I had and the and the increases. So I think it, as I mentioned before, it becomes a little more of an exercise of where the square feet are. And the adjacencies and whether we can capture some, you know, um double use of space. That we can really start to see some savings. Now, um Mark, um that relative to cost, well. It it's it's going, it is expensive to renovate, to provide all the space, absolutely, and it's it's expensive to build it new also. But I think we want to be very careful, and it can be done with analysis, but we're very careful when you look at the um logic building. That you do start with the space program and space and place the space program. All the list of rooms, at least as a starting point, try to fix fit it all into that building. And see what fits in an appropriate way and what the cost is to renovate that to fit those space needs. Or or you might be asking the department heads to to really rethink how they operate and 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 this, the space they need. And and maybe they're comfortable with that, and may, or maybe they're not too pleased with that. I mean, these are, I think, all the, part of all the due diligence that you guys all wise, or you board members all wisely alluded to. During the entire evening tonight.
Go ahead, Shabnam. Now I had a question.
I was just gonna say, I know that there's a motion. That is to authorize starting phase two. I don't know if I'm net ready to make that motion tonight, and I just wanted to know, is anybody else ready? It's in the packet, page two.
Um if you even have a question, I'm all.
I think he's done phase two.
This is phase two, Shabnam.
But isn't there, it says here to make a motion to do.
It was before we had Tom stop.
Yeah, yeah. So um. Um we'll get back to that. So Tom, I had a, I had a quick question. So it, when I, when I look at this, and this is great work, by the way, this is adding immense uh. Knowledge and information, some of the detail that we discussed tonight that we really need to make decisions. So as as I look at the renovation and the small addition, the fourteen hundred square feet. Isn't it fair to say that if we didn't have police at the former fire station? That we wouldn't need the west storage addition, that we'd be able to accommodate. All public works and forestry and the fire association within the public works building.
Um. Well, I haven't looked at it that way, but I can say that obviously, when we look at that building. Only a half or a third of it is um garage-type space. So really, we're, let's look at what we're doing here at this, okay, we're basically. This is what you would, if you didn't have the police function, you'd have this much more. this is what you would, if you didn't have the police function, you'd have this much more Department of Public Works right here. I don't have that square footage number, but that's still not going to satisfy all of DPW, because basically, this is what DPW and Forestry have right now. They have all this up to this demising wall. And after that, this space is developed, uh, can you see my cursor?
Yes, you bet.
Okay, this space is all developed as rooms with um demising walls and corridors that we respected most of those, like this, for instance, this is, I, if I remember the original plan, this is basically one room that we're dividing into three rooms. It worked out very well, you know, very nicely. So that's, that's wonderful. You know, we're preserving this corridor right here, which is wonderful. Uh, Max, sorry, this corridor right here, which is the the original entrance. This is a handicap ramp.
Right.
Concrete ramp. This is the side door. This, this is all space that's there right now. We're adding this elevator right here um in a, in a, um, I think it's a closet that happens to go up and down between floors. But anyway, that that would be a new elevator, but these stairs are in this location. So that's the idea of being able to to utilize existing walls. Now, if you wanted to really satisfy a much more DPW space, I imagine that then you'd tear out all these walls, but then you have a wood floor because this is an upper and middle level right here. This is the upper level. And um underneath it is this phone, is this basement. So this is not load-bearing floor. This is, or it's load-bearing for, um, you know, it's not for equipment. It's for people and rooms. It's a wood-framed floor. So you couldn't park equipment there, and you don't have this much, you wouldn't need this much space, this level and the lower level for the DPW non-equipment storage space, would be my guess. You know, I haven't studied the the plan from that standpoint, so I think you'd be hard pressed.
No, that that's helpful. So I'm I'm hearing that we would need, we would still need some West Storage Edition. And I know when we've talked about this previously, we talked about, you know, that you could have a wash bay or you could have a mea- a vehicle maintenance bay, because that could be a scheduled activity out towards, you know, the cold storage. Um, but you couldn't, uh, what I'm hearing from you is, no, you couldn't take a hundred percent what that's allocated for the West Storage back to the fire station, but you'd be able to allocate some of it. That's what I'm hearing. And then I, the the follow-up question I had was, your analysis did not contemplate Village Hall and Police remaining at this Village Hall. I don't see.
Oh, uh, no, because that's the current situation.
Right.
That, um, let me look at that. This, that's what we have now, and um the police are 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 very tight. They're basically um in this component right now. I wanted, wanted to say also, um, when we really talk to admin and the programmed space and how they utilize the lobby space, this plan antis- would anticipate expanding the size of that lobby and squaring it off, so there's really room for um voter registration and whatever other functions, bake sales and things, whatever else goes there, ma- makes it a much more gracious lobby lobby, and gives the opportunity to have some circulation space back to the Fire Association, and then also um internal circulation here to some other support functions for the admin area. So um with your question, John, are you suggesting that the the fire department would continue to use only this area of the building that they currently use now?
Um, well, the 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 fires, the Fire Association uses some of the current of the Corks Building, isn't that right?
Well, yeah, but I thought, was your question that what if we leave admin and police in the existing Village Hall?
Right, well, that's, I think, yeah, I'm not seeing that here, and I think a determination was made is that they they can't fit the footprint, and we can't expand the footprint to accommodate the square footage allocations that are needed for admin and police.
Correct.
Yeah.
That was, yeah, the, I guess the the beginning premise was that the police in the current Village Hall were in cramped space.
And then my my o- my my other quick read on this is whether it's renovation on the small addition or the two-story or three-story, you're estimating eleven to twelve million dollars uh excluding architectural engineering fees, site cost, construction management, furniture, equipment, technology, et cetera.
You're talking about the renovation scenario?
I'm I'm looking at all four of these, and they're all.
Yes.
They're all in eleven to twelve billion-dollar range.
That's, that's correct, but keep in mind that we're accommodating all the space needs of all the program space needs of the the admin, the police, and the um DPW and forestry. Right, so if you look at it collectively across all categories, all buildings, all departments, all buildings, yeah, I I believe that that would be the range of of prices, and and they start to, they start to hover around that eleven to twelve million-dollar range. Um, you know, we have eleven-seven, eleven-three. They they all be- because you're um, you're moving several type of um variables at the same time. You're 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 switching between renovation and new construction, and those have different a cost parameters, right? So you're, you're swapping one for the other. As you build more new, you can renovate less. Renovation is expensive, but um buil- building new is expensive too, but it's much more efficient, and you can control your budget a little more by building materials and and how you organize the space. So um that's why, very interestingly, the um the the total budget across all buildings, all departments, starts to hover around the same, a similar number, you know, eleven to twelve million dollars.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Tom. Kate has a question. Kate?
Yeah, Tom, if you can keep it on this page, I just wanted to point out, I think, so this third version here where we're moving everything to the old fire station site, I just want to encourage trustees. This is probably, in my opinion, the most apples-to-apples if we wanted to look at the Logic Building here, because this actually frees up Village Hall completely, like the current Village Hall. So any assumptions we're making about, you know, redeveloping Village Hall could be made in this scenario. This also, though, so you're looking at that eleven-point-three versus our purchase price. However, what this includes is the solving of DPW and that entire old fire station building, the underutilization of that, and also just maintaining that properly. So I just, I want us to, I know these numbers look big to us, however, if we're comparing it to a six-point-five-million-dollar purchase, which also will include some renovations to Tom's point on we don't know exactly if the space requirements fit that building, right? So I just, I think this would be the virgin version. Sorry, I would encourage the board to look at the most if you're trying to look at, you know, Plan A, which is acquire a new property, you know, and redevelop Village Hall, and Plan B, which is solves most issues, I think, with the facilities, pool building aside.
Kate, I think you you made an excellent point, and I would um add to that, that um my designers feel it's going to be quite a challenge to get the all the programmed Village Hall functions and the programmed police functions in the Logic Building with um it in a, in a functional way. Uh, it it could be difficult from a space pl- standpoint, and also from a construction standpoint. Um, un- unless you start to really modify the expectations of what the police wanted. The Village Hall is fairly straightforward space, but the police, they have various, what they told us, anyway, at that time, they may, you know, the story may be different now, but what they told us were, there was a lot of discussion about security and soundproofing and different functions and and not moving through public spaces. You know, so there was little opportunity to share space with the Village Hall function. But, you know, that can be modified depending on what their current view of the world is, you know, and how how they'd like to operate. But just going to what we heard, it could be quite a challenge, and I think it'd be quite an expense. So I think that's a very important component to do a a full schematic study of how that those spaces could fit there and then put a price to it.
Uh, Tom, it also doesn't show in there. I I uh I think Kate made a good point, but we also have the value of the Village Hall here for sale to offset some of these costs, correct?
That's right.
In that three, three-story building concept, so you minus out two million or three million, whatever the number is for the sale of this building.
Deep Mar?
Yeah, uh, Tom, question for you. Do you, you you have studied these plans in detail. You spend a lot, who did you spend time with from a design? Designer's perspective, which firm?
Um, Ed Karski.
All right. Um, so you spent a lot of time on the Village Hall, and so my question is really only about current Village Hall. And do you foresee a scenario where the current Village Hall with the space that's available, that there's an opportunity to add a a space program, add square footage to the building somewhere to the tune of a thousand to two thousand square feet?
Well, we we didn't look at expanding the building. Um, I think.
I get it, Tom. Yeah.
Right, so I think that.
This is not a trick question. I'm also not trying to lead the witness, but.
Well, I have more, I have more to say, but that's okay. Please continue.
Yeah, you you've looked at these long enough. This is really a gut check on on your end. Um, is it, is it possible, or do you not see that to be an option?
Well, um, we didn't, we didn't look, now let me, you know, expand on it. We didn't look at expanding this building. This is a um a unique-shaped building. Um, we want to be careful that if we'd expand it, then we're, you know, what are we displacing? Are we displacing a a parking lot driveline? Are we displacing parking? You know, it's a challenge. So we, no, we did not look at expanding the building. I think it's worth a study. I I agree that has a potential. Um, we'd want to place that that extra space in a good location that gives us a, you know, a good design functionality. I think as as oddly shaped as this building is, it really, as you look at this design, you can see the space organizes quite well on it, on different um circulation spines. So we wouldn't want to disrupt that and make it too odd and meandering, but it could be studied. Um, and also, I want to say that, as I mentioned before, that the renovation of this building could be done to a lesser extent. This is like the full-blown renovation, right? So I think that your comments earlier were were um very right on, Deep Mar, when you said, you know, it could be in the neighborhood of um two million, I think you mentioned, possibly. So you could, there would, there would be a a scenario of a a two or three-million-dollar renovation, and maybe, maybe that incorporates a an addition. Um, and maybe that begins to get to a point possibly where the police department could exist in the building. I mean, there are a lot of deficiencies of their space now. Um, and we have to really make sure that it would flow correctly for their needs, and also their their police equipment and, you know, um, vehicle needs. It's it's a real challenge. But it's worth a study, Deep Mar, definitely.
Yeah, no, I understood. Thank you for that gut check. Um, when did we authorize phase two?
We didn't, and that's why I was confused, because the memo says to authorize.
So how did we get here?
Tom's generous heart.
That's right. Do, if you would rather not authorize me to phase two, that's fine with me, but here's the information. I I brought it forward now because you guys move really quickly. And, you know, while I'm, while I'm grinding away, looking at four departments and three buildings, you go out and put another building under contract. I would have put that building, this scenario, and I looked at, I would look at four buildings at the same time, because that's the way to look at it comprehensively. But um regardless, I wanted to, in my um, you know, uh, in my little way, try to maybe give a little perspective on costs and scenarios and alternatives, because I I think it all helps in discussion of of considering a new purchase.
No, Tom, this this is, this is really helpful. It would, it would be good for us to get a handle on that percentage upper. Because I know construction management, uh, Deep Mar could probably have answered some of that as well. And I know the site costs are gonna vary. You know, there's gonna be some more architectural, and there's gonna be definitely some engineering, and those numbers can really, really add. If you're, if you're at eleven-point-three million and you add fifteen, twenty percent, you're in the teens um before this building is done, and you gotta furnish it, and you know, you have to have the finishes, you have to have the equipment. So I just, I just want to point that out. This is incredibly.
Now, John, I think that's very good thinking and very good logic, and I would, I would suggest that same logic then is applied to uh obviously the um Logic Building with the renovation costs there.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Because we, it's, it is good to look at comprehensive budgets, absolutely. Um, given the the limited time, um, and also the complexity of this, I I didn't want us all to get caught up on, you know, the different site costs and different locations and the all the equipping costs for different-sized facilities, and that involves a whole another level of conversation decisions by the different departments to really get a real number. I think FGMA could look to that report for some ideas, because I think they have, they had experience with equipping the buildings. I I don't agree with how they size the space or their building concept at all. I thought that was very poor. Just, you know, that their three-department solution was, I believe it was nineteen million dollars. And um I'm sort of apologize for flipping around here, but let me get to the the number for the new construction. You know, this three-department solution is nine, nine-point-three million plus, you know, throw another million or a million and a half on that, but you're still significantly significantly less than um nineteen and a half million. And I think you're in a much, a much more functional um well-designed building, which, you know, is my unbiased opinion, but.
No, this is great work, and it's a credit to you and your passion for this. I think it added lots of value for us. And it's, it's gonna give us a good comparable as we um make decision, uh, make decisions in the weeks and months ahead. Oh, absolutely. Anything else? Yeah, anything uh else for Tom? I I don't want to cut you short, Tom, but we do have, we got a few more agenda items, and I am really trying to shoot for midnight, no later, uh, just to hit Harold a bit.
Any other parting questions for me? Otherwise, I've said everything I need to.
Awesome. Any other questions for Tom?
No, just a big thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom. My pleasure. Thanks for the opportunity. Good night.
All right, thanks again.
Have a good night.
Okay, um the um who was up next, wasn't it?
It is.
Yeah, so, Mark, do you wanna, you wanna kick that off?
Sure, I'll I'll start that. So in the CIP, we allocated seventy-five thousand dollars to work on design and assessment and the like with respect to the pool facility, what I would call the community center, right? The community center being the whole building, the pool facility being on the first floor, and the community room being on the second floor. So that building was built in nineteen seventy. So the board retained Raymaker, which is a consulting firm, to go in and do a complete assessment of the building, which they did, first and second floor, interior and exterior. That's the first of two reports that are in here. I think it was dated in May or something like that. And that came up with a long list, a rather daunting list, of all the repairs and renovations that would have to, that they were recommending be made to bring that building up to kind of the current state of the art, um, which largely included some major um additions with respect to ADA, right? Because the second floor is only accessible by stairway now. The bathrooms are are too few and and inadequate in size. And so what they came up with was a a footprint of the existing building, and then they added an addition to the front of the building to accommodate bathrooms and elevator. And then addition to the, to the south side of the building on the pool deck, if you will, to accommodate two-family bathrooms. So their recommendation was not only to renovate the building, but to add some space to the building to try to bring it into compliance. Um, that report just dealt with the deficiencies in the building and how they might be remedied. And then they issued a second report, which is also in the packet from their partner, who's Fendorf, who went through their list of recommended um improvements and put a price tag on it. And so the first page of that Fendorf report um indicates that to replace the building um would be in the neighborhood of four-point-eight to five-point-one million dollars. And if we wanted to renovate it and add the square footage, those bathrooms and elevators, which is actually more like eighteen hundred square feet rather than twelve hundred that appears there, so that's. So that's, they're gonna fix that. Um, but that's three and a half million dollars right there as well. So I think the bottom line is, we're looking at a big price tag to whether we're renovating this building or taking it all the way to new. It's, it's a very significant number. We'd have to figure out what our priorities are in terms of doing this. The pool obviously doesn't have the funds to do this themselves. They wouldn't even be able to service the debt uh, for something like this. If we, if we, the village borrowed three and a half million dollars general obligation debt and then asked them to pay the principal and interest as it came due every year, it's, it would be on, beyond them. So, um, it would definitely require some support. So I, I think the bottom line here is just to indicate that, well, the structure is sound. It, it, the, the facility is getting quite dated. It doesn't meet any of the ADA. And it has the same problem as the fire station and it has a lot of what I call orphan space. And orphan space is space that either is not being used or grossly underused. Um, that's not a problem on the first floor of the pool building, but it is certainly a problem on the second floor in terms of underutilization. Um, it's certainly a problem in, in the old Village Hall, which is the south section of the Public Works Building, um, with that underutilization. So, I mean, I don't feel good about leaving orphan space as orphan space. Here we are, we're trying to add space, but it's all in the wrong places, um, the space that's available to us. So that's, that's an issue. Um, the fate of the second floor is very much tied up at logic because logic does have a very large community room. Um, so there's some room there. When I talk to the pool committee about this and we'll be continuing that conversation, um, next week, um, they're in favor of going towards the, the replacement and not try to renovate this facility. Difference in cost is just not that great and you could get a much better designed facility as a result. I think it's a, a major question. The focus of the pool committee is mostly on the first floor. Um, they use the second floor occasionally, but they don't use it that much. But it's really up to the board and the community. What are you gonna do on that second floor? What would it look like? I think the suggestion that I've heard from the pool committee is maybe it's, um, second floor enclosed spaces, half the size that it is today. That's a, it only encompasses half the roof and the other half could be spectator space, stands, other things. Um, but we're really early days. But I think that the challenge for the board is to figure out, now that we know something about these costs, where does this sit in our priorities with all these other buildings and all these other functions? But I would urge the board, while we may not assign this the highest priority and I, and I don't think we should, we should schedule this someplace in the CIP or remember the CIP has a five-year horizon or in the Eller's Financial Management Plan, which is a ten-year horizon. So it gives us a little more flexibility and so on, but I think the pool community is very enthusiastic about moving from what we have today to a, a modern facility that just works a lot. But when we can afford it, that's really up to the board.
Deep Mar first and then Shabnam.
Uh, thank you.
And then Bob.
I, I think the rec, the notion and perhaps recommendation or straw poll, whatever you want to call it, that the pool committee came to consensus of, which is to lobby for new building will not be in the cards. I mean, it's just unrealistic. Um, I, I think my sense on that is looking at the CIP and yes, we'll be recreating it, um, to try to take away from the Raymaker report truly the essentials of what we can spend to a fixed dollar amount. And, and whatever that dollar amount is that we all can come to consensus with, pick a number, a million dollars. Pool committee, I guess my challenge, my ask would be pool committee, come up with a list of priorities to fit to, into that budget frame. I think that's the only reasonable way to move forward. That's my recommendation. I'm sure everybody else has got different views or similar views, so.
Shabnam.
Love to hear.
Yeah.
Um, Mark, I just had a quick question. My understanding, and I don't know if it was in the report or not, but I'm sharing what I've heard from others, is that that building is like two feet too low and that it's in a flood zone and that when there was that twenty eighteen flood, all the equipment that was in the basement was impacted. And is that correct?
It, it was, it flooded and all the, um, all the pool mechanicals, the pumps, the boilers are all underground essentially. And did flood in two thousand eighteen and it was all replaced. Fortunately, we had insurance that covered all that cost. But in speaking to the architect at Raymaker about that, they said it is possible to, um, waterproof, if you will, having waterproof doors and, and the like, to be able to shield that underground space. If the decision was that it has to stay where it is because of cost considerations or other considerations, steps could be taken to better protect the space from a recurrence of two thousand eighteen.
Uh, but I, and I think you mentioned this and I would echo what Mark said, that this is a building and a location and a facility that a lot of people enjoy and have interest in. They're maybe not interested in the DPW renovations as much as they are in this one. And I think there's a lot of people who would be willing to contribute, that it wouldn't only be, uh, the, the village supporting the renovation. And between renovation versus new, my preference would be new because the dollar amounts are not that far off. And there, there's public support and that allows you to free up and have a brand new slate and not be stuck with, well, there's a bathroom here and then let's move around it. You're gonna have a much better product at the end of the day.
Thanks, Shabnam. Uh, Bob?
I just wanted to ask you, so all the pool equipment, the boilers and such, are they all in the renovation? Are we assuming we're using the existing or that all?
They were gonna, they were gonna reuse a lot of it. So whether they were replacing the building or not, they were gonna reinstall that equipment. I mean, it's only, whatever, six years old. It's not that old. It's quite efficient.
It would be the case on the new construction as well?
Yeah, and I think they feel they could that described some of that in their first page of the Fendorf analysis. But again, there is some equipment that, um, is above ground as well. Some of the chemical, um, controllers are up, uh, on the first floor, um, so we have to deal with that. I mean, it's a big project at a time when we are confronting other higher priority needs admittedly. Um, so it's a question, you know, we're gonna, it's gonna, it's not gonna be at the front of the line. It's gonna be further back, but the question is wherever it is further back, is it the million dollars that we kind of threw at as a placeholder in the current CIP? Or is it something closer to what Raymaker's talking about here of three, three to four million dollars?
I had a couple of comments. Was there anybody else right now? Kate, go, can I see Kate? Go ahead, Kate.
Um, yeah, just, uh, thanks for the recap, Mark. And yes, uh, you, you accurately relayed our conversation. I would just add one point is I would like to understand, maybe we can take this up with the pool committee and have Raymaker relook at this. What if we eliminated a second floor in that facility? And maybe didn't have a building, like an enclosed building, but just some shades or something if people wanted to go up there. But if we move the community center to either a new imagined firehouse potentially or the logic building, uh, what, how does that impact the overall renovation of that pool facility? And does that dramatically decrease the price? You know, is the second floor what's adding a lot of that, um, dollar amount? Because I, I'd like, that would be one data point I would like to know because number two, I do agree with Shabnam that, um, the conversations I've had with the community around the pool, there would be a lot of community interest to, you know, if we could set up a matching funds, something like that. I, I do, I, I don't want to cut us off too short there. I think, um, you know, I heard actually from multiple residents during All City last year, when pool members were able to go to different facilities, people got a little taste of what other facilities are like. And I think there's, is a lot of desire, both resident and non-resident alike, to increase that. Also, Mark, one thing I would add is I think with an updated facility, we could also look at updating prices for pool membership to offset some of that new construction. And we could phase that in over time and figure out the appropriate way to help fund and offset some of those costs. So I just throw those out there as other, other things that we can play with here. But I am definitely in the camp of this is a teardown building, so.
Yeah, and, and when we, um, hired Raymaker, the contract, uh, like the Deegan contract, had two phases to it. And what they've done so far is the first phase. So there still is money in the budget, I believe, to do a second phase. Once I think the pool committee had a, has, has a better idea of what it would like to see, be it a, a new first floor and some kind of rooftop viewing or whatever. And then I would suggest we bring that back to the board and see if the board will be willing at that point in time to authorize phase two of Raymaker once we're more focused as to what phase two would look like. I realize, you know, for, for Deep Mar, the million dollars, it's, I realize it's a non-starter, so. Okay, I put that aside, but to the rest of the board I'm speaking. The issue is, you know, is that something that board might be interested in? So I think where we're gonna go is we're gonna talk about this some more. I'll let the board know that, you know, the variety of views on the part of the board on this issue. And let's see what they come up with. And then the question is, will the board want to fund that as the second phase of, of Raymaker? And will the board put a placeholder in the CIP? Or worst case, in the elders plan at some point for, for this kind of a project? And whether it's a million dollars or three and a half million dollars.
Shabnam, and then I have a follow-up.
I, I just don't, I don't want the use of the second floor to be overlooked because it sounds like the pool committee is mostly focused on the first floor. I think the four corners and other programs use the second floor and I don't want to assume that, uh, they're gonna be using logic for, for that because they're bringing the kids to the pool. Maybe if there's not a second floor, there would be space on the first floor for the things that happen in that building that are not necessarily related to the pool, but to other, other organizations that are using that space.
Is the second floor being used that much? I mean, my sense is it's just used for meats. They go up on the balcony and.
No, there are some, there are some groups that.
Four corners is using it?
I think like once a week, there's a drumming group that comes in there and uses the space. So I mean, it's definitely underused, but there is some use for it. And the other thing I would caution on that too is we can't just say, well, we're gonna take off the second floor and the community, you'll go use logic, but then the board decides we're not moving forward with logic. Then where are you? Or you don't have a plan for a community room in this three-story new Public Works building.
Yeah.
So we.
So what I, I mean, um, these are still big numbers. So one of the things I was thinking about is, you know, can we block off the, the second floor? So you don't need an elevator or you don't need, you know, six hundred dollars a square foot to, to work up there. But that doesn't sound like that's gonna be.
The elevator is actually, it turns out a little less expensive than the original estimate because it's, what's known as a Lula elevator, which I had never heard of before, but it's a very simple lift. It only goes up a single floor, so it's not quite as, as pricey. Uh, but you still have to deal with the bathrooms and the bathrooms are, huh, that's pretty expensive.
Oh, yeah, and it, and it really is to Shabnam's point, it's really about the first floor. But I, you know, I'm looking at the doors at forty-five hundred dollars a piece and the wood doors at thirty-five hundred dollars a piece. And it's eighty-eight grand to remove the pool equipment while we do, while we do the work. And then the addition is eight hundred seventy-nine dollars per square feet. And the overall is six hundred dollars a square feet. So, uh, to Deep Mar's point, you know, um, this may be a bridge too far. But it, it also suggests to me that the better play might be the one story, do it right. We've only got so much money. We're gonna have to raise money to find a way to bridge that gap. And, and then figure it out. And three quarters of the members are non-residents for the pool. Uh, so those are just, I just, I see a lot of big numbers in here and a lot of risk, a lot of uncertainty. Um, but I'm, I'm encouraged by Kate's remarks and Shabnam's remarks about people really want to see an improvement there. I agree with Kate, there'll be less enthusiasm for, for improving what's there currently. And it's gonna be very costly to do that. Shabnam, and then we'll move on.
Sure, um, is there a way to know who uses the pool? Because even if three quarters of the members are not residents, people use the pool and they don't buy a membership. So you don't have, you don't have to buy a seven.
You can get guest passes, you can.
I'm saying.
Those passes can only be purchased by now.
Yeah, right.
But you could, if I'm a resident and I don't have a summer pool membership, I can go and pay twenty dollars and just swim for that day.
I don't know.
So I'm, my point is, is that even if three quarters of the members who pay for a summer membership are not residents, that doesn't mean residents are not using the pool. They just get a day pass.
Well, see, it was my understanding that we only issued day passes to members, but I don't use the pool. But that's, from talking with Dane, I was asking him questions about that as well. Is that for, I mean, as pool members?
Shabnam is correct. Yeah, you can buy a day pass.
Yep, okay, but that's only for residents?
Anybody can buy a day pass, anyone.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah, there may even be more flexibility after August first. I'm trying to remember.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Yeah, after August first, there's more flexibility. Alright, so, um, is that, is that good for the pool, uh, discussion? I thought that was a good discussion. Good questions. Mark, you got everything from the board that you hope to get tonight? Obviously, the committee's gonna look at this.
Yeah, I mean, it's how much and, and when, right? And that's gonna be part of that CIP discussion.
Which is next.
Which is coming up soon.
Yes, the CIP is, at least on our agenda, is next, isn't that right?
Tom, I would just make one remark.
Go ahead.
Mark asked me to look over the structural aspects of the structural engineer.
Yeah.
And that building is pretty solid. Um, and, uh, the first, the ceiling is concrete tees. There's a little bit of rusting from the mancers that are on there, but it, it's a substantial building, whether or not it's gonna, it's functional or not. The second floor is wood framed and could be relatively easily removed. So when you're talking about a one-story option, I don't know if that's only for new, but I suppose an option of remodeling with one story could be looked at too. Anyway, I just wanted to, to, that, that some of the structural, it, it's a solidly built building.
So could you have a walkout up on top of there? It sounds like without having enclosed?
I mean, it's all rated for, for forty pounds per square foot. I imagine those tees could, um, you know, the concrete tee is sort of four feet wide and it sounds like this and, and, uh, you could probably support some kind of waterproof deck on there. I, but it would have, a structural engineer would have.
Even have a green roof, green roof up there as long as you could hack the snow load and, and.
A-again, those tees could be looked at and evaluated.
It would be an outdoor space.
It could be.
Yeah, okay, that's interesting. Yeah, Shabnam?
Um, I want to know what is the difference between renovating and demolishing? Because if you want to renovate and just have like, I don't know what the term is, like scrape, scrape off or something, where you just remove everything from the interior.
A gut remodel.
You remove everything and you just keep the structure versus remodel, a brand new building. What would, what is the difference between these two?
Well, as you saw in, in Tom's evaluation, not much. And in, in the scenarios he gave, as he said, remodeling can be quite expensive. But, uh, it depends on whether that space that you're gutting meets your, your space needs. And, and if it doesn't, then.
I think I have an assumption that the remodeling is gonna not work, but I don't have facts for it. I just have like, I, I want to see the, the actual difference between renovation and demolition. Can we get that information?
Well, analysis like one was done would have to be done.
And Shabnam, the, the current, the current building, just the first floor footprint, so to speak, I don't think encompasses things like the addition of family bathrooms, which has been requested, right? Uh, like that you would see at an airport or facilities for the lifeguards, like to actually be able to shower and have private areas to change, which doesn't exist right now. So there's, there's a lot of, I do think there is partially some additional square footage, footage needed. What I don't know is, is it just like a walls in and can we add on to that? Does that impact the price? Does that impact the price? But I think there's small details, but I think we do kind of need to get in the right ballpark, you know, as a team and a board and then go from there, so.
That's helpful. All right, ready to move on?
So you know Dane has just joined us.
Hey Dane, we just had a great discussion on the pool.
Howdy, yes, I, I was just joining to answer any questions if needed.
Okay, any questions for Dane?
I'm afraid we haven't solved any of your problems, Dane.
That's no problem.
But we had a good discussion and, and it's nice to have real numbers and real analysis on what's, what's going on there.
Yeah, Dane, you and I worked out on the, the pool agenda and how we want to approach this later this week and have that meeting next week.
But the pool's in great shape and the equipment's in great shape, isn't that right? We just put a new liner on.
Replace the liner, right? Yeah, so I mean, yeah, the, all the money has gone into the pool and into the equipment. Right, there are still some issues, but yeah, a lot of money has been put, but not this kind of money.
Right.
Right, I mean, this is a different order of magnitude.
Right. Okay, um, discussion Village Capital Project Guidance. Brian, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so I, I mean, it ties in well with what we were just talking about. We've got a lot of different, um, facilities related projects, um, currently occupying a lot of the, uh, the thought process here in the village. Um, I was just going to bring everyone up to speed. I, I will be working on the, exclusively on the CIP as we get through the, uh, the close of this week. Um, I had a meeting today with, uh, Brad Viget from Baird, um, kind of throwing around a few ideas for how we can prepare, uh, a few versions of the CIP. Obviously, given where the village is right now with the uncertainty surrounding the facilities projects, it will require me to put together two different iterations of the CIP. One, as if we are proceeding with our status quo plan from last year with the facilities project uh, coinciding in twenty twenty six. And then one, if we do go forward with the plan in twenty twenty five, um, and how the, the borrowing and everything will fall into place, uh, as a result of either options. So, um, I might, we were just talking about one other alternative option I might put together. So it might be three, three, uh, options that are finally prepared and, and given back to you. But the other piece was, we had a number of things that we just discussed and I didn't know what direction we would be coming out of each of those discussions and whether we had any guidance or, or clarity as to what new projects you might want me to be looking at, potentially slotting in a future placeholders, um, on the CIP. So just felt this was a good time to bring that up or any other suggestions. And then I will turn things over, start working on them, uh, um, at closing this week, next week.
This is where we, uh, recognize that you're going for extra stars by putting together.
That was not, that was not my choice. Or wants, yeah.
Uh, do we, do we put in requests now?
You certainly can.
Well, you're going to have, we talked about this last time, I think, that you were going to generate a list of at least the new items.
I do have a, yeah, wish list of, uh, items that we have been making note of throughout the course of the last, uh, calendar year.
Uh, you got, I presume you're going to share that with us at that point? Make sure that we've got our requests in.
Yeah, I can, I can issue that out to everyone beforehand, uh, as I get started.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think what we, we want to show a breadth of, of CIPs in a sense that some of us have favored a more, what are called more minimalist solution, which is to say, take the current CIP, advance it one year and there you go. Um, how that accommodates the kinds of dollars that we're talking about for these projects? It's not a, it's not a good fit. There would have to be a whole new capital plan as to the projects that would support that. Because you can't take what Deegan presented to us and fit it in the current CIP. You can't, the pool doesn't fit in that CIP. So the question is, okay, if we, if we just look at the base case of what we currently have, it's got what, six million dollars in twenty twenty six? But six million dollars doesn't pay for logic, six million dollars doesn't pay for these, uh, public works projects. What does it pay for? Um, so that's one issue, but I would like to see, um, some different scenarios. So that might be a base case kind of thing, um, where we're saying we're steering away from any new buildings. We're doing some renovations, but we're capping it within our prior budget. And then, then there would be another CIP that says, no, we're going to stretch ourselves, we're going to borrow some more money. And whether that's logic or whether that's a new public works building, that's what that sort of scenario would represent. So, um, at this point, I don't think we should be too focused on the dollars. I mean, in terms of financing, all this will have to be financed, all of it financed through debt issuance. Um, that will be discussed in the finance committee. I think where the finance committee looks to the board for guidance is, what are your priorities? In terms of, you know, buildings and, and plans? Because then we will build a financial strategy, a borrowing strategy around that. And my, um, my kind of guidance to, to Brian on this and I'll say the same thing to the, to the finance committee is that we want to, as we think about financing, we want to maintain our strong credit rating. That doesn't necessarily mean triple A, but it means strong credit rating, okay? Low cost availability of funds. And we also want to be very cognizant of the fact that when we borrow this money, that's not subject to levy limits. So it's passed right through to the residents. And so that, depending on what we do, that could really spike the levy property tax for the residents as they absorb the cost of debt service on these projects. So what we want to make sure is that we remain a strong credit and that we also have a, um, the cost of the, of the additional debt service levy on the residents is something that's acceptable. Um, so we will try to work kind of within those, within that framework. But again, it's up to the board to figure out what the, the projects are.
Mark, isn't it safe to say in so many ways, the scenarios that, that have been played through by, um, Brad, or on the, during, in the finance committee, really, the reality is we can't read much beyond this, but the twenty twenty five CIP and the projected borrow or debt capacity that we have, I mean.
We have actually quite a bit of debt capacity.
Yes.
We, we.
Fair, but what the twenty twenty five CIP projected were within the constraints of our financial model and certainly our financial guidelines.
Right.
That it's a different conversation to, to create a CIP that leads beyond that and or believes beyond that significantly. This maintains a level borrowing and, and a debt capacity that evens out yeah, over the years.
But I think it's important to realize that's not the village's debt capacity, okay? From a, we know from a statutory point of view, we, what we got, I don't know, twelve million borrowed today or something like that. And half of it is in the TIF three, which services its own debt. So our debt is low today, okay? That's why we're triple, triple A credit.
Right.
So there is the capacity to borrow more and significantly more. But of course, there is a cost, both in terms of additional interest expense and in terms of passing on that debt service cost to the residents in terms of property tax. And so, uh, I just don't think we should say, well, this is what we did last year, that's all we can do. We can do a lot more, but we have to be aware of this is what the trade offs are.
Can I ask a question?
And that's the conversation at, at finance we have to have.
I just want to make sure, when you say we can borrow more, you're saying we can borrow more even staying under our own limits?
Well.
Because, or, or is Deep Mar saying that we, these numbers are the limits?
Only, only.
Our internal limits I'm talking about.
Yeah, if you look at the financial policy, there's only one real metric in there. And it relates to the, to the debt. And that's this twenty, the debt service coverage, right? It's looking at what your debt service principal and interest is as a percentage of your operating revenue. Okay, and right now, the financial policy says twenty five percent.
Correct.
And I think that's maybe what Deep Mar was getting to and saying, well, we're kind of up against that twenty five percent. And we are, but that twenty five percent is just a self-imposed number.
That's my question, are we at the twenty five percent?
No, today, no, we're not even close to, to, I mean, where we are today is, we have our, because our operating revenues, right, are capped because we don't have any net new construction, right? So we can't, we, we, we have a very small operating revenue source. So whenever you put that service on top of that small revenue source, you start getting numbers like twenty percent, twenty five percent, thirty percent. But it's, it's kind of an artificial constraint because the only reason why our operating revenues are the way they are is because of levy limits, not because of the financial capacity of the village. When you ask what can the village borrow, it becomes a function of what the value of the property is in the village and what the income of the residents are. All the agencies are looking at is, will the village pay in full on time? And if the village has some debt obligation and it needs to pay, there's no constraint. In fact, there's an obligation to pass it on in the form of property tax. So the ultimate payer is not the village, it's the residents, right? That's, that's the source of all the property tax revenue. Okay, so it becomes an issue of their willingness to pay, but not so much their capacity, because we're really quite wealthy as a, as a village.
Fair. So these are the things. Capacity in the wrong, it's not wrong, no, because I try to realize that, I guess. You explained the subtle ones of what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, so.
Whether the taxpayer is willing to pay.
And, and it's a taxpayer question.
Where is the high water market?
Yeah, so, and a lot of communities don't have that luxury, they just don't have the tax base to be able to do these kinds of things. We do, but again, it cuts down to the question of, do the residents, are the, is, are the projects worth paying for? Are they willing to absorb the cost in terms of debt service to do these sorts of things? And then ultimately, there is a limit imposed by the state and there's also a limit of our willingness to pay higher interest expense, um, over time, so.
So Mark, is it, is it possible for us to model the scenarios that are going to be in front of us? In other words, there's a, there's a logic model with a focus on public works, uh, mostly being located at the firehouse and maybe some addition on the west side. There's a scenario where, uh, we fix this up and, and, um, we do the full three-story deal, the, you know, the one that Kate mentioned, she, you know, she had a preference for. I mean, do we have the, the ability to model these three scenarios? Because I think the residents are going to want to see how each of those play with some certainty. Uh, you know, and, and, you know, how much, you know, how much, you know, how much, uh, flexibility there is with each of those. But just give people a good handle while we do the due diligence figuring out what's the, if we do logic, you know, what that build out's going to be to Tom's point. Yeah, I think it's going to be a minimalist approach, but we're going to find out.
Yeah, traditionally, we have used Baird to do some of that modeling, but it's, it's fairly limited. But now that we're using elders, I think that opens up a whole new possibility because you saw the kinds of, um, tables and charts that they can put together because they're looking at the entire revenue expense stream, they're looking at the capital projects, it's all integrated. So, I mean, I don't know what Brian is in his conversation with them about this. But when they did the original presentation to us, they were working off, um, the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine CIP. So there was just that one scenario that was built into their model and the resulting output. But there is certainly the capability to go with them and say, now there's two different CIPs or three different CIPs, drop that in the model and let's not see just what happens to interest expense and debt, but let's look at the operating revenues as well in the case of logic.
So I'm, I'm, and I want to finish this so we can move on to the next issue. But so you feel like we could operationalize this to give, to produce real value so that we can make decisions? You can work with finance committee and work with Brian to kind of, we'll get to a point where, you know, these are one of the three or four directions we're going to go. Model all four of them and then see, see, you know, you know.
I don't think Brian and Julie want to hear that, they're struggling to model too.
But you're hearing, you're, I mean, the residents are going to need real data.
What we can do in the timeframe that you need is my concern. I don't have a overcall.
Okay.
Right, I, I think it'll have to be more limited than that, but I don't know, Brian, to what extent you've raised this issue with elders in terms of, um, exploring these of a variety of capital plan scenarios and having that ripple through and are being able to see the results from that perspective rather than the sometimes limited bear charts that just focus on a single metric.
Cause I, you know, I want to model some of the things that Deep Mar has talked about as well. Um, you know, we, we, we talked about public works, it was like, you'd probably do a pretty good job there for a hundred sixty bucks a square foot. So I'd like to, you know, I'd like to know what that is because, again, I think to, you know, the discussion we've had today, these are, these are huge numbers. And I don't, I, you know, I don't know how we get from there to there with these big numbers. So that's why we're continuing to look for cost effective ways to kind of piece this together. But I would love to model it so we can show the residents to go, here's the real impact, here's the impact on taxes, here's the impact on the levy, um, you know, boy, a referendum looks like it's definitely going to happen. It's going to have to happen here and here, you know, uh, we're can, uh, Maple Bluff is going to referendum every couple of years, it seems like. So that, we spent the money on the software, on the package with elders. It would be good to use this opportunity to run these scenarios so that we, we could see how they, you know, how they, they come out and give a management tool for.
My biggest concern is time.
Yeah.
Because.
So they, we don't have the time to run the model, they don't have the time to, to run.
Stop running the models, preparing the scenarios, that's the, the hard work. I mean, running the model is just taking a set of numbers and keep punching it in and seeing, I mean, it's not quite that simple, but it's pretty close to that because the model's all built. And we're not changing the model, we're still, we're changing the assumptions that drive the model.
We just learned so much in the last week. We know what logic is, we know what, where Tom Deegan is. We kind of know, you know, where the airborne's, um, remodeling is. It seems like we should be able to work together to come up with some assumptions.
The devil's in the details.
Let's, let's, well, if we don't have the data, we can't get the decisions. And I, and, and the frustration level you heard tonight, isn't going to go away unless people have real numbers.
Well, that's my concern about logic is because it's, the other options are of, we don't have those time pressures. I mean, if we wanted to say, well, we want to go the route of the public works building and, and putting policing in there and stuff, we have time. I won't say infinite time, but we have time to study that. But it's this artificial deadline for logic that really is the strength. Otherwise, this project could, could roll out in a more orderly fashion and be better understood by the residents. But I'm not where we're at.
Well, deadlines make things, action happen.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Do the work. All right, so Brian, did you get enough from us on the CP, CIP for right now?
I will share some of the details on the wish list and follow up with a couple of you.
Okay, all right. Um, hang in there, Carol, we're home stretch. Um, so, so, um, the Dean County, Urban County thing, let's put that thing to bed quickly. Uh, that was covered in your report somewhere?
Yes, that was, going back to number seven C two. Number seven C two.
I mean, I don't even think I have that, so. Brian, do you wanna just quick? Speak to that?
So this is, this is just a continuation, it's a renewal of the the partnership that we have. Uh, with the uh Dane County, Urban County Consortium. Uh, there was a piece of this, which I might have to have Julie refresh my memory on with the. Please correct with, was this with the police with grants?
Uh, no, that's, no, not police.
Oh, not police, okay.
Oh. So this is. By joining, we were already a member, apparently we joined this and we signed it in twenty-two and joined in twenty. Like effective in twenty-three. This allows us to. Apply for funding for things like block grants and public facilities. Um, and honestly, I wasn't even aware. That, because we do not have a CD, we do not have a block grant program here in the village, so I wasn't aware. That we were part of this partnership, that this is something that Sharon had set up. Um, but I did run across when I was looking for background information, there was a mention of this in the court plan. As a possible source of funding for public facilities. And so it's my understanding that to be able to apply for grants. Through this funding that's available, that funnels through Dane County from the feds. We wouldn't apply directly, we would, we would apply through this consortium. Is that accurate, Deep Mar?
I mean, it's all starting to come back, but yes, I trust your recollection.
I is I is the very limited research, but I was just trying to find paperwork for this.
So it's a, is it fair to say it's a low bar, we could potentially?
See that there's any cost to the village, but we have a potential to participate. In asking for grants in the future.
Okay, sounds like there's a motion then.
Well, I just had a question is, as you read through this. There are some obligations on the part of the village, this isn't just, we, you know, we can just borrow money.
Yeah.
We have to provide statistics. With it references a number of agreements that we have to stay in compliance with, so I am concerned. About understanding what the administrative burden. On the staff is to be in this program, I mean, we have. Since we're currently enrolled, I guess, right, this is just an extension. Has this been burdensome and to what degree and?
Question.
Honestly, I didn't know it existed.
So we haven't even.
The burden has been.
So it's a low bar.
That's for, um, that we were in compliance, I did a quick, I did a quick walkthrough. There's like one issue I had a question with and we're we're dealing, it's about having a testing that we have specific policies in place.
Yeah.
Um, and that's something that we're addressing. Uh, this doesn't go into effect until October.
Yeah, I I'm just concerned that we enter into the program and then all of a sudden find ourselves caught. In some bureaucratic administrative, you you, you know, you're out of compliance, you have to do this, you have to do that. And all of a sudden, saying, wait a minute. Why do we, why do we buy into this thing?
My guess is.
The cost benefit isn't worth it.
My guess is the compliance won't be checked until we apply for funding. But yeah, I I share your concern.
So is that something we need to better understand before we? Buy into this, to agree to this, or are we gonna agree to it and then say, well, before we borrow any money? We're gonna be sure we understand what our obligations are.
I, that's why I'm looking at it.
It will just.
It's something we can plug into if we need it, and otherwise it's a low bar, and it's not hurting staff. It's something we made a judgment on previously, I mean, that's, that's me at eleven fifty-five. It's like, I'm looking for a motion, let's move on, I don't, I don't see the downside.
Okay, well, I guess the other point I would wanna make.
And you make good points, Mark, I just don't see downside.
Before we draw any money under this program.
Absolutely.
Better know exactly what we've obligated ourselves to, which I can't tell from reading this.
Right.
And I don't think the staff knows.
No, and I don't think this motion obligates us in that in that way, that's not my reading of it. We're all in agreement on that, that this would have to come in front of the board if there was any money involved. Right?
There's not financial obligations, but there's um administration.
Right. Okay, we're hearing it's low bar.
Requirements that you.
Yeah.
Agree to by signing up to.
And if it gets egregious, one veil.
Be careful what you ask for.
Right, right. But if it gets to be egregious or, you know, it's like, okay, this this is not a good, good thing for us anymore, and we move on. Is that fair?
Uh, assuming that you 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 can terminate the program, because. That's, I don't think it's just as simple as just saying we don't wanna be in the program anymore. But again.
Is there a motion, or do we wanna push, put this off to another meeting?
Is there a time deadline on this, I don't have any.
I would prefer to push it off.
I believe they needed a response, oh, by.
I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion.
Thank you, Deep Mar.
Get this figured out here.
Yeah.
I I I'll make a motion to approve resolution of them on the right one here.
Yep.
Our twenty twenty-five dash four approving participation in the Dane County, Urban County. Dane County, Urban County Consortium for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-eight.
Awesome. Thank you, Bob, further discussion? All those ready to vote, all those in favor, please say a raise your hand. Thanks, ladies, thank you all, thank you, Deep Mar, all right. Where we at, are we on swing sets here?
Yeah.
Okay, um, you heard Michael Laningham's. A public comment right at the beginning, you saw Brian's. Uh, summary on this. Seems like it's a great fit, the league is stepping up, they're what, ten thousand dollars? Can we have a motion to move forward on the uh playset?
So.
There's a motion here as well.
The total is thirty thousand, right?
Yep.
Yeah, right.
And the village is not paying for any of it?
The uh additional money was coming out of the capital contingency, but there's still fundraising efforts underway. That we anticipate will recoup a majority of that funding.
I like having a playset there, I do, I miss it.
Yeah.
But when I look at the picture, I'm like thirty thousand dollars for two slides. You can't get something better, it's just two slides. You go to Home Depot for five hundred bucks, I don't know, I love the idea, but I just think, look at the vote, I don't know.
I I kind of agree with you, I I looked at it and thought that's really pretty expensive for what. It's there.
So so can I ask, um, what? Um, did Michael identify this one and?
So these, uh, when he gave me the quote.
Yep.
For what he was affording, I went and looked at a few different websites based on what he was looking to attain. Um, at the age group of parameters. And came up with a few that were in the somewhat comparable cost range, that didn't look like it was gonna overburden the village. I was not aware of the the league at the time that I looked that up, making a similar contribution, so. It's significantly minimized the. Overall investment once they get made their contribution pledge. Um, and then they added the Bachi Bash um. Fundraising.
Which is Saturday night, yeah.
Well, maybe I spoke with Dane about them possibly doing, looking into a fundraising endeavor themselves. Um, since it'll be located near the pool, so he's gonna talk about that at his next meeting. So we anticipate a good part of this will will come back in almost full, full payment.
Okay. And and we had, we had two different bids, one was thirty. Sorry, Kate, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, I I didn't grab him in time during the public comment, do we know if Michael approves of the of this design? Like, did Michael have any feedback to you, Brian?
Yeah, so I did contact him and spoke with him, and he actually said the set that was the preferred of the two that I did receive the quotes on. Is the one that was recommended in the packet, so and it happened to be the less expensive of the two.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because the wood, the, I don't know if there was nostalgia for like the wood style, you know, that was there, and it was sort of a very unique kind of setup. So I didn't know if he was trying to actually replace that sort of vibe of this, you know, playground more versus a newer set, but it sounds like he's, he's on board.
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
And this would be wood chip around here, correct? Or is it, or is it the manufacturer?
Yeah.
Wood fiber, so it's what they call it.
Yeah, I can't remember how, it's not.
It's EWF surfacing, Brian, that's what you're looking for.
I like, I like, I have the schools there, pushing each surface. I don't think you want something like that, wood chips is is better, because then it does spill it, it tends to degrade in the environment.
I will ask.
Some of the uh, like they used to make chrome rubber ones. Uh, loose, then they get everywhere and it's, it doesn't degrade and it's dirty, so.
So there's.
If it's a manufactured mat, that's a difference.
Um, it's, so the quote, I'm reading, we can also provide the excavation of the area and insulation of the fifty yards of engineered wood fiber surfacing, so. I guess that would be.
Know what they mean by that.
What that is.
We have some pretty cheap engineered wood fiber right up the mouth. Uh, or.
So. It's not engineered, it's natural.
And it's and it's very wet right now, by the way.
All right, let's, let's keep pushing it.
So, um. Fiscally, this is, you know, this is fully covered, uh, we, you know, we had a resident that stepped up at a meaningful level to make this happen. So are, is this something we're gonna support or we don't?
It's, it's not fully covered. Part of the motion is we're, we're guaranteed twenty thousand dollars in pledge money right now.
Right.
And there may be more.
Right, I was hearing.
The difference is we would, the village would have to contribute the difference between what was donated and the thirty thousand, so. We wouldn't have to donate more than ten thousand, it'll probably be less, but it would have to, would have to pay for that out of. Um, funds. And the place that we found there was something available was, there is still money left in the capital fund agency account.
Yep. And and um, I'll go to you, Deep Mar, go ahead, Deep.
Nope, well, I was gonna get the motion on the table, so I'll let you finish your.
Well, I was just, and and Brian was mentioning money from the Bachi event on Saturday, so. We, talk about what that expectation is?
I do not know that answer.
Okay, all right, well, the weather's gonna be good for once, so. Uh, cause it rains a lot on Bachi, not this year.
I I would say that if we have such a generous resident that.
Yeah, let's move forward.
All right, we need to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds like the cost will be relatively minimal to.
Yep, yep. Deep Mar.
Village.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to authorize the village, our village administrator to purchase a new playground playset for post-farm park. From Northland Recreation in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Funding will be provided primarily through donations with a village contribution from the capital fund contingency account. Covering remaining amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
And you guys will report back to us on what it actually ended up being.
Hold on a second.
Thank you, Bob, further discussion?
I'm gonna vote in favor.
Yeah.
Because obviously we need to, but if they find something better, I would, that's great too.
Yeah.
And I would just make sure that. Uh, folks, Michael and Laningham is very happy with the choice.
Right, so, yeah, it's a big donation. All right, ready to vote, all those in favor, please say a raise your hand. Uh, that motion carries.
You needed a second.
Did somebody's second?
There was, yeah, I can second it, so.
Bob seconded it, yeah.
Oh, Bob did, okay, we didn't hear that.
That's all right. So, uh, very quickly, item. Seven C seven, discussion possible action approval of village participation in the Renew the Blue watershed. Council, I think, Brian, you you speak to this. But I'll just, you know, the. The the motion rationale is. Sherwood Hills would strengthen its leadership and environmental stewardship, ensure our community has a seat at the table on regional water quality issues. And directly support efforts to protect the Ahara lakes that define our quality of life. For a modest investment, we gain influence, partnerships, long-term benefits. And our residents, uh, for our residents and the environment, so. I could frame the opportunity, I can talk about the direct benefits to Sherwood Hills, I could talk about some of the practical considerations, it is twelve hundred fifty dollars. Um, you know, we we met with the Clean Lakes Alliance, you saw the list of communities that are already involved. And I just thought it was a. It was a good, uh, it was a good partnership. You know, that, you know, that this is about lake health as a regional challenge, and for us to be part of it. At a meaningful level seem to make sense. So I won't spend more time on it than that, other than they're asking for delegates, we thought, uh, myself and Brian. Would be available to. Um, certainly I can attend meetings. Uh, but that's, that's it, and if you have other questions, or if you want me to talk more about it, I'm fully prepared to do so, Deep Mar. So Carol is. Oh, Carol, go ahead, Carol.
Thank, thank you, um, I remember when we first signed up for this, um, either a year ago or two. And the the group has all the right ideas, all the great um. Plans and initiatives, but I'm curious, what have they done? In the time that you've been there, John?
Well, uh, I think this is a new initiative. And so they've, they've, they've kind of laid out what's, what's next, and I don't have it in front of me, to be honest, uh, Carol. So have you worked with the, the Renew the Blue is a brand new initiative, and I think it's related to the new Dane Dane County Executive as well?
Okay, my, my, uh, my mistake, I know there's another environmental thing that you, that we needed to put a couple.
That was the, yeah, that was the Wisconsin Local Government Climate Coalition.
Okay, okay, but these folks, uh, despite the fact that my boss is one of the signatories, um, I can't tell what they're doing.
I think what they do is, do they lobby at the Capitol?
No.
I don't think they've met yet, their first meeting is October.
Right, the first meeting is.
Oh, okay, 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 well, then I withdraw my. Uh, objection, comment, whatever.
So it's a brand new group, John?
Yes, it is. And they, they essentially have been um. Meeting with. You know, heads of mayors and heads of different communities to to build buy-in. The new uh county executive um is in involved. Um, I'm just looking for my notes on this.
Is it twelve hundred dollar a year? Or one-time fee?
No, this is a first-year commitment, and I anticipate it's, this covers twenty twenty-five dues, well, twenty twenty-five is almost over, and launch phase. And I expect it'll probably be that twelve fifty a year.
I think they said it would be seventeen fifty, like the next.
Thank you, um. Julie, for that clarification. I'm just looking at, there was a letter of intent, signing document, was that in the packet, I'm trying to remember. That was attached. I thought it was in there, so. I was just looking for the list of of partners.
Yep, there you go.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, um, you know, the city's involved, Dane County's involved. Uh, the whole chunk nation's involved. You know, uh, various committees or communities, Middleton's involved. Um, I think the builders are involved, the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, the Villages Association. UW Center for Lomnology, Realtors, MMSD. Uh, the Nelson Institute for Environmental Studies. Uh, just to name a few.
Carol, you said your, your boss is one of the signatories on this, so that would be your department is a member?
Yep, that's right. So what money, uh, um, if I can just put it plainly, what money, uh, are we, can we use for this?
Unbalanced?
It would have. It would have to be, um. Yeah, cause we did, we did not have a competency in the general operating. And so that's why I couldn't make recommendation like I could with the capital funds. Um, and we have, we have taken some of the unbalanced. I just wanna, I mean, it's not a huge amount, but I just wanna remind you guys that we did take that for some other stuff.
I mean, I mean, is there a precedent, is there a precedent where uh an innovative. Environmental nonprofit organi- organization that I'm closely affiliated with. Could, you know. Could, you know, pay half? As a matching, as a matching deal, just to move this forward? Would that help sweeten the deal?
I think we just have to vote.
Well, I I it's still not clear to me, I mean, it's great being belonging to these different organizations, I'm just wondering. Are we doing it for altruistic reasons, or is there grant opportunities? Are there activities we can participate that'll help our lake shore? You know, I'm belonging to an another group, I I guess I don't see the advantage right.
But here, I'll just, I'll I'll read the what I identified the direct benefits for Sherwood Hills. Cleaner water, healthier lakes, our residents value safe, swimmable beaches and vibrant lakes, council council membership helps ensure continued progress on fossilized production, farm water management, shoreline protection. Uh, influence on policy and funding by participating directly. Will be better positioned to advocate for resources and infrastructure investments that benefit Sherwood Hills. Keep in mind that we're also up for a five hundred thousand dollar grant for McKenna. As as part of the D N R.
Nelson.
Knowles Nelson Institute.
Belonging to this could help.
That's right, I mean, cause cause D N.
You sold me.
Cause D N R is involved, and then uh they're, you know, they're they're one of the major partners. And then community pride reputation, membership reinforces our image as a forward-thinking, sustainably-minded community, which benefits property values, recruitment of residents, and long-term vit- vitality. So those are some direct benefits I came up with.
Okay, you sold me, John, twelve fifteen, it was an easy sell. Three thousand bucks, sounds like it's worth.
Okay. Is, so is that a motion that I'm hearing then from you, Bob?
I think I was.
Okay. I'm looking, if 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 we can move forward on this.
Motion because we have to, we do have to specify the funding. Because it's an unbudgeted item.
There's a motion on page, uh, page three of the packet, does someone want to make that motion?
Uh, yes, that's my script, but don't worry about that, this is the motion in bold.
Yeah, I'll make a motion then to authorize the village president's signed membership agreement for good lakes, lines, renew the blue watershed council. Funding will be provided by, the blank in the motion, do we even say that?
Well, John is recommending that we take it from the general fund, the fund balance.
Maybe I'll just say funding will be determined.
We have to, we have to specify it.
We do.
Because it's unbudgeted, so it has to be a board item.
Okay.
Um, and especially. So if you want to say general fund fund balance, that is where it would have to come.
Okay, funding will be provided by general fund fund down. Board designates. John Ims and was it Carol Barford, or no, I'm sorry, Brian. Mooney is the villagers representative. Huh?
Yes.
And that is late, sorry.
I know. So.
Okay, I got it.
That's my motion.
All right.
You have a second.
Come on, Deep Mar.
I'll second.
Thank you, Shabna. Further discussion? Um, I mean, I I was serious about that offer contributing, so, you know, if we don't do it this year. You know, we can maybe consider doing it next year, spec- particularly if it works out, or if they if they raise the, they raise the cost. All right, ready to vote on this? Ladies, ready to vote? All is a favor, please see I raise your hand. That carries. Uh, next item is village president, I know I was gonna speak to the plant commission doings, but I already did that earlier, so I'm not gonna speak to it uh anymore.
Not on the line at twelve fifteen anyway.
No, the the work that we're doing with.
Oh.
Yeah, I just, I I did a summary on that uh for the residents, because I thought they needed to hear, because they weren't gonna be here at twelve fifteen. Um, but that's what I was gonna share uh as part of my, and I don't have anything else to share, it's been a long night. Brian, uh, you've got your monthly report in the packet. Uh, there's a C S C uh C S M statement um in the packet. Police chief's monthly report, uh, the treasurer's report, a committee report, is anything anyone wants to add?
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
The C S M report, who at the staff approved it?
I believe I approved this C S M report.
Let me write it by phone.
Yeah, it was written by attorney Cole.
Cause it doesn't have an author on it, so it's not clear who it's from. And uh, I'm uncomfortable with the everything that's happening with the C S M. Uh, I sent out an email to the board asking if we're gonna have a written report, and there wasn't a response. I don't know if I should put it on the next month's agenda, if we're not allowed to uh answer that question. So it's doesn't seem right, I'll be honest, like, this being on this board is, it hasn't been fun for a while, and it's losing its interest. Because I don't think I'm aligning with the board in a fun, like, we're on the same page, we see the good in each other, we're all trying to. Uh, I I just think that something is off. I don't know if others feel that way. But I don't think it's fair that, John, you got, you know, uh, more of the load. Of what happened with the C S M, I think it's distributed. Plant commission is a team, they didn't step up, uh.
I was, I was a little surprised.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, Deep Mar, go ahead.
Just, I I.
Make my turn.
I'm I'm gonna um. I thought the agreement and understanding after our last meeting talked about this in closed sessions. The outcome of that closed session was that the. And information memo, documents, multiple pages, here are the facts, I remember.
Correct.
Stating, why can't we compile the facts? Here are the facts, that information should be out there. This is all, this is all done on on the up and up. Here are the facts, what what is what is preventing us as a body to put that together and have that be issued?
I don't think there, I don't, I don't think there's anything preventing other than the timeline, I think we were all waiting just to get through the Z B A. Get it done, I know it's a separate issue, but get through that.
I wrote it and just needed some pointers and some edits, I, so why can't any?
No, and I shared it, I shared it with, I shared it with Brian, and he thought there, he thought it was really factual and something worth working on. But logic's also on our plate right now, and so. I mean, believe me, I would have loved to have a report ready to go today, uh, I don't know if that was realistic, Bob?
Um, I would feel more comfortable if 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 some of these responses that you write up, John, are shared with the board before you send.
Yeah.
Give us a chance, and in some cases, you have asked for input, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I don't think really anything that goes out that is reflective of the board is, I agree with Shabna on that. Uh, I don't know what's going on, and I don't know if I agree exactly the way you you put some of this, you know, uh. And or Brian, and I think we all ought to have the benefit of uh since it's reflecting on all of us, be able to see it before it goes out.
You talking about the logic stuff, or are you talking about?
Any of it. C S M, logic.
I think.
Or if it doesn't, if it doesn't, I apologize to interrupting, I apologize, it should say who the author is. It's coming from John Ims, he's owning that document, this press release is coming from John Ims. If it's from the board, we should all look at it and provide some input and approval.
Yeah, I guess if you're writing a letter from you, that's, you know, you you authored it.
Right.
But if it's perceived or it's intended to be from the board.
Yeah.
I think the board will see.
I think, you know, we're, I don't disagree, I mean, obviously I work very closely with staff. Um, time is of the essence on this, I think we heard that today, and we have to be. So, you know, maybe twenty-four hours on whatever it is, that's, it'll have to be twenty-four hours, I'll send it.
I think that's fine, we're all electronic, if you send it.
Right, and if I don't hear, and if I don't hear.
Can you read this and get it and provide any comment?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fine, I think that's totally fair, Mark.
Yeah, the other thing that concerned me, um, John Clancy, when he made his statement, said he made two requests to the village, and the latter request having to do with the trees. And I thought that staff had already answered that question, so I didn't feel any need to do as a trustee. But I don't think the residents know that the staff did investigate, they came to conclusions that the only trees that were cut were on the um. Not in the setback, and that the village trees in the setback were spared. But that message is not out there based on what we're hearing tonight, so.
I think John knows that, too.
Could just.
Describe.
Could you, please, or Julie, you know, just say with respect to this, because what's happening, these requests are coming to. They're coming to the board.
Right.
But we're not the fact-finding body here, I mean, things like this are determined by the forester and the administrator.
It's another, but I would, if I could interject, I I that's, I think all of that could be to Deep Mar's point, factual, covered in a report.
Absolutely.
Laid it out.
Yeah, but when's this report coming out? In the meantime, we're getting barraged by all this criticism, we're getting accused of all this stuff.
Yeah.
And and to Mark's point, like on that issue, I don't know what to tell people, because I, hell, I don't know what what the.
Well, I said.
On the tree, where it was.
Yeah, I said tonight, we're, we have to do a report, and so we'll have to do a report.
Well, I think the report should have been.
Three months ago.
We can't wait four months to do this.
And I, to add, sorry, to not, I'll wait till I'm called.
Shabna, yeah.
It was about the attic, and it was about the inspection, and I remember I emailed Brian and I asked, give me the details of the inspection. And I got it in an email before closed session, but what I would have wanted is the is the proof of it. That I I think that, like. You guys might have some kind of a training. Would I do, and if I do an open records request, I kind of want to see the actual document. But I have a feeling that you guys are trained to give the least amount of information possible, like the with, is that true?
No.
So if I ask for let the building permit, and when was this attic done, and when was it inspected, I don't get a document, I get, here's the dates, and I have to go off of that.
No, if you ask me for a document and I have it, I will share it. Sometimes people ask for things that.
So why doesn't the public, but why doesn't the public know that? That's like a critical piece of all of this.
Believe me, the public knows, they've, I have a ton of o- open records requests. The problem is some of them are so general that it's very difficult to fulfill them.
Okay.
And so it's very time.
So just moving forward, because these things come up, I think when fifty people show up at a meeting. We gotta react and respond faster, and if Brian, you feel uncomfortable. Uh, we have to be there to provide guidance and support. The, I can't answer the question, doesn't rub anybody the right way, even though I understand where it's coming from, it's not acceptable.
About, and we're still in committee discussion here, so we gotta be, we gotta wrap this up.
Well, okay, but I would reinforce my earlier point that. Information needs to get out, we can't wait for a report that might come out in December, because we got eighty people in the room breathing down our necks. I think when we have information to share. That, like tonight with what Bill said, that should be, that should be out sending to people.
Right.
So they feel, even if we have to say, look, if we can't answer this right now, because the Z B A is coming out, that's gonna be determined in this forum, say that. At least people know that we're thinking about it, we're trying to respond, we're saying what it is we can say.
Yeah.
And I think that's really important to to mitigate this problem we're having. With the residents not feeling like we're telling them either the truth or telling them what's going on.
Abby, if we're just disseminating facts, which is kind of what Deep Mar is suggesting, I don't think it's the board, the board's not the fact-finding body, it's the administration, so.
Yeah.
I, Brian, I don't think you should feel like, well, I gotta run these things by the board. If alls you're telling them is the facts, they've asked for the facts, and give them the facts, and we're done.
Hey, see your hand up?
Yeah, one one suggestion. Is there a way on the website that we could just have the have like a microsite, like what you did for the facilities? And just post, since we have so many open records, can we just post the relevant documents there? And that way we can direct residents to that, and we can include the tree investigation. You know, we can include anything, and just that can be the source of truth as the village, just a suggestion.
Good idea.
What's the?
I'm okay with, I mean, whatever you want to put on the website, that's, that's how we're, we gotta be careful not to get the site cluttered, but as far as. If I have an open records request, I'm statutorily required to respond.
Yeah.
I believe some of the residents are very frustrated with me at the moment, because I used, I used to try to respond within a couple days.
Yeah.
I can't, and I haven't, I've had some other deadlines that are extremely pressing.
Yeah.
Um, statutorily, I mean, the rule of thumb is a basic request is a ten-day reply, and I I'm not that far out on any of these, but. I think people are so used to instant responses that they're frustrated and surprised that they're not getting them right now, and I apologize for that, but. I literally, I'm up against some deadlines, some deadlines that are a priority for the village as a whole. Um, so I'm trying to share, just so if any, I know nobody's watching, but they might be watching the recording tomorrow.
Yeah.
I am trying to respond to these um, these open records requests, um, but they're not called, they're not asking for. Some of them are asking for one specific document, very few. Most of them are much more extensive, and some of them I'm going to have to reach out to our I T. Um, they're asking for like every email that regards this subject from this state to this state, that's not something that I can just make up here. Um, and there may actually be costs involved if they decide, we we spoke with computer magic today, and they said, well, depending on how. Expansive these are, we may have to charge you for them, and I have to pass those on, so I'm still researching and trying to get information for people. And I hope people are frustrated with that, but they need to understand that it's not an instant process to answer these.
Is it, is it fair to say that all the data exists, and we just have to put it in a presentable form? Cause I'm willing to.
No, they're asking for like every email, and that's something we can't share. I mean, that's not, that's not something you can put on the on the website.
Right.
The the fact sheet would be helpful.
Talking about the report, is it fair to say that we've got all the data? We we just have to simulate it and organize it and put it in a present, so we've got something on the website that says, this is the villages standpoint. This, the these are the facts, bit 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 all the way down. Does that, does that sound realistic? Cause I'm willing to, I'm willing to, I'm willing to do the work.
Yeah, yeah, Shabna, sort of.
That's right, Shabna just started that, yeah.
But advise, I mean, we could, we can put all facts.
Right.
We're, we've been advised to not put, create documents and put new information that's could be used in future litigation, I'm gonna be clear on this.
Right.
Um, we have to wait till things shake down, and then, I mean. All the decisions made were legal, and they're based on legal things, so.
Right.
We have to follow the advice of our.
Part of it to put out there, could be.
Yeah, so you'll, you have a hundred and sixty people at the next one.
No, it's not that we're trying to hide anything, we are not hiding anything, but also we have so much. Stuff right now, we've been buried under.
I know you have that.
From the citizens.
Yeah.
And I understand their frustration, but they also, they don't realize that what they're doing is making it more difficult for us to respond instead of easier.
But that's because we're not responding to them, so we have to.
But we can't respond on the same day, we can't respond.
Right, but the continued lack of response is causing a snowball effect, so if we.
They all came in at the beginning.
I want to add three items to the list of future agendas.
Are we ready to vote of that?
There was nothing else on committees?
Uh, well, I didn't have a question for Brian.
Okay.
Uh, so I think we're somewhere between village president report and and something else. Well, yeah, so just real briefly, Brian, um. Do you know off the top of your head the status of the tennis courts and resurfacing, and if in fact that'll happen in the month of September or month of October?
I can tell you, we had a meeting with uh two individuals from the tennis program. And Terry reached out to the contractor who won the bid, I believe they are moving forward with it. The end of this month or early next month for the.
So in in the next four weeks.
I think that's a safe assumption of timeline, yes.
Sure, that's all I, that's all I wanted to know.
I know everybody wants to go to bed, but I. I know everybody wants to go to bed, but I. It looks important to give a shout out to, uh, to Terry. Um, in Public Works, uh. Uh, Lieutenant Dogsworth brought forward an issue at the new crosswalk at Oxford Road across Shorewood Boulevard. That there was a parking problem and that we need to get some signs up there to keep the cars away from the intersection and. Terry did it the next day.
Right.
And, uh, or at least got the poles up, I think we're still waiting on the signs. And there was also, um. An issue at, near Mark's house on, uh, Sumac and Lake Minota Drive, there is a triangle there. The strip of asphalt that was falling apart was a trip hazard and, and you gotta complain about that and Terry and crew got right on, so. They have been, uh, super responsive and. Due to our, an order, so Brian, please pass that on.
Alright, nothing else, uh, we were on committees, so if there's nothing else on committees, then we'll move to future gen items, Shabna?
Okay, number one, I would like us to waive the fees for the appellants. Uh, we've never charged. Anyone, any resident for Brian Mooney's time or, uh, Brian Berquist's time or village attorney time and all of a sudden, we are. Putting a fee on the appellants. That doesn't seem fair, given that we have some responsibility and given that like the day before we're gonna say that we're. Removing public comment from the ZBA meeting. I felt that rage and I thought it was appropriate and we should maybe not even, if, either we do it tomorrow. Or it's, I want it on the September agenda, we should just do it tomorrow, is it two hundred bucks, is it three hundred bucks? Whatever the fees are, we should not be telling the appellants that we're gonna charge them. It comes off like you're, you're punishing, you're silencing, you're dismissing, you're trying to. It, when you never did this before and all of a sudden there's gonna be charges, legal or not.
Yeah, second issue? We can't have a big discussion about it.
Yeah, we can.
We can have a discussion though, you can.
Discussing.
Okay. And we tell tomorrow that we're gonna waive the fee or should I put it on the next month's agenda?
The board's not meeting tomorrow.
Can we just write an email to the appellants saying we will not charge you fees?
No, we have to talk.
That would have to be a board issue because that's.
Okay, so then I would like it on the September board agenda.
Okay, we got it.
Next issue, evaluation of the village administrator. Uh, it's just, it's been a year, we didn't have the three month one, we didn't have a six month one, we didn't have a one year one. Brian Mooney needs to have an evaluation. And we, we're not doing it. And then the third thing I would like to add is an opportunity to review and reflect on our decisions. Because we spent thirty thousand dollars on, uh, the study for the pool. When so much of the information, residents already knew what was wrong with the building, the asbestos and the leaks and. We spent another forty thousand on the facility site and then another thirty thousand on governance and then another twenty thousand. I just think, would you, if, reflect and wonder if they were good to, can we reflect on our decisions? And see if they were good decisions and if we want to proceed? I think that the money, the thirty thousand dollars for the pool, we had that information. If you had a five minute call with the residents, they would have told you, there's asbestos on the roof, there's leaks, the toilet leaked. Uh, the building is low. They would, we didn't have to spend thirty thousand on it.
Well, I would say there's some things. Corrosion issues and some of the rest that were only found by professionals reviewing that, whether or not we needed. To have them point out obvious toilet leaks is another situation, I guess, but. Alright.
Just no.
We're getting into the issue instead of just getting it on the agenda, so what do you, you want to review consulting fees?
Uh, are there decisions we would make differently? Are there decisions we made this past year that we would do differently? You only learn by reflecting.
Oh, just review and reflect on decisions?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, got that.
I didn't know if you wanted to specify more, that's good. I got it.
I can write a memo.
And I'll help by striking item D. Referral to the plant commission to make changes on the zoning codes, since we're already doing it. Without a referral, so.
I also.
Keeping that on the list.
Don't know how I get my name is next to street lighting. It's just been there for a while.
I think you brought that up like two years ago.
Yeah, I want you to change the bulbs, so.
I, I, I mean.
I believe it was someone was almost hit by a car and then you had brought that up.
Is it, is it, uh, I can, is it something I should do, is it something that works with services?
We have a dark sky ordinance, that's one of the issues, we just did added lights along the new bike trail though, didn't we? Thought I saw new lights there.
You can have come up with resonance, it's something feel like. Kind of dark and true.
Well, it's still on the list.
Can that, can we send it to a committee? Public Works?
No.
Okay.
Biggest necessary.
Yeah. Alright, something that, we're not gonna decide it right now, but we can definitely not forget about it. I think that's fair. Carol, Kate, thanks for hanging out.
Um, or make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, uh, all is in favor. Okay, Deep Mar is a second. Carol, get some rest, all is in favor, we have to vote.
Has the sun gone down yet, Carol?
No, it's kind of green, I can see it.
It's still there.
It's way up.
Crazy. Where are you in Norway, uh, Carol, where, where in Norway are you?
I am in Oda. The outdoor capital of Norway.
Guess I don't remember where that is.
Have you done anymore?
South of Bergen.
Oh, south of, oh, okay, yeah.
Have you done any more sauna plunges?
Uh, no, one plunge in North Sea was, was good.
Yeah, awesome. Have a safe trip. Thanks for hanging out so long.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night everyone.